I was making when I started to hear I was lighter. I was making when I started to hear I was lighter. So. Oh, my gosh. I think I was maybe a little less shaken. I would not have worked. Yeah, I would call this, I would call this.
All right, we're gonna get going now, okay? Tell them. I don't like that. I don't, I don't like the outlook here. All right, we're on, we're just on the audio only. Fortunately, we don't have any video that puts the delay was. It is now six sixteen. We will be starting our October eighth special meeting today. And I have roll call.
Mr. Gary.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Farleyano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Mayarino.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Could we stand for the pledge of allegiance? I will lead. My pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item three is public comment. We have numerous public comments tonight, both of the in-person and sent via email into the district, so we have quite a few. We're gonna start. Dan, did we, trying to figure out whether we should do in-person first or, yeah, we should do the in-person, so if they want to leave, they can get out of here. So we're gonna, Dan, let's start with the in-person. So do you have a form? All right, so I'd like to remind everyone, public comment is limited to three minutes. Actually, we'll use my timer. I had the last meeting and things were running a little long for people, so I, at three minutes, I'll ask you to wrap it up if you can. So please do. I again would request people to be respectful in their comments. I tell you, it's always, you know, we had some comments at our last meeting that got a little terse. It's always a little more difficult for anyone to get the message that the speaker is trying to deliver when they get overly emotional and start saying it in angry terms, you start to lose your message. So I just encourage everyone to understand these are emotionally charged issues we're dealing with, but to try and maintain your composure as best you can. And, you know, again, there are no personal attacks allowed at public comment. Keeping that in mind, my first speaker is Nick, and I'm having trouble reading your writing on your last name. It's like, carry out it. Begins with a K and I think it's Y, R I A T E S, from Al Gacklin. They're checking the overflow room. While we're wait, while we're waiting for Nick, Dennis Brown, you're next. Mr. Brown, good to see you.
Hi, everybody. Push the button, there we go. Dennis Brown, teacher at the high school. When I got to school Monday and I heard Dr. Beal explain the return to learn plan the district is committed to implementing on November second, my reaction was honestly utter disbelief for two reasons. First, I cannot for the life of me understand why we would roll out such a plan so far into the semester. Starting November second would allow me to see a handful of students once a week, a grand total of six times between then and the end of the semester. Believe it or not, I'm actually doing some good things in my classes this semester. While remote learning hasn't been ideal, in my classes, I've got a rhythm going, kind of a routine. I'm pushing out content, challenging kids to apply and express their ideas through worksheets and journals, and hosting small group discussions through Zoom. With this new plan that's being rolled out, however, I'm gonna have to rethink what I've done so far, upend and change everything midstream when classes have been going relatively well. It makes absolutely no sense to me. And I could honestly see doing this in January, we'd be starting a new semester, classes would be starting up again, and a new approach might make sense, but cramming this down the throats of the teachers and the students when two-thirds of the semester has passed just does not add up to me. And second, even if we started this in January, this hybrid plan where maybe half of my students come into my classroom once a week seems to me to be an educational step backwards. In this hybrid model, on any given day, I'll have maybe fifteen students in my classroom and fifteen at home. How do I approach teaching on those days? To keep all of the students on track and frankly to keep our sanity, many teachers and I will probably end up doing the exact same thing we're doing all along. Educationally, things are going to be no different. In fact, things are gonna be more complicated and difficult, given that we're trying to juggle two different groups at the same time. I suppose that being in school would provide some kind of social element that kids have been missing, but it will be nothing like what they've experienced in the past. And with all of that, what gets me the most is that this plan puts students, teachers, and their families, and my family, at risk of contracting this virus, which to me is unconscionable, given that the education we're going to be providing will be no better and in fact worse than what we are currently providing. This plan is dangerous and it is reckless. The trade-off is just not there, and I cannot believe that this has been rolled out as something better than what we've all been doing since August. I've been a part of this district for twenty-four years and I've taught many of your kids. I like to think you respect me as I respect all of you. And I'm here to tell you, people at the high school are angry, they are anxious, and they are afraid because they will be put at risk implementing a plan that may look like an improvement, but actually will take us backwards. I like to think District 158 sets the pace, and you know what? We are better than this. Please rethink what you're doing here. It is not an improvement and it puts people's lives at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Nick, you're in, you're in the building. Okay, come on up. Please pronounce your last name for me, because I butchered it.
Curiosus.
Thank you.
It's been about a month since the last time I came to a board meeting to address remote learning. I was livid then. I wish I could say things have improved, but they haven't. Remote learning is a cruel, cruel joke, and the punchline is our children's education and their future. At this moment, barring any upcoming and much-needed changes, the district is prepared to welcome K through five students for whopping five hours of in-person instruction a week. Five hours, five. Here's what nearby districts are doing. District 155, thirteen hours on A weeks, twenty and a half hours on B weeks. District three, thirteen hours a week. District 200, twenty hours a week. District 301, twelve and a half hours a week. District 300, twenty hours a week, K through three, with plans to expand the fourth and fifth grade starting in November. District 47, twenty hours a week. Not nearby, but certainly worth addressing is Palatine School District 15, which has students back to classroom full-time. St. Charles District, which has students back in the classroom full-time, has had those students back in the classroom full-time since September. Many of those districts are located in McHenry County. Some of those districts draw students from the same towns that our district draws students from. Previously, the excuse of differing demographics and environments was used as a rationale not to bring students back under something approaching an effective school day. What is the excuse now? What mystery have these districts unlocked that seems to elude our district? I wish I could go back ten years and change my mind about where we purchased our home. I wish my children were in 300, or 301, or any of those districts. 158 is failing our children. Last time I checked, the district existed to serve them in their needs. That's why we pay taxes, high taxes. This is what passes for education under the current system. This is literacy instruction for my first grade teach, first grade daughter. Nine forty-five, eight forty-five to nine, teach her read the poem, students repeat the poem, search for rhyming words. Nine to nine oh five, draw the picture, is supposed to label but doesn't. Wife reminds her she needs to label, helps her draw out sounds to write down words. Nine oh five to nine ten, pre-recorded video of teacher reading a book. Nine ten to nine thirty, break, very arguous up to that point. Nine thirty to nine thirty-three, asynchronous activity, word sword on seesaw, takes three minutes. Nine thirty-three to nine fifty, nothing. Nine fifty to ten ten, Zoom with teacher, workbook pages run phonics, wrote sight words in notebook. Ten ten to ten twenty-three, students wrote about how they help at home, could not read directions, no audio directions were given, wife had to explain and walk them through the activity. Period of long breaks, they had physical education. Eleven thirty to twelve, work on nouns with teacher. That's roughly an hour of instruction with the teacher, of which twenty minutes was filling in workbook pages. That's five minutes of pre-recorded video, that's twenty-one minutes of asynchronous work, that's over an hour of dead time, taking into account breaks and a ridiculously short amount of time it takes students to complete asynchronous work when the assignment is explained to them by the parent, not the teacher. There's no guided reading, which is critical at that age. There's no learning decoding skills, which is critical at that age. Our kids need to be back in school, period.
Thank you very much. Mr. Steven Steiers.
Making sure I time it. My name is Steven Steiers. I am a math and economics teacher at Huntley High School. I have been in this district for thirty-two years. I know that some of you have had your children, and I'm now teaching some of my students' children as well in this district. I can understand that this district is dealing with many of the constraints that have been imposed upon them by an increasingly authoritarian and imperious governor, and I am sorry that you have to deal with that. I don't like remote learning very much. It is important for me to create relationship with my students, to interact with them, to show them the kind of materials that I love and hope that they can enjoy as well. The classes that I teach are calculus, statistics, economics, and multivariable calculus. So these are non-representative students, and I want to be with them and they want to be here. I know that because they have talked to me, they want to come back to the classroom. But this model that is being brought up, this hybrid model, is not the answer. It is, all the students will be kept separated and they will be not, and be alone. So even though they're gonna see people, it is though there's a great divide being put with them. And I must keep them separate, and I must be separate from them as well, so I cannot interact, I cannot individualize and connect with them. Instead, I need to focus on my Zoom, I need to focus on the camera, because I have all the other students at home that won't be able to see it. And it makes this entire situation even more poignant because these kids, no matter how smart, want to be with other students, they want to socialize. We talk about SEL, and yet the one thing we're doing is we are making it even worse for them. Bottom line, I'm one of the oldest teacher in this district other than Wayne Blake, and I'm telling you, bring the kids back, bring them every day. I have less fear of contracting that COVID than I do getting killed by a sixteen-year-old driving on the roads. And yet we have programs to teach kids on the road driving. Please, don't fake this. If you gotta have something, go with the remote learning. Otherwise, we're all gonna be in our bunkers. Instead, if you can't have remote, bring them back, bring them all back, and let's start teaching them as many other districts have. I want to teach. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiers. Okay, Rochelle Hewlett.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Hewlett, and I've been proudly teaching at Huntley High School for twenty-six years. In these years, as many of you know, much change has taken place. To put it in perspective, when I began here, we were a high school of three hundred students. I point this out to you today because I am familiar with change and actually welcome it, which is why I continue to teach here. Since this pandemic began, life has changed drastically and the education world has been flipped on its side. However, the fact that we are a school that has been doing blended for some years has helped make this change a bit better for us all. Last week, as a member of the return to school task force, we were told about the district's plan to come back on November second, and I must say that I am completely disappointed as this is not as what, this is not what is best for the students. But please let me explain why I feel this way. Years back, when we were looking at developing programs that were student-focused, the blended learning program became a vision. So, research was done, collaboration with fellow educators and administration was done to make a program to be proud of, and then a set date, then they set a date up for implementation, but this had taken some time. Then, Dr. Rowe presented the idea of Vanguard Vision as another avenue which had students at the forefront. More research took place, more collaboration took place, and a date was then set for implementation. This again, took time. This took time because we, educators and administrators, wanted to be ready with the best instructional practices for our students. We put the students' education first and foremost, and now I can say that these are two proud programs we can be proud of. Now, when this year began, we were thrown into a world of one-hundred percent remote learning with very limited time to prepare, research, or collaborate, and what did this get us? This got us a good two to three weeks of muddled lessons, technology issues, and most importantly, students losing valuable educational time. When you add this to the lost education from the spring, why would we in our right minds even consider modifying our current remote plan now that teachers and students are finally in a functional routine? We actually have the opportunity to do what is best for our students. What is that best? That best includes not interrupting what is now some good instruction and academic growth of our students. That best includes giving teachers time to plan and time to learn some appropriate teaching strategies for a simultaneous remote and live instructional environment. Do we really want another two to three weeks of foreign instruction and educational minutes wasted while students and teachers need to adjust because the community pressure is inciting the district to expedite the process of bringing students into the building? I mean, what is the rush? It definitely is not what is best for, for our students. So let me ask this. What is the hurt that waiting twenty-nine educational days is going to do to students? And by the way, I know a fellow teacher said that he, I'm not a math teacher, so I apologize, said it was six times we were going to see them, I counted seven, but again, I'm an English teacher, okay? And that's assuming no one gets ill. I want you to know that I'm not against students coming back, as I am actually a proponent of live instruction. I am here because I honest believe, honestly believe that coming back on November second is a poor educational decision, as it is not as what is best for our students. No demographic, in-person or remote, will be served well by rushing into this plan.
Rochelle, can you wrap it up?
Yes. I am asking that you please wait until January fourth so we can prepare for what is best for all students, just like we did when we implemented blended learning and Vanguard Vision. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Mr. Edward Philpott.
Good evening. My name is Edward Philpott. I've been teaching math at Huntley High School for six years, and I've coached both boys and girls soccer for nearly as long. I'm here tonight to express my concerns with the hybrid model that the district plans to initiate on November second. I want to make it very clear that my concerns apply specifically to the high school group of students. The best course of action for a unified district will vary depending on age. I have major concerns with the logistics of the hybrid model. I can teach effectively to students in my class, I can teach effectively online through Zoom, but I, like many other teachers at the high school, struggle to see how I could effectively do both at the same time. The key word being effectively. I can't fit sixty minutes of lecture twice into a ninety-minute period, so I can't double teach, that is to say, I can't teach the live students like I would like to and then teach the Zoom students online. Even if I had the time, that strategy would be very inefficient. So how do I simultaneously teach those students in class and those in Zoom? This is the logistical challenge that a hybrid model is forcing most teachers at the high school into. Fortunately, many of us have come together and found a solution. We will continue to teach on Zoom. I don't know what parents or students are expecting when they come into school, but it won't be back to normal. We must serve all students always, and for me and my class, that means I must find a way to simultaneously teach my students in class and my students on Zoom, and I don't know any other way to do it. Let me paint a picture of what a majority of high school classes will look like. Students will walk in a class and sit at their socially distant desk. They will be required to wear a mask throughout the entire class, even though they are six feet away from anyone else. Rules that no teacher made, but every teacher must enforce. Once they are seated, they will take out their Chromebook and join the Zoom call. They have none of the comforts from home that they have right now. I understand that as elected board officials, you have to serve the community. I understand that you're trying to give the community what it wants, which is kids back in school. I've heard stories of the immense pressure you are under, and I can understand how difficult it is for you right now. What I fail to understand is why the community would want a hybrid model. I have to assume that the parents are not aware of what this is going to look like inside the building. Just because students are back does not mean things are back to normal. I'll end with a personal experience from this year. I walk into work at seven AM to an email from a student in my class. The email was sent at one AM the night before. The student suffers from anxiety and had a panic attack the night before our first test. When she joins my Zoom call, she immediately messages me. She's freaking out. I see tears. I immediately pull her into a private breakout room in Zoom. While I'm no counselor, I'm happy to say that I was able to calm her down. We talked, I assured, and slowly but surely, the tears were wiped away. I may have almost cried myself, but it doesn't matter. What matters is I gave her a pep talk and we rejoined the main Zoom call. What matters is that she took her test and did quite well. What matters the most is that I can't have that private conversation if half of my class is in the room with me.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Gary Marchand.
Good evening. My name is Gary Marchand. I've been a teacher at Huntley High School since two thousand and six. I'm also a parent of two D one five eight students. Additionally, my wife teaches fourth grade elementary, and I coach boys volleyball in the spring. Needless to say here, I am all in. As a teacher, I've been obsessed over this pandemic more than most, not in the sense that I never leave my house, but because it's right up my alley, and some of that affects relates to what I teach my anatomy and physiology students. Respectfully, I don't believe those in favor of the hybrid, hybrid plan have taken enough time to think it through. In a previous board meeting, Dr. Rowe mentioned that students not obeying the new rules would be treated similarly to how we treat our students who forget their IDs. While I believe generally, students will respect the new rules, that made me realize that we are underestimating how many students will not follow those rules consistently, and we already saw that during the SAT two weeks ago. Most importantly, students will be back, will be coming back to a very sterile and rigid environment that they are far from used to, especially at HHS. I believe this will lead to many refusing to go back to remote anyway. In two thousand and eleven, I was one of the teachers that pioneered blended learning at HHS. It was a massive undertaking that we have only recently gotten full control of. I believe what we are asking of our elementary and middle school teachers is to develop a blended learning program in a matter of days. Days. This request is almost impossible for many people to understand, but trust me, how much it is asking. And what about the need for parents, guardians, or older siblings to fill in as teachers during the many hours a week those students are asynchronous? Before anyone tries to challenge me on the impact of this pandemic on our athletics, I believe I basically single-handedly, excuse me, began the boys volleyball program six years ago. I served as a bus driver, assistant athletic director, facilities manager, custodian, accountant, and many other roles to keep it going. Last year, our season was stripped away from us, and it was the first year we were to have a senior, Andrew Nolte, spend all four years at HHS in our program. The decisions that district cabinet has to make during this pandemic are nearly impossible. And as the medical experts have stated since the beginning, it could be weeks or months before you see the effect of our, of your decisions. I'm confident that opening up our schools in November of all times, even with the best safety measures, will have consequences that we are truly not ready for. I mentioned that I have few children, my offspring. I call them my offspring not because I'm a science teacher, but because they are different from hundreds of other kids who have been mine over the last fifteen years. Some of them have been, or are currently yours. I am reminded vividly how much I love those kids at the beginning of every year when we have our active shooter drill. And while I would much rather not have to take a bullet for them, I wouldn't be able to stop myself. Teachers throughout our district love our kids, your kids, and they're not going to avoid the extreme effort it will certainly take to make any hybrid plan work in the middle of the year, including the extra disciplinary efforts. I know it's because I am one of them. My wife is one of them, my good friends are them. All I can ask is that you give the utmost consideration for the decisions you are about to make. If you have any questions, I thank you for this opportunity and for all you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Jeff Bean.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Bean. I'm a teacher at Huntley High School. I have been a teacher.
I have been a teacher for 12 years at Huntley High School. I am high-risk for COVID. I have a medical exemption not to be at the school. I want to be at the school. I petitioned to be here at the high school, and I'm currently at the high school. When I saw the plan presented on Monday, I was shocked. When I got to the part of the plan, teachers need to be there in person. I looked, what are the other options? FHLMA or change your doctor's note? Well, I spent the last three weeks trying to change my doctor's note, and he would not change it because he was adamant that I have these conditions. FHLMA, I didn't think I qualified for that, so I was in a panic. I thought I lost my job. I found out by Adam that all I had to do was come back. I came back. I want to be here. I'm at the school right now. I'm not adverse to risk. I traveled the country this summer. I go to restaurants, but I want to be safe. This plan making me choose between my profession, my life, or my livelihood is devastating to me and to many other teachers. Have a choice. Do you risk your life? Do you risk your profession? No, I look at that, and I look at my wife, who's also a teacher in District 47. She's a cancer survivor, as some of you know. They went back to in-school hybrid planning this week. She didn't have to make that decision. She got to go back and teach. She worked her ass off to help her students. She's at home, she's teaching. A plan that causes us to make a choice between our life and our livelihood, to me, is just irresponsible, and it makes it so that we're pulling apart instead of coming together to solve something. It makes it so in the future, you're pulling the community, you're pulling the Board of Education, you're pulling the labor, the teachers, apart from each other. I wish you'd reconsider and find something that we could pull together like District 47 did. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. I have no further in-person.
We have one more that just came in. If we can accommodate another individual.
Okay, Ms. Dana White.
Can I just take my mask off? Thank you. Thank you, board. I found a wonderful quote in the past month that said, "Kids are born to be able to learn, and great teachers bring it out in them." What we're seeing right now is that it's a lot of task completing but not a lot of learning, which is something that was shared on our Facebook page that our parents have put together this last month. I want to just, first off, I say that we really respect our board members and Dr. Rowe for joining us Monday at a parent meeting that we had offsite. I think it was very enlightening for everybody that participated. It's a shame that those type of groups couldn't have been done earlier, because I think a lot could have really been shared, and it would have been a way for parents to advocate what's really being done, as opposed to just hearing things or assuming things. Going forward, I want to explore, implore the board to interact with the public more and engage with them, listen and hear more than just surveys and what we call one-dimensional feedback that can't be dissected better. Our group has a fear of what has not been mapped out, how to address regression, anxiety, and mental health issues that are bound to be present in our students, and the lack of a personal relationship during these very formative years. It's essential that this is looked at closely now, sooner than later, and we need to see a path to fear of an illness that the data shows does not harm 97% of our society adversely. We need to allow those who are vulnerable the real ability to quarantine and stay safe and healthy during these times. But for the majority, the time we really feel has come for us to move forward, positively forward as a group, as a community, teachers, staff, administrators, parents, and students. And we will follow these, we follow these requests to help flatten the curve. That's happened. It's happened in the last seven months. But now we feel that the time has come for the district to lead, to remain innovative, and to really be here for all of our students always. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Now we have a large amount of emails and public comments. Mr. Armstrong and Lombard are going to alternate reading those, so I want you to look for who's there. You speak loudly into the mic. People can hear you.
Okay, I will begin. I'll read these in chronological order in which they were received, and I'll alternate with Mrs. Lombard. I'll try to be speedy to respect the three minutes for each day.
I'll let you know when your three minutes is up.
Thank you. We have quite a number tonight. This is from Cory Meadwig. Good evening. I am a parent of a sixth grader and an eighth grader at Marlowe Middle School. We have had an amazing experience with D-158 through the years because of the excellent curriculum and caring teachers. When schools shut down in March, our teachers worked diligently to make sure our students maintained a rigorous curriculum and social, emotional learning activities to keep kids engaged, motivated, and healthy. This year, my kids have had a great experience with remote learning. They are hard workers, and they have excellent teachers on their side. The current schedule allows them time to learn from their teachers, ask questions, and get their work done. They are thriving in the midst of adversity and are learning a lot, although they, of course, do miss the face-to-face interaction they get with in-person learning. Still, this is not about my kids, this is about all students. I understand the parents want their kids back in school. I understand the benefits of in-person learning, and I know that remote learning does not work for every student and every family. But I'm also a teacher in another district, and I am worried about how sharp a complete change in the schedule will be for these students. As much as parents and teachers want to get back in the buildings with students, now is not the right time to make this change. Let's finish the semester. Let's look at where we are in January. Let's let kids have some consistency, because let's be honest, the likelihood of having to return to full remote learning before the end of the year is high. I know there have been some small groups of students meeting in person. Keep that. Bring in the students who are struggling, but don't put all students, their families, and their teachers at risk by opening the schools too soon. And don't punish those who choose to keep their kids at home in the name of safety. I understand McHenry County metrics allow many area schools to return to a hybrid model of learning right now, but let's be clear, it's true that we have not had an overwhelming outbreak of cases in our schools, but it is because we haven't had all the kids in the school. According to the data on the D-158 website as of 10/6/20, there have already been 18 confirmed cases of COVID in the district without having all kids returning to the buildings, and these are only cases that have been reported to the district. Most certainly, there are more. Finally, I want everyone to understand this. In-person learning at this time is not what school looked like before March. Students will not be interacting in halls and classrooms. Teachers will not be able to conference or work side by side with students. Collaboration will be minimal. Everyone will be wearing masks, and students will still be spending the majority of the day on their devices because we can't be closer than 60 or use shared materials. Let's face it, this is not business as usual, and we shouldn't treat it as such. To keep consistency and to maintain safety for students, families, and staff, please keep grades six or 12 in remote learning until at least January. In a time of so many unknowns, let's finish what we started. Sincerely, a concerned parent.
This is from Annette Rizzo. I fully support bringing students back to school in a safe and effective manner. However, the current plan does neither. As an educator, parent, and member of the community, I'm extremely concerned and find the current plan to be scientifically reckless. While I completely understand the plan for elementary students to return to the classroom, I do not think the reasoning applies to our middle school or high school students. The plan for elementary students allows for safety as they remain in contained groups. Elementary students will not come in contact with students outside of their group, and if a student has positive, contact tracing and monitoring to prevent spread can be done efficiently. In both the middle and high school, under the current plan, no contained groups are in place. As a middle school exploratory teacher, my students are from multiple grades and multiple pods. Groups of exploratory students will encounter hundreds of other students throughout the day. Their group is not isolated or contained. Several District 158 staff, including myself, also work in more than one building, worsening already uncontained interactions. Our first defense against this deadly virus is to isolate from large groups of people, and the current plan does not accommodate for this. Furthermore, if a student or teacher in any of these classes across the district has positive, contact tracing and monitoring to prevent spread will be nearly impossible. Another safety concern is our ability to properly sanitize our learning environments. The current schedule would allow for a three-minute passing period with the intent to prevent students from gathering in the halls. Teachers would be required to clean desks and set up for their next class during that time. We are not providing the cleaning supplies, nor have we the time or energy to clean in an efficient manner. The plan for elementary students also allows for more efficient learning environment. Through our at-home learning, we have determined that elementary students are not capable of e-learning to the capacity that our high school and middle school students are. With a safe environment in place and at-school learning for elementary students has benefits that outweigh the risk. This is not the case for our older students who are capable of e-learning. What will really happen in high school, middle school classrooms, and what parents and students believe will happen are not in sync. As an exploratory teacher, my students thrive in a cooperative learning and group environment. I have experienced videos demonstrating students from two separate homes collaborating on a short scene. These students have learned valuable presentation skills while having a social and emotional connection safely from separate locations. If students were allowed to learn in my classroom, I am not allowed to utilize partners or groups. Students would be required to remain six feet apart, which in my classroom is impossible. Students would not be allowed to share props or costumes, would not be allowed to speak while the class was in Zoom. The experience in my classroom would be isolating. Furthermore, as everyone would be required to wear a mask, the experience would be emotionless. In Zoom and in breakout rooms, students currently see my face and each other smiles. Due to previously listed circumstances, it is clear that high school, middle school students are capable of e-learning, would receive more interaction with more resources and tools if we continue to learn at home.
Thank you. Go ahead. Good.
This comment is from TJ Wychorak. Superintendent Rowe and the Board of Education, my disappointment and frustration with your handling of the COVID pandemic has continued to plague me day in and day out. I specifically moved my family into Huntley School District due to the positive experiences my oldest son, HS Junior, had during his early years of learning. With a fifth grader and now a kindergartner, I find myself questioning why I should stay in this district, let alone this state at all. Look at the science is all we ever hear from leaders of this state, and I believe that is exactly what the parents of this district are doing. Let's look at the data according to the McHenry County Department of Health. Population of McHenry County, 308,000. McHenry County confirmed cases 4,838 in a county with a population of 308,000 or .015%. We know the hyperbole of our leadership has us thinking this pandemic is leading to apocalyptic levels of death, or I believe the phrase used was a return to school would be catastrophic. Once again, looking at the data shows us that this is not, in fact, the case. Of those 4,838 cases not associated with long-term care facilities, we have a total of 31 deaths in McHenry, or .006% total death from those that fall ill, and only one death between the age of 20 to 29 and two between 40 to 49. LTCF obviously needs to be treated and cared for differently, but I'm not sure how that has to do with the school district. People need to be responsible and take care of their neighbors, but again, I think that is happening throughout the community and can happen in schools. The lockdown of schools, businesses, restaurants, sports, and on and on was to slow the curve and allow hospitals to prepare so we don't overflow the healthcare system. That has not happened, never once. The healthcare systems have been able to manage perfectly fine. Now, our solution is hybrid learning, in which my kindergartner and fifth grader go twice a week for a total of five hours. Five hours? What an absolute joke. Who in leadership in Huntley School District looked at this plan and said, "Yes, this is a terrific idea. Let's make this as hard on the parents and kids as possible. Let's stop these kids back and forth with zero consistency, and that makes the most sense." Only thing I can think is that leadership thought parents would think the plan is so ridiculous, they would be forced to keep them home. Now, my children have the following schedule because we have to split kids. Five hours of live learning, 7.5 hours of e-learning, 12.5 hours of asynchronous learning, about 4.5 hours of travel from 11:00 to 11:55 each day. What studies of children's pedagogy show that 50% of learning ages kindergarten through fifth grade should be spent in asynchronous learning? I don't pretend to be an expert in childhood education, but we are supposed to follow the data. Where can we find these studies and this data showing this as a positive for our children? At leadership, you have decided to value flexibility and affordability over academic rigor and instructional depth that in-person education allows?
Okay, that's it.
This is Beatrice Anan. Hello, Dr. Rowe and the entire school board. I am writing this email to you as a concerned parent of District 158. I first want to commend all the teachers and staff for doing a wonderful job with remote learning thus far, and although the beginning of the school year, the remote learning was not what we all wanted, I feel my kids have adapted to the schedule, and we finally worked out most of the issues and have gotten used to our schedule and are settled in nicely through remote learning. I want to commend Mrs. Halaba, who is my son's teacher. She's done a wonderful job so far. With the winter months about to start, I was at ease that my kids will be safe this flu season at home, and I was hoping that after winter break, we would have some good news about breakthrough treatments and vaccines for COVID-19 so the kids could start to return safely to school hopefully in the spring. Why have you chosen to send kids to school at the beginning of flu season while we live through a pandemic is beyond me, but that's not my biggest concern since we're given a choice to either choose the hybrid model or remote learning. My frustration and unhappiness is with the new schedule that is being released for remote learning students. Why have you taken away valuable instructional time and specials like Explore that my kids look forward to from the remote learning students in replacement of asynchronous lessons? With this new schedule, my child is basically left to be on their own all morning and only have live instruction in the afternoon except on Wednesdays. I'm not sure what you expect, students and parents, but this schedule is a slap in the face for students who are not able to attend in-person classes, and in my child's case, the reason why we chose remote learning is due to him having an underlying disease that will be fatal if he contracted COVID-19. As a parent of one of these kids, I cannot tell you enough how disappointing this is. This is a new schedule that will fail our kids, thanks to satisfied parents.
This comment is from Beth Knott. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present my thoughts and concerns with you tonight. My name is Beth Knott, and I have been a high school math teacher in our district since 2004. In the previous sentence, I wrote "our" district because that is how I think of District 158. I take pride in teaching in our district, and I take ownership in helping to create the best educational environment we can for our students. I've been part of many committees as a teacher and represented our teachers as a union representative and executive board member. Like many situations, I've not always agreed with the decisions that were made, but I never felt like my voice was disregarded. I respect our administrators and Board of Education members because I know they have a singular goal of providing the best education possible for our students. However, in the plan to return to hybrid learning for the middle school and high school, I cannot say this is the case. The plan was presented to the HGA Executive Board, and it was made very clear that we did not have a voice in this plan. I truly believe when we can collaboratively move forward in the best interest of students and staff, we work best when we can collaboratively move forward in the best interest of our students. As a teacher with health concerns, I am worried about my own health and the health of my family. My father is 77 years old and has health concerns. I will be unable to visit him or possibly provide any assistance he may require because of my job. As I understand it, my choice is to put aside my concerns and return to work or to take FMLA leave. I do not want to take FMLA leave because I want to teach. As a veteran teacher of 24 years, teaching is my passion. Like most of us here tonight, I love working with kids and desperately miss the pre-COVID educational environment. I want students to resume in-person classes in a manner that is as safe as possible for all. Students, parents, teachers, and administrators have been going through unprecedented times. We need to work together to find the appropriate time and manner to bring our students back. I know that remote learning is not the ideal learning environment, and some of our students and families at HHS have truly struggled during this time. My heart breaks for them, and I want to find a way to help these students while maintaining student and staff safety. Teachers are not against students returning to school, but simply want done in the safest manner possible for all. I want my students to be successful as possible and want to find a way to make that happen safely. We need to find a way to work together to find the best way to reopen our schools and educate our students. Thank you for your time listening to my safety and educational concerns.
This comment is from Tom George. Good evening. My name is Tom George. Many of you know me as I have taught in the district for 22 years this year, and I have appeared before you many times over the years. Tonight, I'm having this read aloud to you instead of me speaking in person because my doctor believes it's irresponsible of me to be in large gatherings. I believe the return to school on November 2nd is reckless and not well thought out. As I penned this letter, a private school less than 30 miles from us had to move to remote learning because of COVID, and let's face it, that school has many less people in the building than we have in the hybrid situation. I want to humanize this decision for you tonight. If indeed staff is required If indeed staff is required to return to work on November 2nd without the ability to work from home, this decision will effectively end my career as a public school teacher. I've had the pleasure of teaching, coaching, and directing some of your children. They would tell you that I've always had a great passion for teaching and doing right by students. Dr. Rowe and Dr. Bealan have seen this firsthand. I think I'm an excellent teacher who has more to give to the students at HHS. I know we're all replaceable. If I have to retire because of the school or because of the return to school policy without an option of teaching from home, the district will have to hire an adjunct from MCC. That individual will likely not have an education degree. They won't have experience communicating with parents or how to help students who need emotional support in the classroom. You'll be hiring a content specialist. In the second semester, you could move more than one hundred students enrolled in dual credit speech to different classes and deny them the opportunity to earn college credit in a class that is clearly one of the most stressful gen ed classes at the college level. I do not believe that starting hybrid on November 2nd is responsible. If you must open, please allow people like me with comorbidity problems to teach from home. Please allow me to continue with my greatest passion in life, which is teaching the children of District 158. Sincerely, Tom George.
This comment is from Janice Braun. Good evening. I am writing to you to voice my concern that requests to work remotely with a signed document from a physician indicating a need for this are not being considered for staff. I have requested that I would be able to work remotely versus taking an FMLA leave, which only leaves the district in a compromised situation since we are already short school psychologists. Most of my job can be accomplished remotely. The only accommodation is that in-person testing for some students be completed by another psychologist. Many evaluations can be completed with just data analysis, which I can access remotely. My job is significantly more than just in-person testing with students, but it is not just about me. I am writing because I feel that the district is not taking individual cases into account in general to consider working remotely. I do not have a classroom to manage. I am sure there are others in this situation who also have medical issues and are not required to manage a classroom. We're all about differentiation and accommodations and modifications in our work, yet we are not allowed to have any as staff. Sincerely and respectfully, Janice Braun.
Comment is from Eddie Galvez to the Board and Superintendent. I'm sure what I am about to say is nothing you haven't heard before, but I feel it's my responsibility to share my thoughts with you anyway. Our children are struggling and falling behind. I can appreciate the changes that have been made with e-learning this year, but nothing will ever replace in-person teaching. This pandemic did not occur yesterday. We've had months to prepare for our kids' children safe at school. I feel it is my feeling that we have failed at this task, and we are too scared of the liability of bringing our children back. At a school board meeting where the children were headed heading back to in-person learning at the beginning of the year, I heard the superintendent state that we had all the PPE needed to keep our children safe. In the last school board meeting, I heard the president of the board state the reason we didn't come back was because of the teachers' union. One side blames the other, and at the end, nothing gets accomplished. A report came out this week that all universities in the country reported their COVID cases for their students. The country had about seventy thousand cases for students in universities in the whole country. Three were hospitalized and zero passed away. I believe that this is that this decision for the superintendent and school board is not an easy one, but you can't be afraid to make a tough decision. We can't let the fear dictate our decision-making. By no means am I saying we don't need to be extra cautious and prepare for children to be socially distant and wearing masks at all times. As for teachers, you've chosen a noble profession that is essential to our children, our community, and our country. You are an essential worker. In these crazy times, there are risks in all of our job sites, not just from COVID, but from multiple factors. Just like every essential worker in the country, everyone needs to look within to see if you're willing or able to risk to take the risk to do your job. Take every precaution that is necessary to make yourself feel comfortable, and at the end of the day, you're needed, and that expectation is for you to come back to work and help the children you've committed to help. Now, on a personal note, my daughter is in inaugural class for the dual-language program. My wife and I did everything we could to prepare for second grade, including getting her tutors because e-learning did last year did nothing for her. We had great hopes in this program and still do, but we fear the lack of in-person teaching is making her fall so far behind that she won't be able to recover in a timely manner. I had such great hopes for this program, and now I fear that if I moved her to another school or moved her out of the program, she would be so far behind, it would be demoralizing for her. I feel special intervention is needed for our dual-language learners so that they can succeed. In conclusion, we have had sufficient time to prepare. All school districts around us are going back. We need to be able to make decisions for our children that are going to benefit them not only during COVID but long after. It's time to find a way for our children to go back to school, a bare minimum of four days a week. I'd be happy to help in any way possible to get this accomplished. I don't expect it to be done solely by you and the board.
This comment is from Beverly Smith. On Monday, the administration of my school shared our district's plan to reopen our middle schools and high schools in less than one month. The plan allows for parents to make a decision, they will be given eight days, on whether their middle and/or high schoolers will return to their buildings on a hybrid model two days per week or remain remote. The basics of the plan are as follows. Mondays are remote for all. Students will see all their teachers and attend all nine periods on their schedule through Zoom or other platform or have asynchronous work assigned by their teachers. Class periods are forty-five minutes. Students opting for the hybrid model will either return to their building on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday Friday schedule. The students will have one live instruction class per subject per week as we continue a block schedule line for one hour and fifteen minute periods, with students attending half their classes on one day and half the other day. On the remote days when they're home, it's the administration's suggestion to push out asynchronous plans on those remote days as teachers will have second set of students in the building to teach. As I sat at home Monday night trying to process this information, I decided to make a pros and cons list with my daughter, who is an eighth grader, and my son, a senior, both in this district. Here's what we came up with. Pros: being in the building, seeing each other in person, getting out of our homes. Cons: less live instruction time, fewer opportunities for group work, schedule changes, possible teacher team changes, being on a bus with others, wearing masks for seven hours, reduced curriculum again, eating lunch at desks spaced out throughout the school with little to no peer interaction, sanitation issues, lack of PPE, plexiglass, et cetera. Allowing students to sanitize a classroom, greater exposure to COVID and flu colds, et cetera, potentially spreading COVID back to our families and community, less accountability for students' attendance issues, more busy work for students versus live instruction. This list left me feeling less than confident in this return-to-school plan. In fact, it scares the heck out of me. I decided to do a little research. We know that children have a lower risk of having any serious repercussions contracting COVID-19, but the risk is not nonexistent. A new report from the American Academy of Pediatrics indicates that cumulative cases doubled from July 9th to August 13th, all before school was even in session. The number increased from about two hundred thousand to more than four hundred six thousand. Physically reopening schools might accelerate the increase, potentially raising the number of children with severe symptoms and sparring spread among the community at large. This is quite disturbing to say the least. I fear that by opening our buildings, the cases will spike, and the community will be scrambling again, as we'll be forced to go back to remote learning. Another resource I found was the NEA tracker. This spreadsheet was started by a teacher in Kansas, and the NEA posted it. This tracker is a way to see the cases in school districts in each state. Doesn't even appear to be updated in the last few weeks, and the numbers are already discouraging. In reflecting on this plan, I do not believe the benefits outweigh the negatives. Let me explain the cons from my list. Less teacher contact time, less student accountability, more busy work, and less actual teaching. Cutting the already cut curriculum, fewer opportunities for students to work in groups.
This comment is from Kinsey Wright. Good evening. My name is Kinsey Wright, and I am both a Huntley alum as well as one of the multilingual teachers in this wonderful district at our beautiful Huntley High School. I was born in Huntley and was able to experience being taught out of a mobile at South School, running the halls of Huntley Middle School, opening Heinemann, and then being part of the last class to graduate in the East Gym. I take a lot of pride in the fact that I teach at my alma mater and never hesitated to express to people how wonderful our school system is to be part of as a student. I can't even begin to explain how heartbreaking the last seven months of our lives have been as teachers. I miss my students' faces, hearing their laughter, our dance party Fridays, and our class breakfasts on Tuesday. I became a teacher because I wanted to make a difference in the lives of my students and ensure that every kid that comes within my path knows that somebody in this world loves them and will do anything to keep them safe. With that being said, I do worry about the picture that has been painted to our families with our most current return-to-learn plan that is in place for the high school level. One of the most magical things about Huntley is the relationships that are created here in the building during academic hours and outside of it during athletics, clubs, and theater. We cannot sufficiently and safely allow those relationships to grow while students are coming back into our building. Students will have assigned seats not only in our classrooms, but also in the common areas, including lunch, where they won't get to sit at a table with friends, but maintain a social a six-foot distance and look at the same direction. During passing periods, students will not be allowed to linger in the halls and catch up, but instead have to move swiftly to their next location, removing the opportunity for socialization as well. Students will be housed in waiting areas in the morning until the bell rings to release them. We're teaching from our computers, even if students are in our rooms, meaning they'll be doing the same exact work online, learning just in a desk in our building versus in their homes, which is a place I hope fosters love, care, hope, and calm for them. Another concern I have is that I won't have the ability to sanitize all the desks as well as supervise their distancing in the hallway at the same time. This poses two safety risks, the first being that there will be lingering germs on desks that will have been marinating there for the previous ninety minutes, and secondly, that students are not supervised in the hallway. Not to mention, I won't have the proper PPE to be sanitizing and cleaning all spaces effectively and safely on my own. I strongly encourage anyone who is truly on board with kids to return this quickly to substitute in our buildings for when the staff have to be out for the inevitable ten days wait period. Not for if, but instead of when, they come in contact with another who tests positive or to volunteer their time to come in and help us disinfect everything in our buildings after the students touch during our passing period. It does hurt having the community that raised me and that used to be out providing and securing safety for all, quickly seeming to turn into just providing a quick solution for the loudest few. I watched the board meeting where parents came in and spoke. Most of the parents discussed the lack of socialization during remote learning as the number-one issue.
This comment is from Patrick Ryan. Dear Board, I am writing into tonight's meeting because I think it is important to make public that the ATA union members do not support your proposed plan for return-to-learn under the hybrid model. Roughly seventy-two percent of middle school and high school members did not support, yet the board wants to continue to institute this plan. My direct question to each of you is, where is the care for your staff? You are identifying that it is not yet safe for a full return to school by doing the hybrid plan. School-aged children and parents will be given the choice on whether or not they wish to participate in this hybrid model, and your staff has not. You are basically trying to bully your members to do what you wish in a very short period of time while providing a lack of answers to many logistical questions and concerns that have been posed. Additionally, for those that have extenuating circumstances like medical or childcare issues, you are asking them to decide between using FMLA or returning full-time. That is extremely disheartening to hear when you have the technology available to make reasonable accommodations. For those that will be forced to take FMLA, you will be challenged to find quality job candidates mid-year. I can only imagine this decision is going to cause a staffing issue. How does that help children in the long run? At some point, a decision will need to be made to have all students and staff return to school. We all need to be prepared for that day, but the board has identified that we are not yet at that point where it is safe to do so based on the plan being put into place. One would think the board would extend some courtesy to their staff or really listen to the concerns being brought to the table before rushing out a solution that the large majority does not agree with based on the aforementioned survey results. I truly hope that each union member remembers the board's actions when the next contract negotiation begins because the board will be forced to listen to HGA membership then. Best regards, Patrick Ryan.
This next comment is from an HGA member who would like to remain anonymous.
Is their name listed there?
No.
No, we don't. We don't accept anonymous comments. You have to, you're making a public comment. You normally would have to be here accommodating these because of the time, but you can't. You can't be anonymous on a public comment if you don't know what the source is, who it's from. So, the next one.
Well, this next comment is from Jory Gannick. Good evening. I first want to thank all the teachers and staff working at all the schools in the district. As a teacher myself, I know the preparation it takes to create and deliver lessons remotely, all while making connections with your students and troubleshooting technological issues. You're all amazing, and you all are appreciated. My daughter has a wonderful and dedicated teacher who has gone above and beyond. My family has stayed selected to stay with remote learning as we put safety first. I know that remote is not working for all families, but my husband and I do not feel comfortable sending our daughter back in the midst of flu season and do not agree with the monthly self-check as it is proven that parents send and will continue to send their children to school when they're sick. Thank you for allowing us to choose safety. With that, I ask that for those who have selected safety with remote learning, please do not forget about these eager and impressionable minds who will be learning from home. These children are still very much part of the district, and we fear that they will be left behind. As parents, we are all advocating for and working to help our children the best we know how to ensure that they're receiving quality instruction and retaining the information taught. As more in-person is added, we fear that the students who have selected safety will have more disruptions to their routine. Children need consistency and to build upon the connections already made with their classroom teachers. Please do not take away from them as we move forward further into the school year. We hope, we all hope that this pandemic will soon be over, and all students can return to school as they have come to know it. I know and understand the one-size-fits-all plan does not exist, and the decisions for the entire school district are not made lightly, but please keep safety and equality at the forefront of your mind when making future decisions. Sincerely, Jory Gannick.
This comment is from Steve Sturm to the district. I will speak very bluntly as serious issues require frank and direct communication. The message you are sending to your employees is very clear. You expect us to sacrifice our lives and the lives of our families for the lifestyle of some of our community's families. I refuse to accept that choice. I have several serious comorbidities that make a return to the classroom potentially a life-ending event. In last night's debate, Vice President Pence said the pandemic is lethal twice. Please believe the head of the nation's pandemic task force. It is lethal. More than two hundred and seventeen thousand bodies confirm that. You are concerned about offering your students and parents a choice. I fully understand the need for that, as I have two special needs learners to assist in my home as I teach our students. My son William is eleven and is very concerned about his safety and mine at school. My son Henry is sixteen but must still be fed by hand and diapered. He desperately needs in-person life skills learning at Woodstock North, but he cannot return to in-person education because he will not be able to wear a mask or take precautions. I certainly understand the needs of parents, but you are denying your employees, many of whom are voters in your district, many of whom are also parents, the ability to make the same choice for their families. You are writing a short-term check against future goodwill of your relations with your employees. If you think this choice will not affect future labor relations, you are seriously mistaken. Yet again, teachers are expected to solve problems they do not create. I can follow social media as well as anybody. Interestingly, many of the loudest voices demanding a return to students in our school building are also opposed to the government providing more pandemic relief for families. Why? Because they expect my colleagues and I to risk our lives and solve the problem for them. Many of the loudest voices demanding a return to classrooms are publicly posting pictures of themselves at weddings, parties, family gatherings, restaurants, and bars where no precautions are being taken. Choosing vacation destinations based on what state won't require them to take precautions. My family has made many sacrifices over this time, yet you want to make our safety dependent on the known recklessness of others. It is not right for others to make these choices for me and my family. You know this is not safe. You are merely estimating risk with little reliable information. You know there are many unknowns. Why could we not wait until next semester as other districts are doing? We have no idea what the effect will be of the coronavirus cold and flu season together. We have no idea whether the very expensive precautions you are taking will be successful. I am alarmed to see policy decisions being made with clear misunderstandings on some of the science here, like how viral loads work. We have no idea whether we will make a dangerous return to classrooms and spread serious illness only to have vaccine arrive weeks later. We could be placing the health of our students, families, and employees at risk needlessly, and then sending them out of an infectious environment back home just in time for extended family holidays. The community is viewing a false choice. The choice is not between remote learning on one hand and socialization, emotional, and mental health, and a successful academic experience on the other.
Thank you.
This next comment is from Laura Jenkins. Good evening, Board and Cabinet members. My name is Laura Jenkins, an HGA member and math teacher at Huntley High School. Staff members were sent a padlet where they might express concerns related to the return-to-learn plan presented to staff if they had any. Reading through them, several themes emerged. The posts below are concerns related to student learning and well-being. Here they are, unedited. For kids' sake, listen.
For kids' sake, listen. These kids are not just my students, they're my family, school family. I care deeply for their well-being, for their physical and mental health. I am a teacher who believes in building a community of learners. As a class, we share our ideas and our concerns. I listen to them in order to teach them. Have you listened to them? They don't want to wear masks, they don't want to be separated from their friends, they don't want to get their family sick. How sad that they, we are making our students, our children frightened, anxious about learning they want to return to normal. Students are getting more live instruction during remote learning than they will get during hybrid. Currently, I'm on four-and-a-half hours live with my students a day. Now we're changing it to two-and-a-half. How is this best practice? How is this benefiting the students? We have finally gotten into a routine, students and teachers both, and now we're changing everything. Right now, I'm able to speak to all my students privately in breakout rooms, answering emails as they come in, and delivering instructions to all in an effective way. Even though this is a lot of work compared to if students were here in person, we have all found ways to get as close as possible to a balance. You are now requiring us to amend this to the detriment of all three of my listed successes. I ask you to consider how the return-to-learn plan upends the current classroom routines and practices, limits live instruction, and the teachers' accessibility to all students. Thank you, Laura Jenkins.
This comment was submitted by Anthony Camara. Hello, I would first like to start off by saying that I love teaching and have been a teacher for the last twenty-six years of my life with over twenty of that time spent being a dedicated teacher in District 158. However, I am very concerned about the safety of our students, staff, our families, and myself with the buildings being open to in-person instruction during this current pandemic. I personally have some very serious health concerns of my own as well as the serious health issue of the people I love. These people are the closest people in the world to me and depend on me for help. They are dealing with life-threatening illnesses and exposure to COVID through me could end their lives. I have self-isolated since the beginning of this pandemic for my safety as well as theirs with only venturing out for absolutely necessary situations and following CDC's guidelines as well as Governor Fritzker's guidelines. With the reopening plan my and many people's only current employment option outside, putting myself in this reopen in-person learning situation is unpaid FMLA, which is not an option. I am afraid for the lives of many, including my family, my friends, everyone in the school buildings, as well as myself with the incredibly high potential for carrying virus to people outside of work that I could potentially kill with COVID exposure. In recent days, thirty-nine states have had COVID spikes in cases. Teaching shouldn't be a health or death risk, and I am being forced to make a decision to be without employment or risk to the lives of many through this decision to go back to a reopen to in-person instruction situation. When remote learning and teaching is done with proper preparation and resources, it can be and has shown to be a very effective and safe situation for teachers, students, and all our families. Thank you for your time.
This next comment is from Denise Spanford. Dear Superintendent, Cabinet, and Board Members, I spent a lot of time yesterday racking my brain for ways to express my concern about students returning to the building without politicizing the issue, but after watching the debate last night, I don't think I can. We're in a pandemic, but the current administration would like us to pretend that we're not. According to a Cornell University study, the president is the largest source of COVID-19 misinformation. He desires to change the narrative of the pandemic, as propagating all aspects of our recovery, including concealing data, touting miracle cures, and bragging about his special treatment somehow means the virus is easy to beat. We're still at risk, all of us, your children, my students, my coworkers, myself, and my elderly mother at home. We are still living in a pandemic. Teenagers can contract and spread the virus. Yes, the McHenry County rates are currently low compared to the national numbers, but the number of cases reported in the McHenry County on October 5th was higher than any date in April, May. Does that truly sound like the situation is under control in our area? Are you comfortable with the idea of a child or a teacher dying from the virus in our district? Are our teams practicing safe social distancing and mask-wearing, or are they traveling to high-risk Wisconsin and Indiana for sports and weekend fun? Are our families zipping down to Florida to take advantage of the low Disney attendance? Are they staging their own homecoming and proms? Are they gathering for basement parties and bonfires? Are students are flaunting their disregard for their safety all over social media? I will not link pictures here, but I am sure you have seen them. Your team may be very well-being and unwitting asymptomatic carrier now sharing airspace and respiratory droplets with others. Do our students and parents realize that coming back to the building does not mean traveling back in time to November of 2019? This is what the COVID classroom looks like. Assigned seating, faces forward, there's no collaborative group work, the room is devoid of personality to, and we've been told to remove furniture and personal items. Your students will be sitting alone in a six-foot box of a lunchroom table, not hanging out with friends, rehashing what happened at the Red Raider football game last Friday. Has your child practiced wearing a mask for seven-and-a-half hours? I smile and emote as much as possible at the Zoom classroom. Will your students look like looking at my emotional, motionless mask? Actually, the rhetoric question, rhetorical question, because I will be simultaneously teaching to my Zoom students, so my live students probably won't be looking at my face anyway as I try to stay within close range of my laptop camera and microphone. Pre-COVID me would love to pull up a chair next to a student struggling with an assignment. This won't be happening. There won't be high-fives in the hallway or fist bumps after a successful presentation. This will be electronic learning in-person. No one likes living in the pandemic. We're all tired of this situation. We've been held in our own government's lack of responsibility, but we cannot return to the classroom yet. We are not ready, Huntley.
This comment is from Amy DiCibato. Good evening, Board and Cabinet members. I am Amy DiCibato, an ATA member and teacher of the SNAP program at Marla Middle School. I bring to you today concerns written by fellow staff members. I will be addressing teachers' concerns regarding their own mental health and well-being. There is no consideration for the teachers' mental health. Teachers are already being held together by a string. We're just told to suck it up and do our job. My mental health is already suffering, and I am on anxiety and depression medication that have been increased three times due to the pandemic and the effect it has had on me. I don't know if I can withstand this. The same exhaustion and stress that has started to lift just a small amount is going to be back tenfold once the kids come back. We are told to take time for us to focus on our mental health. I cannot have time for myself when I am consumed with planning for in-person, remote, four-day students, and asynchronous. The stress of everything impacts my family, and that is not acceptable. I can't begin to explain the amount of stress us teachers are under. My mental health is suffering, my family life is suffering, and I have become completely burnt out. We cannot take any more, nor can we live up to the expectations that you have for us. Something has to give. I cannot even begin to explain the stress all of this has caused my life. Not only do I feel as though I am failing in my job, but I am failing as a mother as well. I honestly have a breakdown every day because of the stress this is all causing on me. This is causing a lot of stress and pressure on my daily life on top of trying to become a remote teacher and reach my students and meet all my teacher's duties. I've lost sleep and my stress and anxiety have never been as high as it is now. I truly love my job, but this is bringing me to a breaking point. I am overworked and stressed every single day. I'm worried about my students, my family, and myself. I love my job, but not a minute goes by that I am not stressing about something to change. I cannot even begin to explain the stress all of this has caused my life. Not only do I feel as though I am failing in my job, but I am failing as a mother as well. I honestly have a breakdown every day because of the stress this is all causing on me. We put on a smiling face, but our insides are crumbling. I ask you to consider the pressure you are putting on your staff and how it is affecting their mental health on a daily basis. At what point will it become too much?
This next comment is from Lori Searl. Dear District 158, as a parent of a third and fourth grader who has chosen to continue with remote learning, I write to you to express my sincere gratitude and also some of my concerns as we head into this next phase with a hybrid schedule. First and foremost, thank you to all the teachers and administrators who are working so tirelessly to make the school year as smooth as possible. While e-learning is not ideal, our family has found our groove in remote learning is working well for our family. We want nothing more to have our kids back into school, but not until we feel it is safe. We do not feel comfortable at this time with the numbers as we are entering into the cold and flu season. We truly appreciate that we are able to choose remote at this time, but we can't stress enough our concern of having children be left behind in the midst of it all. Our kids love their teachers and the schedule is working for them, so we're fearful about how things might all change weeks from now. We don't want to see what has been a positive experience turn into a stressful and frustration when they will be expected to work independently so many hours at a time. Please help to ensure that the new schedule will truly provide equality for students whether at home or in school. Thank you, a concerned parent.
This comment is from Donna Coons. The mission of the nurses at District 158 has always been to support education. We recognize the importance of the children returning to school for their academic success and social, emotional health. We, as nurses, would like to focus on the physical health concerns we have for the students and staff at District 158. Concern number one, student staff safety. We want to say upfront, there is no way any public area, including school, is safe from the coronavirus. There are cases in our schools currently, and there is a false sense of security about these numbers on the district dashboard because many district families do not report that their child has tested positive. The primary mode of communication about positive cases is through a report from the teachers who receive emails from students. In order to prevent the spread of this virus, accurate reporting by a parent must be a priority whether school is in remote or in-person learning. Concern number two, preventing the spread of COVID-19. Another issue related to a positive case is the fact that many parents are refusing to cooperate with contact tracing, the means by which close contacts are identified and quarantined, again limiting the spread of the virus. The Health Department notified us that they will not be able to notify the schools of positive cases. Some of the rapid tests being completed in physicians' offices are not being reported to them, once again allowing more unidentified cases in our community. Containing the virus is the only means by which we are going to be able to track the illness and prevent school closures. Concern number three, if your child has symptoms or develops COVID-like symptoms, the nurses will be following the Illinois Department of Public Health Decision Tree dated 9/10/20 to determine what to do if the child shows a COVID-like symptom at school. Children must be kept home from school if they complain of or have any of the wide variety of symptoms that are COVID-like, or if they become ill at school, they will be sent home from school. In both situations, the students will need to isolate for ten days. Siblings, even those at other school buildings, will also need to be picked up by a parent that same day to quarantine for fourteen days. Parents are expected to retrieve their children immediately as the isolation area of the Health Office will need to be disinfected according to CDC guidelines. Parents need to understand that school will be very different during in-person learning. Parent education is of utmost importance. The IDPA guidelines will be followed as written. Several nurses have already experienced the need to send a child home and have faced verbal abuse and refusal from parents. Parents must realize that the only way their children will be able to return to in-person learning if they are a suspect or confirmed case is by isolating at home for ten days or submitting a doctor's note with an alternative diagnosis explaining their child's symptoms or submitting proof of a negative COVID test. Everyone needs to understand that the same protocol applies to staff members and staffing, and concerns that come with the need to quarantine teachers will be an issue. Concern number four, parent and student education. It is a parental responsibility to complete monthly screenings, yet they are not being filled out regularly. Most surrounding districts require daily screenings to ensure that parents are not sending their children to school when ill. Daily screenings ensure that the parents monitor the child's health every morning and better measure of their symptoms. Student education is also very important. Thank you for considering our concerns.
This next comment is from Christine DeBolt. Members of District 158 School Board, I am proud to be in my fourteenth year as a teacher within District 158 at Huntley High School. In December of 2019, my husband was diagnosed with cancer. Since that time, he has undergone several surgeries and is currently receiving ongoing chemo treatments. There is a global shortage of medication needed to prevent a recurrence of his cancer. He is fortunate to qualify for a clinical trial at Northwestern Hospital in Chicago. His oncologists have provided me with medical accommodation paperwork requesting that both he and the family limit exposure in the workplace during this ongoing pandemic. Their treatment schedule is time-sensitive, meaning it follows this prescribed schedule that must be adhered to if he is to remain in this trial. Physician informed that he or a member of his household contracts COVID-19 during treatments, he would be removed from the trial and no longer have access to this potential lifesaving medication. In July, when the first hybrid model was being considered, the district approved my medical accommodation requesting to teach classes remotely. I've been teaching in a fully remote setting since the beginning of October, since the beginning of the school year. I believe that my students would agree that we are off to a fantastic start. On October 5th, with the news of the second hybrid learning model, that all changed when I received the news from District 158 Human Resources that they were revoking my medical accommodation and that I would be forced to return to the in-person setting if I was to keep my job. Human Resources has only offered vague and unclear direction in their limited communication with me regarding a reconsideration of my request to continue teaching in a remote setting. I then reached out to Dr. Rowe directly, and emails to him have gone unanswered. Dr. Rowe's lack of response to an overwhelming majority of his teachers who feel uncomfortable about this hybrid plan is disappointing, and he has soured the culture in my workplace. I am now faced with the decision of leaving the career I love for the safety of my family or returning to a workplace that could put my family's health at risk. The return-to-school plan gives students the choice to return or not based on their individual situation. I am simply asking that you afford your staff the same opportunities you have given our students so that they can make a decision that they believe is truly in the best interest in their health as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Comments from Laura Argentine. Please indicate if there will be a day and/or time for freshman students to come to the school to orient themselves to the building, classroom locations, entrances, schedules, etc., prior to the start of in-person instruction, and if this is not part of the proposed revaluation plan, how will the ninth graders be helped with the transition to Huntley High School to their most successful? Please explain what lunch and PPE will look like as well as any other large group activities. Thank you for your continued support of our students, teachers, and families. We appreciate all of you and your hard work, dedication, and thoughtfulness during these unprecedented times.
This next comment is from Denise Swifter. Good evening, Board and Cabinet members. My name is Denise Swifter. I am a parent and ATA member and a teacher at the Early Childhood Center. I share voices of staff who have concerns regarding the workload related to their return-to-learn plan. From a professional standpoint, my workload will grow to a manageable level, so I fear the quality of my classes will suffer. Currently, I provide formative feedback in the form of comments and student work. I have one-hundred-and-sixty students every other day. Currently, I am able to keep up with because of the asynchronous time that allows me the next day turnaround. I won't be able to create curriculum, work with my students, and give meaningful feedback and keep them engaged. For my own sake, I will not be able to teach or assess at the same level I am now. For giving up our hours of time to assure that everything is right and the lesson is engaging and it's going to work with the technology only to be asked now to do it twice, teachers always come through and we always make it work, and I am tired. I'm afraid that the hybrid plan will forever change the way I feel and think about the job that I once loved beyond belief. I dread coming to work every day, I cringe at the sight of email, and I cry literally every day. Teachers are already having to remake lessons, every lesson that we teach while grading and making contact with students and families. It may not sound like much, but this workload is already daunting, and I really don't think I can take one more thing. We're holding it together, but asking us to teach remote and in-person is just too much. Teachers are already stretched men in this remote learning environment and now they're being asked to manage students on Zoom and person and fully remote all within the same class at the same time. The teachers are having mental breakdowns that will greatly affect their students and the classroom environment as well. It's very difficult for me and my colleagues to wrap our heads around how the remote planning will look or work. Teachers are being asked to juggle at three, at least three different groups of students at once, fully remote, in-person, and on Zoom, all within the same class time. I'm also very concerned about the three-minute passing periods and the inability for teachers and students to use the bathroom, the need to sanitize and prepare for the next class. Everything is so different, yet when we adjust with a new, the new now, it changes again. When will we stop changing the routines for our teachers and our students?
This comment is from Ann Peavy. Good evening, my name is Ann Peavy. I am the parent of a kindergartner and eighth grader. I am reaching out to share our experience with remote learning thus far as I feel the positive remote learning experiences have been largely underrepresented. My eighth grader is thriving this year with remote learning. His GPA has so far been above his average in years past. His teachers are wonderful, and communication from teachers to my son and myself has been great. My son has expressed that he is able to focus much better on what is being taught while learning at home. We've had no issues so far, aside from him occasionally confusing his scheduled days, but we are working on that. So far, so good. My kindergartner is doing great with remote learning as well. The first few weeks were an adjustment for him, of course, but that would have occurred whether we were home or in-person. Being a new kindergartner is a tough job. I was unsure how it would go with a kiddo so young that hasn't had the chance to experience in-person elementary school, but he is excited for school every day. He has a wonderful teacher who he completely adores and that fosters communication between the children in class, so he's feeling connected to his classmates. He's learning so much and is excited to learn. That is a win. That being said, with the changes that will be occurring to That being said, with the changes that will be occurring to remote learning when the hybrid schedule begins is very concerning. My kindergartner is five. He is at his best in the morning. Changing our routine to having all of the synchronous learning occur in the afternoon will be a major change and challenge for us. He loves the morning kickoff Zoom. It gets him set and excited for each day. Not seeing and interacting with his teacher or classmates until after lunchtime each day is not ideal. While I do not know what the hybrid plan looks like for middle school, I know it will impact remote learners' class schedules. My eighth grader is doing well and has gotten into a good routine. I'm concerned if there is a schedule flip similar to the one happening with elementary, it will be a setback for him. Both of our children will be remaining remote learners. We are very grateful that this option is offered by the district, giving us the ability to make the best choices for our family during this unprecedented time. I realize that remote learners will be only around 30% of elementary students once the hybrid schedule is in effect. I understand operating both hybrid and remote schedules simultaneously is incredibly difficult. However, I'm concerned that remote learning may be given less consideration now due to having less children than those opting for the hybrid model. I realize both groups cannot have everything aligned perfectly, but it is my hope that their needs are considered equally. Thank you for your time, and thank you to our teachers and administrators for all of your hard work and sincere dedication. We appreciate all you do sincerely, Anne Peavy.
This next comment is from Jessica Lubarski. Good evening, my comment is three parts. For background, we have two children at Leggie in grades one and five and have chosen the hybrid option. My first concern is regarding the RTI and the impact the hybrid model will have on this. Currently, my child is attending RTI four days a week in the afternoon in school. With the new hybrid model, she will now only receive in-person in-school assistance two days a week. In speaking with the school, the RTI program seems to have been an act of thought by the district in this hybrid process, with little thought given to how the impact of less RTI assistance will have on these kids. My second concern is based more on my first grade, my first grader's learning. We have now just gotten into the routine of daily schedule, which will now be flipped on its head. I'm disappointed that there is not at minimum a morning Zoom check-in to establish the plan and schedule for each day regardless if they're in Group A or B. With the new hybrid model, we are now, we now have huge chunks of asynchronous time, which as a parent who is trying to balance working from home and helping my child, this will have a very negative impact on our situation. Asynchronous time at this grade level means the parent or caregiver has to be more heavily involved, which means we will now have to figure out either completing the asynchronous work at night or attempting to adjust work schedules to be available to complete the work. My third concern is for the teachers. While I appreciate the attempt to keep all students with their current teacher, this is placing a huge burden on the teachers who have now have to prepare three separate lessons based on Group A, Group B, or fully remote. In my humble opinion, at the minimum, if a family chooses to stay remote, those children should be moved to a separate remote teacher who can ensure the remote learning experience is smooth while their live teacher can maintain the class based on the group. These four teachers are already conducting a delicate balance, and to ask them to now take on, in essence, three separate classes is ridiculously unfair. In closing, while I appreciate the board and the, all the work the board and the district have done during these unprecedented times, it does feel as though, true, does not feel as though true input was sought from parents and teachers resulting in a plan, but not necessarily a sound plan. Regards, Jessica Lubarski.
This comment is from Kim Secidi. Good evening. As we enter into what seems to be a rushed back school plan, many of us ask that you look at what is happening around us. Numbers rising daily, McHenry County positivity at 7%, Huntley High School football and basketball athletes testing positive along with other individuals per the dashboard. How in the name of safety can students be put back into the buildings? Adding COVIDs to the upper levels will lead to what Dr. Rowe said a couple weeks back as something that will lead to catastrophic outcomes. It's time to leave politics out of this and look at it for what it is, a pandemic. Everyone has to look at the whole community, not just a couple situations. Everyone has made sacrifices on every end of the spectrum, and until things greatly improve, that will have to continue. How will kids move throughout the building for 10 minutes safely, eating lunch? Two of the toughest situations that could be avoided. We all know classrooms are small, hallways are narrow, and taking a mask off at all will lead to the spread of this virus. With no daily screeners and temp checks, nothing will stop sick kids from being sent to school. We are heading into the winter months where outdoor activities are practically nonexistent. It has been said these are the conditions where cases will spike. Our next concern is the quality of remote learning. Those who choose remote learning should not be discarded and not taken care of because they have health issues or just know it's safer. Making them have to change everything is not only irresponsible, it's not in the best interest of children. Hearing people in the community say they don't care if those kids lose their teacher just so their kid can go in-person is disheartening and everything the district does not stand for. We all live here, and we all deserve equality and quality, no matter what choice was made for your family. These kids are so attached to their teachers, it would be awful for them to lose that security and consistency they have come to know. Connections play a huge role in a successful education, and in a time where everything has been thrown upside down, consistency is what these kids need. It's time to look at the whole picture and make the decisions based on science, facts, and safety. This will benefit the entire community moving forward. Thank you for your time. We do have one more in-person comment that has come in. If we can accommodate a person?
Yes, absolutely. Leader arrival for in-person comment. Crystal Hill, please.
Hello, Board members and Superintendent Rowe. I realize that there are a lot of moving parts in reopening the schools on a full-time, five-day basis, and we know that your current plan of moving at very small steps is very purposeful. We hear that, and I know many of the members of the board would love to accommodate the needs of our students, especially the high-need students like my son. Being a mom to four boys, I can see how remote and hybrid affects all of my boys. It's difficult for them all, but for Micah, my son with special needs, school was a major part of his world. Then we tried to start remote learning, and we worked hard together. And most children love screens. Micah has no interest whatsoever. He doesn't attend to screens at all. We have seen a huge digression in his physical abilities over the six months, and Micah is receiving 90 minutes a week of PT prior to the pandemic, and then the pandemic hit and PT stopped entirely. It was only until August that we were given the opportunity for a Zoom session with PT. We tried one session, and this was completely undoable. The things that the therapist was asking me to do was completely unattainable. I am not trained as a PT, and trying to do these things with a full house was that much more difficult. We've also been on the waitlist for milestones therapy, and we have still yet to get in. So this is a child who only began walking two years ago at the age of eight. He's 10 now. He is also nonverbal and is currently still learning how to use a picture communication system. So we hear it when we say "all students always." This is when I ask you as a parent to really dive into this motto that you wear so proudly. It doesn't say "all teachers always." Superintendent Rowe, we know that this ultimately falls into your hands, and I pray that you'll have the wisdom and the discernment to make the best choices for our kids. All students always, not all teachers always. And I have enclosed two pictures that I'll show you. I also emailed a video. I don't think I'll have time to show it. These pictures speak for themselves. I've also emailed a video of my son during a Zoom session today where the audio wasn't working and the teacher could not hear it at all, and she relied solely on a thumbs up from the parents to verify whether or not we had the correct answer. And this was a group speech. This is considered under our minutes, and the teacher was wearing a mask the whole time, and it makes it obviously very difficult to speak. So I'll just briefly show these pictures, and I did email the board the video, so you should be able to see it. So this is one of Micah just completely not attending at all. And this is my daily fight on PT and PT. Constantly running away from screens. So I know this is not one fight at all, but these special needs kids need to be in five days a week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. I want to thank everyone who took the time to physically come here and also to take the time to send in your public comments. There are obviously a lot of them tonight. They're all a varied variety of fancies on things, and we appreciate hearing from all of you because it helps to hear all that information. Ready to move on in our agenda. Item number four is the Community Relations and Student Outreach Committee. Mrs. Melendi.
Yes, thank you. We have 4.1 for District 158 COVID-19 Dashboard. Dr. Rowe will present.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Melendi. As that pops up on the screen, I'll take us back a couple of weeks to our last board meeting when Mrs. Meyerino actually raised the question of what our dashboard and how we were presenting and representing positive cases within the district. And it sparked a discussion during the board meeting, and then that discussion continued with my district cabinet and as well as with the principals on how we should properly communicate that. And so in that time, in the two-week time, we enhanced our dashboard and took the opportunity to beef up our transparency to the community, which is something that, as you know, is extremely important to us. It was very disheartening for me, and I know for many of you, when some community members questioned the transparency that the district has shown through this, through this time period, is I believe that we are the most transparent school district in the entire area, let alone just McKinney County. And I think if you did your research, you would find that that is very, very true. However, we wanted to be sure that that was, that was coming through, and we were, we were putting our money where our mouth is. So Mr. Armstrong, Ms. Lombard, and I spent some time kind of game-planning how this would look, presented it to Cabinet, and this is the end product that I'm presenting to you for information, for discussion, and for feedback. And just to go down, the, this is live on our website currently, but to go through our COVID-19 metrics dashboard, we have a broken down by school. And to, and broken down by school in terms of the number of positive cases, broken in terms of staff, in terms of students. And again, you've heard tonight how we have attained those informations, this information, we don't entirely know student numbers are accurate because we rely on that information. Obviously, students are not present with us. That's the information we have currently to keep the public informed as to what's going on in our building. As we go down a little further, I will go into more detail about this later this evening, but the McKinney County dashboard is a part of my presentation, but it's a direct link to the dashboard itself, as well as information about the school metrics, our current status, and how you can access the live metrics and interact with that page. I'll go into this in much greater detail during my actual presentation and talk about the updated metrics as of, as of yesterday, when they were updated again. At this point, we add some great resources for the community where you can access the IDPH, Region 9 positivity rate, Justin McKinney County positivity rate, and then that Northwestern site where you can search down to each zip code to identify specific information about our area. Further on, we've added some helpful links. As we were talking, we thought it might be helpful for our community to understand what the process might be in terms of contact tracing. We've added some forms that our school nurses would be using if any student or staffer would be involved in the contact tracing process, and those, those forms are, I believe, are common throughout the county in terms of what all the schools are using, the questions that they'll be asking, some of the symptoms. So these forms are not only used in our district, but obviously in the others as well. As you go on further, for transparency purposes, you see kind of the rate of our parent selection process. I'm gonna, I will highlight some of this in my presentation tonight, but our elementary selection process in terms of the hybrid option, selection that parents chose to come back versus remote, as well as our transportation numbers, choosing transportation versus driving themselves. A little further, it takes you back, and I asked Mr. Armstrong to even link in the data of, back in July, our original, our original survey data. So all the survey data that the district has conducted is accessible in the, on the COVID website. And then finally, we added a timeline that kind of walks through everything that the district has, has done and what led and contributed to all the decisions that we have made. From May, when the, when the school year ended, and we were awaiting the initial IDPH guidelines, to when those guidelines were released, all the way until we transitioned them into remote learning, up until now, the announcement of anticipated hybrid shift. So we have given access to, all of this information has been shared in, in prior board meetings, but obviously we can't make the assumption that people are paying attention to what's going on with us live as we do it, so it is readily available, ready and available at the touch of a button for anyone who wants access to it on our district website. With that, I'll take any questions and engage in a discussion. Mr. Armstrong or Ms. Lombard is also available for questions or comment.
Thank you. I like this dashboard. I think it's complete. I think it's, there's a lot of good information on it that anyone can look all in one place. Now, how often will the, the metrics for our school district be updated? Did you say that already or not?
I didn't, but what we've added is the, the past 14 days in terms of the, the metrics or positivity.
How often is this going to be updated?
Well, this, this chart here in terms of the number of positive cases is 14 days. Given the window of what, if someone is quarantined, they may be out for 14 days. So that is, so every 14 days, this, it's a rolling chart, so the numbers which could change daily. And if we get a new positive case.
It's updated.
But after 14. It will be updated, excuse me, yes, that was unclear. It will be updated daily if there's a new positive case.
Right.
Or if, or if a case needs to come off and their 14th day is, is up.
Right, that's amazing.
I'm sorry, I was, I was unclear.
Okay, so are you going to look at this and say, that day?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, it's more or less live data as, as soon as the process of reporting.
Okay. So, does that committee have any questions or any other board members?
Yes, Detroit.
So I'd actually like to see a little bit more data on this. I'd like this to also include a running tally as time goes by, so that the data that's been captured in these 14-day running blocks doesn't get lost. We ought to publish that as well, because I think this is nice to capture a snapshot of 14 days, but I think the larger numbers still be tracked as well. I also would ask you to have some kind of a date stamp to put on that, so that when somebody looks at it, they know when this was last updated. So if, if there's been no updates in three days or that hasn't shifted, then it's noted that this is why it hasn't been updated, or this is why we don't have any more information. Because I don't want somebody also to take a look at that and wonder, when was this last updated? And, and I think the publishers do that explanation as well, so that the information is timely and accurate. And just having numbers thrown on a board for 14 days, it's really, it, it lacks grounding, in my opinion.
It's the most relevant data, though.
But, but grounded what?
It's tied to what's happening right now.
But, but you need a context.
What happened, I mean, I guess it's nice to know, but a month ago, but a month ago doesn't matter right now to people making decisions. Okay, I mean, quite frankly, I mean, it, it, it's probably of interest, okay, to know maybe just cumulatively what's going on, but again, you just started doing this as of a certain date, so, I mean, does it really give you a good frame of reference of anything? I, I mean, the purpose of it is to tell people where things are currently at so they can make informed decisions. If somebody doesn't have, you know, if they're not on that list in the last 14 days, how is it that relevant to their decision-making?
Can we add something that says, updated daily at 9:00 AM? Dan? Or whatever you do it?
I'm not sure about that. I don't, I'll defer to Lombard on when that's actually updated, is happening.
Right, well, updates happen all day long. I mean, we could get something, we could get confirmation on a positive case from someone who gets it at 6:00 in the evening, and they've reached out to their, their school nurse or their administrator. So if we had, if we updated that as of 9:00 AM, really kind of be from the day before. What we could put something out there like that, because this is just, it's updates, we put it on one spreadsheet, and I think that feeds right in there, so it's really live data. So if right now I added this. So if right now I added a number here, would it go right in?
That's correct. I can check the text decks with Google on the refresh rate of that. I think it's probably every 10 minutes or something like that, but I can check that and see if I can get some kind of last refresh stamp on there. That would be more accurate than a last change, which could become misleading if there's a few days that there's not a change.
Thank you. Dr. Rowell, can you, best on the, so if you go on the district website and on the front page, you click on the COVID link. Good on you, click on the COVID link. It's difficult to find, it's kind of hidden in that red block. I would like that to be pulled out, so very last, so with the link to this COVID metrics dashboard, can we make that its own?
Like tile?
Click on the main page? It just, I feel like it gets lost, like you don't know where to find it.
Yeah, we can do that.
Where it says COVID on the main page, maybe underneath it, it can say, you know, see my five-day metrics, or dashboard, or, you know, daily dashboard, whatever you want to call it, but just so it's on the main page and we can pull that out easily. Because I knew where to look for it, because I was specifically on there looking around, but I think if a parent was on there or a teacher wants to take a look, it's kind of hidden.
Or a board member sitting next to you.
Or the board member that I have helped just now.
Yeah.
It's like last updated on there. Would that have, we'll say, we can get numbers, it says last updated at 1:35 PM.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a reflexive edits to this page, the dashboard.
Okay, okay. Any other questions?
I just want to say, I agree with Mr. Troy. I would like to see the cumulative number reflected somewhere, just so we kind of have an idea as to where we've been, where we are, because people do talk about cumulative numbers.
Okay, but when's it cumulative as of, when do we start to keep track of this data? I'm saying, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I know the rolling average is 14 days, but when did we start keeping track of this data when school started?
We have, we have the data that gets back into, well, into July.
If you have data from the start of school, it's probably okay. I just wanted to.
The concern.
Having data for the sake of data doesn't mean anything, in my opinion.
You're, and you're right. And let's be, to be totally clear as to the concern that exists, and I shared that concern a couple of weeks ago, and our attorneys shared the same concern. The risk that we run in, while this may not violate any HIPAA law, the concern that exists is when you display specific data such as this, we run the risk, especially in small numbers, of if people choose to try and identify and we make it available for them to identify, we don't want to stigmatize any of our schools. Because then we run the risk of a school being stigmatized, parents being uncomfortable about a particular school, trying to, people becoming gotha towns and trying to track down and figure out which teacher has it and which student has it. And we have to face it, we live in the world of social media, and that's what happens in social media, and that's not healthy for our students and our teachers. I don't think this does that, but as we go down, if we notice that a school has had more trend data than another, does that stigmatization take place for a particular school and cause bigger problems? And I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I just want you to have full understanding of what some of the concerns of, you know, our attorneys, the health department, when I was asking these questions, and that could exist. It could. But like I said, it doesn't mean we don't do it, but I just, like I said, I want you to understand the full gamut of where the concerns lie.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. The other question that I had, because I'm sitting here trying to access this from my phone, as I've seen other people playing on their phones as well. So it got me curious if this information is available here, just the same way it is on our computers here, and I haven't been able to find it on my phone.
Yeah, I can.
I have to defer to Mr. Armstrong on that.
We'll make some design changes to make this more accessible. This was put up in this format earlier today. Once we get it into a little bit more of a finalized format, we'll be happy to make it more prominent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, could, I mean, I'd like some direction on the longitudinal data. If that's the direction you'd like to go, I'd be happy to do it. You're getting a mixed message, though.
Yeah, it's not my committee's.
Is that something that the committee wants to do?
I don't. I'd rather just leave it 14 days.
I would too, just like to leave it as a.
So it's a snapshot as of today.
Mm-hmm. As long as it's updated, you know, in real time, which you're saying it is, I'm okay with that.
Well, and then there's trended data on the county stats and the zip code stats as well, so it seems like between the two, you kind of get what you need.
Right. I agree.
Okay. Thank you. There's no, no action necessary, this was informational.
Sorry, sorry. Thanks, someone will buy it to write a report on instructions.
Thank you very much. The 5.1 is the amended 2021 calendar for remote learning planning day, number three. Ms. Lombard.
Sure, what y'all have in there is the recommendation. We talked about the remote learning planning day being October 14th, which would be Wednesday. We're actually recommending that that be on the 16th, now that we will be rolling out the recommendation for the secondary hybrid. So this does give a little bit more, a little bit more time for them to take that plan, get that finalized and whatnot to start planning appropriately for that. And being that Friday of that week, felt it was better for students and everybody involved. So we do need to bring changes of the calendar to the school board, and so this is just a recommendation that we amend the calendar, that will be noted with remote learning planning day number three, and then we would have two additional ones that as we move through the phases, we'll look at when those would be best and we would bring those recommendations forward at that time.
Any questions or concerns about that item?
None here.
Correct. Anybody else on the board? All right. I recommend we move that forward. 5.2, 2021, 2022 school calendar, Ms. Lombard.
Sure, so annually, we bring the school calendar. In the board packet, you'll see the draft calendars there for the events, as well as kind of what that looks like monthly. As you know, we have a district calendar committee that works on that. Same committee has been doing that for the last few years. We have a few of those numbers in the room tonight, so if there are questions, maybe they could pop in. But as you know, we look at the things such as where the placement of in-service days go, parent-teacher conferences, we have a few of our floating observation days for some holidays. Spring break is set by the county. We all are in agreement on that, and then we've got some other breaks during the school year, so that's kind of outlined here. This calendar looks very similar to our current recommendation with that, looking at balancing out our quarters and our semester. As you know, one semester is always a little bit longer than the other because wanting to try to get finals in before the winter break. But again, it very much mirrors what we currently have as our calendar if this was a regular school year this year. And again, the committee gets feedback from staff at all levels, and it's not just certified staff, it's also non-certified staff that are part of this committee, and it's been shared with both unions, and everybody is pleased to be recommending this calendar moving forward. So it would have the start of the school year being on August 18th, 2021, and the earliest last day would be May 27th, 2022. Any questions?
This is about 2021?
I know.
I think just a suggestion to model it more after last academic year, more so than this one.
Yes, that's what I said, we were normal, kind of where the days are placed, yes, not how it's being carried out, hopefully, so.
Any questions? Anybody come forward? All right, so now I recommend we move that forward. And we'll move on to 5.3, secondary return to school update. That's a row.
Right. Well, there are, there are a lot of slides, and I'll be able to flow through a good number of them pretty quickly, a lot of pictures tonight, but please present the secondary school update this evening. You know, with the number of our public comments, you've got a glimpse of a good portion of it, but let's get into some of the details tonight. So since the decision to begin the year remote, we've been following that continuum towards in-person learning. You know, I think we've been pretty clear throughout this entire process, we prefer to be in-person. I think everybody does, from parents to staff to administration, we all want the same thing, we want to be back to our, with our kids. You know, as Mr. Garen, Mr. Gentry kind of joked, we can't get to 2021 fast enough. I'm hoping that it starts off better than 2020 and brings us some semblance of normalcy, but that continuum towards in-person learning is obviously our goal. So within, as we near the end of quarter one, which is, I want to remind you, is the timeframe we identified for when we would originally revisit this. You know, and there's been a good clamoring from the community to get back as quickly as possible, but we set October 16th as the date that we will be revisiting our plan, and that's what we're doing. And I, you know, of course, we want to do it as fast as possible, but, you know, we also want to do it right. So we're seeing successes with small groups coming in person, our self-contained classrooms have had great success coming in, our students that are receiving Tier 3 RTI instruction have been coming in regularly with great success as well. Our modified remote learning is going well for some students. Our students and families, you know, they want more, they need more. We've heard that loud and clear. And in-person learning, we know, can help. So the conditions that are within our control and the conditions that are outside our control are aligning, so that hybrid learning is appropriate. And I think that's what's most important as I walk through this, is the conditions that were not aligned in July, when we made the shift from our original in-person plan to remote, and I'm going to highlight those again, are becoming in line, which is justifying the move towards hybrid. So the McKinney County Health Department matrix has been established. I went over that last time, I'm going to show you, and I'm going to give you a live detailed view of probably the first live view of actual data in the metrics, because it just went live yesterday, and I have, you know, live data as of today in it. So the hybrid learning environment is what is still being recommended, and it is what's appropriate as our health officials are recommending. What has become glaringly obvious to me through this process is what I didn't realize in July, I would have, I would have probably been more explicit about what was missing back then, but the McKinney County Department of Health not having the capacity for contact tracing and supporting us back then, I didn't call that out so much in July, because I don't know that I really realized how much we were going to rely on them, because we didn't have them. But now that we do have that resource, and now that we've been collaborating with them at the level that we have, and now that they've offered this matrix, and now that they've actually taken a formal stance and said, we believe that because of the science of the incidence rate, positivity rate, the hospitalization rate, and the youth contraction rate, we believe you can be in-person in a hybrid fashion based on an epidemiologist's verification. And that collaboration, it gives us a great level of confidence, because as I've said before, we're educators, we're not scientists, we're not epidemiologists, we don't do that for a living. So having that as our backing is extremely important. And our regional and local metrics, as well as the state guidance and county-wide consensus is stabilizing. So there are many moving parts. And as I said before, which I know a lot of people have not accepted, with those many moving parts that were not in line, the constant moving target that the state was giving us, the fact that the county wasn't in line with IDPH, with the Illinois State Board of Education, and then the governor, and no one was in line with anyone, and that any given day, it was let's throw up a new target and see if the schools can hit it, is what it seemingly felt like, played a major role in our shift to go remote. Those have calmed, although we did just get new music guidance, but we can live with that. But they've stabilized, and, you know, through Mr. Dean's help and getting our chief safety and security officer's stamp of approval is a big deal for me, having that reliance that not only are the guidelines stable, but we're ready to implement them under his oversight. And we're confident in our ability to implement those guidelines and then mitigate, you know, the virus with a high degree of fidelity with our contact tracing, our nurses, I've said it before, our nurses have been fantastic. And I could not echo Donna Coon's words a lot, more loudly. I wish her time had not run out and we had been able to finish the last few sentences, because I think that the words that she shared are some of the greatest concerns of our staff, is that, you know, we all know that families have given kids time, sent them to school, and back when they had a cold or weren't feeling so well. We can't do that anymore. We can't do that in this environment. And that's one of, that's an area where our, I know our teachers, I am concerned about that. We cannot do that. And I'm going to address that a little bit later, and I'm going to be pretty strict and pretty straight about that, about what's going to happen if that occurs. And I don't like being very black and white, there's a few things about this and our return to school that I think we have to be black and white about, because I don't think we have any wiggle room, because if we're going to stay in school, we have to draw a firm line in the sand, or we're going to go right back to where we were, which is remote, because our case numbers are going to skyrocket. All right, so now on to the metrics. Let's take a good look at this. This, this is a snapshot from today. The blue chart is, as the metrics is on the page, basically saying that our incident rate is between seven and 14 cases per 100,000. You'll see, when I open up the site and navigate through the site, there were actually sitting at 11, 11 cases per 100,000. The test positivity rate is still between 5 and 8%. The hospital admissions is stable or decreasing, and the weekly count of new cases is in a fluctuating state. So let's look at that live and see what that means, and I'll show you how this website works. So as you come down, the filter page here, you have the ability to choose all the last 10 or last 30, so just going with the last 10 days, as of today, the incident rate, now yes, it has been increasing, but this is, there is a slight lag in the data that they present, but it is still at 11. Within the incident rate range that the health department says that we can be at a hybrid level. If, you know, you drag back, you can kind of see how things have gone. It is kind of finicky as you get along the different lines as they'll get close, but as you go down to the positivity rate, and again, I want to remind you, the epidemiologist with the McKinney County Department of Health does not place a lot of emphasis in positivity rate. We, the superintendent, ask that he include positivity rate in this metric, because that is the most common metric that the general public knows, because that's what's been reported on since back in March. So we ask that that be included, because we think people can connect with that a whole lot easier than the incident rate, because incident rate, the math is just, it's a little complicated. Now, this is county data, so the incident rate for the entire county, 307,000 people living in the county, and the math for that is the total number of positive cases divided by the total population multiplied by 100,000. So I went to the Northwestern Medicine Zip Code website to check our three zip codes using that same math, and we are also at 11. So I just wanted to compare that against the county, as, you know, there have been some hotspots, I know Woodstock and Crystal Lake, they have a little bit of a higher, higher rate than we have in recent weeks, but I wanted to kind of compare how we've been comparing against the county, and we actually have the exact same number of incident rates. Our positivity rate is currently sitting at 5.5. We have been down at 4.9 or so, that was the lowest that I've seen in the last, in the last couple of weeks, but 5.5 still, still good, still within that range. Now, the hospital-like admissions, what this means is. Now the hospital-like admissions, what this means is, is there is an increase, uh, each day. How many, how many days of an increase are there in terms of, uh, hospital admissions? Um, and for the, for a good number of days, there were, you know, two, an increase of two. This is, this is, they're saying this is stable data. Uh, this is not a concern for them. Um, the weekly new cases, this is what they're saying is fluctuating. I think it's just because of the adult cases and it's going to continually be fluctuating and just depends on the number of cases, um, that are getting tested. And, and the cases are, are positive. They are most interested for us looking at the youth positivity cases, uh, in the ages of three to 18. Um, and as you can see, as of September 20th, uh, it's a little bit outdated, it'll be updated, but they've remained very low, um, the last several weeks. So those are the contributing factors and that's the, the live interactive data that you can go to. Um, at any point, it is live and viewable by the public, accessible on our website. Um, if you wanted to look at the last 30 days, the data doesn't change too, too much. The incident rate, incidence rate, and then on down, you can see the, uh, you know, our spike right after 4th of July time or after, uh, before Labor Day, this was, this was the time whenever we were going really concerned, if you remember. This was, uh, there was a back, it was reported, there was a backlog of, of, um, of cases that they dumped into the system for some reason. So they claim it was a clerical error, but, uh, it caused us a lot of concern. We thought we were heading in the wrong direction. But, uh, things have calmed down and stabilized and just, you can see why they, um, this has remained pretty stable in terms of up one, one per day of, uh, of the hospital admissions and then, um, positivity amongst the youth is the red line. Well, again, that's, that's live and interactive and, and ready to be viewed at any point. You can access it through our website or as well on the McKinney County Department of Public Health. So, so back to the presentation and the, um, and the preparation for our building. Um, you know, preparation for in-person has been ongoing since last spring. So just because we've been remote, it doesn't mean we haven't been continually preparing our buildings for, for this day. So, uh, we just learned actually this, uh, just this week that our, um, the hand sanitizing stations that we're going to be installing in all, in every single classroom and in many of the common spaces on the walls have arrived. Uh, it's very good news. Now we're just waiting on the actual sanit, hand sanitizer that goes in, in them that we expect to arrive sometime during the fourth quarter here, uh, before winter break. So, uh, we're actually going to begin installing, um, those so that way as soon as the hand sanitizer arrives, they can be installed. We still have individual, um, hand sanitizer pumps in every classroom and all the common areas. Uh, cleaning supplies, there was a couple of comments tonight about, um, cleaning supplies not being available. That's, that's completely untrue. There's cleaning supplies available with wipes and spray and, and rags available in every classroom. For anyone who wants to, um, to make sure that our learning spaces are cleaned and everyone has everything that they need. We have ample supplies, um, to clean our spaces and make everyone feel, uh, they can control their own space if, um, if they so desire. Um, from PPE to sanitation processes and supplies, they're all, like I said, they're all in place. Um, you know, we've lived it and, and have, small groups have been in-person. We've experienced positive tests in our building, as you saw earlier when I showed the dashboard. We have not had transmission of the virus or outbreaks in our schools thus far. Uh, contact tracing processes have also been exercised extremely well. Um, our architectural review conducted by WOEL, uh, was conducted and looking at our spacing options, which is what I'm going to actually go into next and show you some of those. Um, and then six foot spacing was being our priority. Um, after that review, uh, we should be able to be very near or at that mark in all of our cases, uh, with some potential variants in all of our classrooms. And I'll explain that, uh, in a little bit of, uh, a little bit later. So expecting the, at, at, at most about 15 desks in most classrooms, um, depending on how we balance our sections. And that's going to be a key factor as one of, one of the obstacles that we face, um, given the timing. And that's, and it, it is what it is, but it's one of the challenges that we do face, just to be, just to be clear. So let's walk through some of this and this is where the pictures come in, that I am going to go a little bit, a little bit quicker because it's, they become redundant. So this is a WOEL drawing of one of our middle school classrooms, typical class at Marlowe and Heinemann. And I added this note, given the fact that we were having some visual difficulties tonight. I know we have the camera going now, so people will be able to see it. But if anyone happens to still be listening, um, the note here is that, you know, classrooms are mapped with nothing in the room. So it's wall-to-wall furniture. So it doesn't take into account that there are, you know, cabinets and bookshelves and things like that. Some of the, the furniture in the room will have to be removed, um, but some things can't be removed. Some of the things the teachers just absolutely need, um, and some of the things are fixated in the classroom. So, um, so there are some situations where the arrangement that you'll see won't entirely fit and we have to just get in there and get the room set up, um, and see what, uh, how close, you know, how close we can make it work in terms of that number. But point being, as you can see, in a typical Marlowe classroom, Marlowe Heinemann classroom, uh, we could fit 16 desks. Now again, not accounting for all that space, but 15 or 16 desks could fit with six feet of space in each of those classrooms. In a typical science classroom at one of the middle schools, those science tables are six-foot tables. Uh, and according to our, you know, the architectural drawings, again, we have to get in, um, and get things set up ourselves. But six-foot tables, technically we could have two kids at each table and could make that work. Our special education classrooms in each of the pods, if you remember from maybe a, a tour in the middle school, uh, a few years back, each of those pods has five classrooms in the pod. There's two literacy classrooms, a social studies classroom, then there's a math in the corner and a science classroom. And there's a small special education classroom where the inclusion or direct instruction takes place. Um, and that, that's up to this classroom. This classroom can, can house six, six desks with, uh, with appropriate space, six feet of separation. The high school is a little bit of a different story. The high school is oddly shaped with many different additions. Um, the circle, um, is, as we call it, the high school is the original, um, design of the high school. Originally when the high school was built in 1997, it was just that, that rotunda shape. Um, and so it, it, it is an odd-shaped area and that was the area that actually provided the greatest concern of could we, could the, could the spacing work out for us? Um, so as you can see, this, this high school science lab, um, has space for 14, for 14 desks. So, um, while there are lab tables in the room, our science classes, typically there are 26 lab spaces. So that's something that, um, you know, unless there's an extreme circumstance, we're not really scheduling 26 in this classroom anyway. More than 26 in this classroom anyways, so it shouldn't, that should not be an issue. Unless the, the numbering becomes a problem in terms of balancing of the schedules. But as, I'll get into that, that challenge, um, here shortly. The outside circle classroom, uh, again, can, it can work out with 15 desks. An inside circle classroom works out with 15 desks. Standard west wing classroom, so, uh, west wing is your typical, probably typical math classroom along the, uh, the inside hallway. Uh, it says 20, I'll tell you that, that's going to be a very tight fit. We're not going to have 20 desks in that classroom. Um, there are counters in these rooms that are not in this drawing and then there are some built-in, um, cabinets. Uh, the west wing science classroom, now this is when I'm going to stop and pause it for, for a few minutes because this does not account for some lab tables that are there. Um, and I'll point out where you see the room open up into a larger space is where it opens up into the science lab where you actually have the, um, the lab tables. Um, and the smaller space, the very narrow almost corridor is where the students actually face, like on the screen from bottom to top. Um, that, because the, the projector is on, like, is on the, the top part of the screen here. Um, so it's, it's kind of a tight area. So this is going to have to be a little bit of a, a little bit rearranged. Um, but we would not have, this, this setup is not what would be reflected in the classroom. It would be a different arrangement. Um, but I wanted to point that out. This is what, obviously, like I said, they're using total space. This is not how it would look. Um, but we, we can get, uh, again, 13 to 14 students in this classroom, uh, which would be, which would work for a typical science, uh, setup. The new west wing classrooms, now these classrooms are enormous. This is the new, brand new addition, the most recent addition. Um, but what has been these, these classrooms that makes them unique, if you remember, it does depict the counters along the outside edges. Um, the lab tables are not there, but those lab tables, we built these science labs to be, um, any type of science labs. So that way the lab tables are actually built on wheels to be pushed out to the, to the counters so that your, um, you go from a learning lab to space, butt it up to a counter and you have your lab peninsula for your lab to take place. So, um, you know, I have not, I don't believe the, I'm not sure the high school has made a decision if they would be using those lab tables instead of moving desks in this space. I assume the lab tables will completely work, um, but we would not be having, you know, what is that, 24 students in this classroom just because the space allows, there's, that wouldn't happen. The driver's end health hallway is famously the, the most narrow hallway with the smallest classrooms. Um, but again, even in that classroom, 15 desks can sit, um, to work. It would be, uh, it probably would, uh, this, 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 this layout have a, a little bit of a challenge or some things that probably need to be removed from these classrooms, a couple of cluttered classrooms down the hallway, we'll want to figure that out. Uh, the project lead, leadway classroom, you can see, uh, plenty of space for at least 15. And then the new west wing math classroom, also spaced for 15. Alright, um, so, so how did we get to this point? And I think that's what's really important is, 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 is why would we be here saying that we think we can do this? Um, the McKinney County Department of Health's science-based metrics that I just shared, uh, are, are telling us, the experts are telling us that they support in-person learning. We didn't have that in July. Um, the McKinney County Department of Health has staffed to support and advise us in a hybrid capacity. That was not there in July and August. Um, our architectural review supports our building capacity, saying that we can handle a 50-50 hybrid. And if our, um, you know, 50-50 hybrid, if our trend holds true, where 20-plus percent of our students, um, choose to stay remote, that, you know, 50% of 3,000, you know, is quickly is going to become about 1,300 students. Um, so the safety review by IDPH guidelines are stable and can be maintained with confidence. Um, that's what led us to this point, that we can check all of our boxes in terms of being able to follow the safety guidelines, to manage and handle the students in the building in terms of the number of students that we believe would be in the building. The McKinney County Department of Health is staffed and is now making a recommendation that it is time for us to be in the building. And I think when we, and it's at this point, we were faced with, with the decision of, why would we not take a step forward? And that's, and that's where, that's where we are and why we're here tonight, making this recommendation. Um, there are challenges. It's not perfect. It's not going to be perfect. We shouldn't walk forward expecting that it's going to be perfect. We shouldn't walk forward, some of the, the, the comments tonight from some of our teachers, they're 100% correct. It is not going to be like normal school. No one should have that false, that false, um, vision that it's going to be like, let's go hang out in the hallways again. Uh, and I'm going to go into some of those details and try and describe what it will, what it would be like, um, because that's not going to be it. And it may not be for everyone. And that 20%, maybe more would prefer to stay home and remote learn. Um, it may not be for them. But at the same time, if the data tells us it's time to take a step, our safety guidelines are in place to take a step, um, and our safety leaders tell us we should take a step, I don't know why we wouldn't. Um, so the rationale is, I've kind of said this, um, you know, I said this at the beginning, we all agree, we want to be back in-person with students. In the, in the perfect scenario, we would be back. We would have had a homecoming last weekend. I mean, it's one of the, honestly, I said when I was the principal of the high school, I said it's my favorite week of the year. I hate not having homecoming. It's, it's one of the, the highlights of being in a high school is the buzz at that building. It literally shakes and you cannot compare the feeling to the excitement of being in the building when kids are excited to be there. Um, and at this point of the year, when things get tough, I can tell you, I know that from the, the teachers that were in the room, you know, and the teachers that are still here, um, on the stressful days and you get to go talk to kids and, or read in a, in an elementary classroom, the stress melts away. So the stress that we're all feeling, uh, would be gone if we could go spend time with kids in-person. So, um, for anyone who thinks that, that, that we're not hurrying to get back to school as fast as we possibly can, it's a, it's a, it's a terrible mistake. We could get there yesterday if we could. Um, so public health metrics and guidance, you know, like I said, they've stabilized. There may be day-to-day fluctuations, but we'll be looking at this over trends. And remember that the county health department is saying two-week trends. We have to be in a, in a period of, of learning for at least two weeks before an adjustment would be able to be made. Um, county consensus on what is meaningful, it's a big deal. All the superintendents in the county have agreed, they're going to live by these metrics, um, and use them to make our decisions. Um, as of now, as I said, they're recommending this met, this, uh, this, this step. So we've, we've tackled remaining challenges, meeting the guidelines for 612, we've had the architect's review. We've studied other districts that have had success personally, in-person. Um, and they've done so with, with no contractions related to the school. Um, it's not been easy. It's been really hard, um, but they've, they've done it and they're glad that they did it. It was worth, it was worth the step forward. Um, and that's what I think we need to take, is it's time for us to take a step forward. So we believe we'll have a high degree of fidelity with our guidelines and ultimately, um, we will not know, you know, about our, we won't know how, how much juggling we have to do until our survey goes out and we find out from our families what they want. How many of our families are going to opt for hybrid and how many is going to opt for, um, uh, for remote? So that's really where our challenge lies. And let's spend a little, a little bit of time explaining that. So, and this is, this is why, I'll, I'll get to it a little bit later, but this is why we're not starting this on the 19th like we are with, with elementary. Um, we're not, we're going to start it on November 2nd because the time that it's going to take to attempt to balance all of the schedules at the secondary level, do our best to, to change schedules wherever we possibly can to balance, um, to balance student schedules to get it to as close to 50-50 as we possibly can, is a monumental task. Because where you move in a, in a, in a student's schedule where they have seven classes, if you move one class, the domino on how it affects everything else, um, will set you back a half an hour just for that one student that you have to tinker with. Um, and with, with nine counselors and, um, you know, two or three administrators who really know what they're doing, um, that's a, it's a big, 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 big lift and it's going to take quite some time. That's what is, that's the heavy lift. And, you know, I'm, I don't feel good about sending three kids in group A and 23 kids on group B, knowing that we won't be able to maintain a good level of distancing. But the reality is, we've got some classes that the alphabet breakdown would create an imbalance of like 80% of the alphabet lives in L through Z and 20% lives in, you know, A through K. And some of those adjustments are going to have to be made to try and, and balance that out. Some of them are going to be, and all of that depends on how many students go, go remote because then we know what we're working with. So we have to have the real data to know, uh, where the balancing act can be guessed. Um, some of the benefits, obviously we'll offer families the choice. That's been loud and clear, what our families have said that was lacking, uh, as we shifted back to remote was they, they wanted the choice. They wanted the choice to send their students to school or to stay remote. Um, it allows, like I said, a high fidelity for complying, um, with the public health guidelines. They can remain with their current schedules to the best of our ability. We're going to do our best to, to do that. Um, obviously a student will have to change a class they're currently in. It just may change when that period meets or potentially even, uh, the teacher that they meet with. Um, but we'll do our best to, to prevent that from happening. And it provides a glide path forward because obviously if we're in-person for two days a week, it's, it's the next step is, is, is back. Back to full-time in-person. Um, and the overview, as we've kind of alluded to here, the option will be to select the hybrid remote or to stay, or hybrid or stay fully remote. Uh, they'll be in two groups, a group A or group B, two days per week. Uh, group A will meet on Monday and Tuesday. Group B will meet on Thursday and Friday. The secondary was able to make the adjustment to shift their remote day to Wednesday in order to align with the elementary schools so that the community could have alignment, um, in terms of, uh, elementary and secondary being, uh, being remote in the same day in case there were childcare needs. Um, you know, I know that we've, it, it's been a burden and it's been a real challenge for families, obviously with remote learning. And if, if that can be, you know, some help on that one remote day, hopefully that, that helps some families out. Um, we will maintain the block schedule. I believe it's a huge benefit for our students. Some parents have viewed the block schedule as downtime for kids. I view that very differently. Um, our block schedule has allowed students to not have an eight-period day. So imagine seven 45-minute periods in a remote setting and the volume of homework that student would have. So imagine seven 45-minute periods in a remote setting and the volume of homework that student would have every single day in a remote environment when they're already feeling potentially a little isolated from their friends. Um, this four-period day with almost a longer, uh, longer class time is taking a huge workload off of them beyond what the normal school day is and allowing them to go deeper with some of that work. Um, and I think that's a real benefit for our students' well-being. Um, the team and student schedule will remain the same for the semester. Um, at semester, after the initial start, then those counselors and administrators will begin balancing the second semester. Um, we will, we would start in January with a much cleaner, um, uh, balance of, of schedules. Um, one of the comments that I, you know, I do have to, I do have to say, and I've shared this with, with you individually as I've, as I've spoken with you in the last couple of weeks. Would it be, we heard this a, a number of times during the public comments, would it be easier to wait until January to implement this? Yes, it would be easier. But again, I go back to, if the metrics say we should be in school hybrid, there's no easy time to take a step forward when you're in the middle of a crisis. And I know it's hard. Our teachers have been unbelievable. They have been fantastic. Um, I know they're angry. I know that they're upset and I know that they are, are very frustrated. None of this is, is, is personal or done without thought of, of their well-being in any way, shape or form. Um, and I hope that in due time, they understand that. Um, but if we, if we don't take a step forward, we don't know what's waiting for us in January. And that's my concern, is, is if we don't take a step forward when the metrics tell us we should, and January doesn't look so good, are we going to be remote for the whole year? And our community is asking us not to do. And that, that's where my concern battles with the staff that I, that I also care very much for. So, um, it's a, it's a lose-lose situation in, in this, and I know that you all know that and, and I recognize that, but I genuinely think it's the right thing to do, to take a step forward in an imperfect situation. And it is putting our teachers in a tough spot to teach, to teach both modalities. Our, our shift would be in January, we would shift to, um, we would have as many remote sections as we possibly could, where our students that are remote would, uh, would have dedicated remote teachers. Um, and our students that are, um, are in-person would, would just, there would always be teaching online and in-person. That's not going to go away. There's not a high school or, or middle school around that's, that I've seen that's not doing that. Um, it's, it's, it's not favorable to anyone, but it's, it's happening everywhere, because there's no better way of doing it. Um, but in the spring, and then, and starting in the second semester, we will have some remote sections everywhere we possibly can. Um, and that burden will be, will be relieved. And again, I said anticipated start date being November 2nd. So, the instruction here, the team makeup for students will remain the same, as I said. Um, they will, students will zoom into the live classroom. You know, teachers will have, as usual, their judgment in terms of how they approach instruction in the classroom. We've provided a good number of models for them to choose from in terms of what best fits their style, their level of instructional comfort, uh, in terms of where they feel they are, in terms of use of technology and, and in terms of blended instruction. Uh, and obviously, our coaches and, uh, department chairs and administrators are there to, to support that development. Um, our special populations and struggling students, um, have been identified and our, or this model is going to allow them to, to come in, in-person more frequently. We've heard a lot from our community about our students that are in direct instruction and instructional classes, um, as well as our co-taught classes, since we're being able to, why they, why they can't be and more. Our, our direct instruction students will be able to be in four days a week. Their two assigned days, as well as, um, the two other days. And depending on, uh, they might even be able to, to be attending all of their classes beyond just the direct instruction class, and be in-person more frequently, which is obviously our goal. But we have to see how the schedules shake out before we fully commit to that. The schedule is vitally important.
Hey, Dr. Rowe?
Yep.
Can you just back up, uh, back slide, just one slide up for just a second? Okay, I got it. I just had to catch one more point.
Sure. Give me a chance to get a drink anyway.
That's right.
All right. Um, and then again, as I said, at the semester, we would, uh, course three sections and add remote sections wherever possible. So, give a, for anyone who's a visual, a visual learner, this breaks things down into what it would look like, group A in on Monday and Tuesday, all group Bs remote, all students remote on Wednesday, and group, and group B in on Thursday and Friday. It aligns with the elementary schedule. Um, and I'm really grateful for, uh, for our secondary principals for taking good, hard work and pushing their system to shift. Uh, I know that's going to be a, a benefit and then, uh, our elementary families will be appreciative of that. All right, so what to expect? I'm going to spend a little time here, because this is where I'm going to be very direct. I think it's, I think it's extremely important. This will not be school as usual. School kids, students will show up to school, they will go to class. Passing periods are not going to be 10 minutes any longer, they'll be five minutes. Um, when they finish with class, they will leave class, they will walk to their next class. They will go to class again. They will not be hanging in the hallways. They will not be congregating, uh, in the cafeteria. Um, it's, 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 you're going to school to go to school. And I think if anyone has the, if anyone has the, the, I guess, the visual that it's, it's what school is going to be like in the, in the fall of 2019, it's not going to be that. And as much as we would like it to be that, that's just not what we're, we're going to be able to offer. Arrival at the middle school, I talked with the middle school principals and they, they've got, the students who, uh, who come in, they, we've worked out with transportation to, to do our best to time our buses to drop off as close to start time as possible. And when students arrive, either through, for, if they're a car rider or from the bus, they will be going to the gym, the cafeteria, the LRC, and they will have staff members that will help students sit, uh, and be placed in, in seats, um, that are six feet apart in the morning until the bell rings to go to class. So it's not going to be like normal middle schoolers where they huddle up in the locker area before school starts. You're going to, if you arrive before the bell, you'll sit in the cafeteria, the gym, or the LRC and wait to go to class. And you're six feet apart, you can still talk. Obviously, you can still talk to your friends, but it's not going to be the typical gigantic group of middle schoolers that you're used to seeing. The high school drivers will be kept into their, in their cars until 7:10. Um, the students who are dropped off and bus drivers that arrive before 10 will go, again, just like middle school, they go into the gyms, uh, spaced apart. Maybe a little socialized, but again, you're not going to be crowding together, uh, in groups. Um, passing periods, as I said, will be five minutes. Um, in the classroom environment, um, I think some of the teachers talked about this. It, it, they're, they're probably, they're very accurate in terms of their, their, their description. We've made a lot of shifts in terms of our instruction in the last number of years, uh, where instruction is, is become a lot of small group work, a lot of station rotation, meaning that the teachers have students doing different things around the classroom. Some small groups working with the teacher, some doing individual things, some doing online work, some doing group work. Those types of things are, it's going to look very different. It's going to be a lot of whole group instruction, uh, in the classroom. And in, in a lot of respects, the teachers are going to be juggling who's online and who's in-person. And it's going to take some time for them to become acclimated to that. Uh, and we're going to have to be patient while that happens. At the beginning of the school year, I shared the expectation, um, with our teachers that no one expects them to be perfect at this, but we expect them to get better each week. And we're essentially, we're someone to say the same thing. I don't expect them to manage and juggle this perfectly. But I do expect, I know, I don't have to say I expect, because I know they will. They're going to get better each week. Um, and we, as, as, you know, board and my team and the community have to be patient while this transition occurs. Um, and then dismissal will be staggered by section of the building. Some of the specific details are still being ironed out, but we're not going to have just a mass dismissal. Those of you that have been in the high school around the dismissal time, the students leave their classroom and it's a mad dash to get to their cars, so they can beat the buses out before 7:30, 7:34. Uh, if you were on the inside at the high school, 7:34, I believe, in 15 seconds when the buses are dismissed, um, because you don't want to wait, get stuck in the bus line. So they have to get to work or get to hone back to practice or something like that. That mad dash is not going to be able to happen, we're going to dismiss. We were talking about potentially even a, an east wing, a central wing, and then a west wing dismissal staggering, um, starting a few minutes before the bell actually rings, the middle school's dismissing by, by pod or by grade level on floor. Because it has to, everything has to look different. And masks will be required. I'm going to stop here. Um, you know, Mr. Anie and I have had a good number of conversations about this. And Ms. Lombard and I have talked extensively about how, uh, about how we will manage students wearing masks and, and the concern that exists, um, of, of students adhering to the mask policy. Our elementary students have been, you know, our, our self-contained students have been doing fine with it. Our elementary students, we don't really anticipate that being an issue. Um, but the concern exists that our high school students may struggle with compliance with this. Um, and there were stories of, of students struggling with this during the SAT event. So, um, so this is what, uh, what we've put together and what we'll be sharing as, as our expectations. And I'm going to be very explicit about this. Uh, if a teacher has to approach a student about non-compliance wearing a mask, that, that, that warning will be followed up with a referral to the dean, and that will be a warning. That dean will then document and record that. Um, if another teacher, any other teacher, uh, does the same, that second referral to the dean will trigger, um, this being the second referral for that particular student, and that would trigger a conversation with the student by the dean, um, and a phone call to that student's parent. The third incident would be removal from the in-person setting and removal to remote learning for a period of likely about two weeks. Um, because we're not talking about non-compliance, we're talking about a safety issue. And we take a serious stance on that, because if we're going to remain open, we all have to wear our masks and be compliant so we can remain open, or we're going to be right back in remote learning. The student returns after his or her two-week period, uh, and another offense would likely then result in immediate removal for the remainder of the semester. It's, and, and when I say removal, you're, you're, you're back to remote learning.
Right.
Um, so you're still obtaining your education. It's just we don't have, we don't have the ability to, um, to elongate the process. Um, we have to maintain a safe environment and, and we're going to do that. So, uh, so I just wanted to share that with you and be very explicit about that. Um, and that, of course, will be communicated with students and families, families. Um, and on the first day, when we do our, our handbook presentation like we always do, it'll be very, it'll be widely understood. Um, now let me turn into lunch, because this is another area.
Just a quick question on that notion though.
Sure.
Kind of, any staff could make that, uh, site a student or just teachers or somewhere in between?
Any staff.
Okay.
Any staff, yes, sir. Um, I think, I, I hate to, to make it sound that way, because it, it's not a punitive thing. Um, you know, we always want to work with our students, but we just want to be clear, this is, this is a safety issue. And it's, it's safety of others. It's, 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 it's not so much about you, it's about how you, how your unwillingness to comply would, would then, then cause problems for others. Um, and our ability to remain open and in-person, which is what we all want.
Right.
Um, I don't, I'm hoping that it's not an issue and that if we draw a firm line now, it won't be an issue whenever we're in-person. We've got great kids. Our kids are, you know, 99% of the time, very compliant students. Um, and, and they want, they want to be back. I think it's going to be just fine, but, um, yeah, we want to be very clear about it, what our expectations are. Um, for lunch, you know, IDPH guidelines, these are some of those guidelines that are dictated, not just guidelines. That a maximum of 50 people in a given space for lunch without a mask, and they must be six feet apart, um, while eating. So plexiglass dividers have, are, are in place in the cafeteria at the high school. Um, and we've divided our spaces up into multiple areas. Um, excuse me, lunch will be eaten in the cafeteria, the gyms, and in some cases, potentially the LRC if needed. Uh, LRC is Learning Resource Center, so the libraries at the middle school, and not at the high school. We don't, we won't need to eat in the house. Um, and then lunch distribution may look differently. We'll have some satellite stations placed around, so we don't have students congregating in the, in the food, the food court area, uh, to get their food. Um, Mr. Reed, uh, and Mr. Altmeier and team have been working, uh, to streamline that process. Uh, they have a plan as to how that's going to work and then a backup plan if it doesn't work to make it even faster. Uh, the backup plan includes, uh, more cold lunches. And Mr. Reed is determined to serve hot lunches, um, that are served and, and freshly made, um, and really wants to try that first before we resort to, um, to cold lunches for our students that are in the building each day. So, um, so we're, we're going to give that a shot. He's confident that we can make that work and make it work quickly, um, and so our students can get lunch very quick. So, I wanted to show you and give you a visual of what this might look like.
Is that, on the lunch, is, is the lunch period changed at all timewise? Is it the same?
The lunch period has changed, the high school, because of the block. I did not create a visual for that, that schedule. Um, but the lunch period is a block. They've broken up each, it's 30 minutes. They've broken up each period into three 30-minute chunks. And when you, when you teach in a, in a block, one of the challenges with a block is, um, you either have, like, it's, 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 I know it's third period on one of the days, but I remember seeing the schedule. You'll either have lunch and then go to your rest of your class. Or is it, you know, it, Ms. Lombard, is it, it's not 30 minutes? Is it longer than 30?
For lunch, sure, 30.
30? Um, and then go to your remainder class, or you'll start class, have lunch, and then come back and finish class. Or you'll go to class and then end, uh, at lunch. And that's how all block schedules work, work. So that, when you have a split class, there, it is a challenge, but, um, it, it can work. Um, the central gym is one of our lunch locations. Uh, the dotted line down the middle signifies the, the plexiglass divider into the two groups. Um, you know, the, the specific number of students in that space is, is WOOLD's, uh, attempt of getting, using a specific kind of a table. Uh, we will, we have a different, a different approach to get that, uh, the appropriate number of students in, in that space. But they're actually coming out on Tuesday, uh, with Mr. Dean to walk the spaces and evaluate them in-person. Uh, he was challenging, he was saying that the space needed a little bit more, uh, personal attention, so. Uh, but just wanted, I just wanted you to kind of picture that. So the central gym, and then our current, so our main cafeteria, we divided into three, uh, three different spaces. As you can see, the, the dotted lines, uh, and those are floor-to-ceiling plexiglass dividers. Uh, there actually leaves about a three or four-foot gap that we've then created, similar to what's up front, that plexi, it's like a,
Right.
Um, a plastic vinyl, vinyl-plastic, um, divider that hangs from the ceiling down past the top of the plexiglass that create a, a complete division. So, um, allowing them to be separate into three separate spaces. And then this is the, um, the north path of commons on the other side of the hallway, by the, by the, uh, the, uh, outdoor atrium, um, and, and 50 students fit in there. So the middle school is a little bit different. We had, uh, WOOLD's calculations didn't show 50 students being able to fit. Um, so Mr. Venedico and Mr. Faulkner actually decided, it was, it was because of the, the, uh, the student tables. Uh, the typical cafeteria tables were so big and bulky, and because of the six-foot spacing, you could only fit two students at each table. Um, so they elected to bring in desks. And by bringing in desks, they can fit, I think they said 65 desks in that area. So you can only have 50, but it, which means there's plenty of space. Um, as you know, at Marlowe, there's a back section, unlike Heinemann's. So, um, there should be room there and they obviously have the gyms as a backup, um, to fall back on. And I think this visual is also very important to show lunch is not going to be what you would expect lunch to be. Um, you know, there's, there's space separating these students who'd be six feet apart, but you can still talk, but it's different.
From an overall, like, inventory standpoint, is there enough desk, tables, et cetera, to do,
Because you only got half.
To do what we need to do?
There are, there are. I mean, Marlowe has, uh, the three, two empty pods, because, uh, we, we view some of them for exploratories and then Light is currently using one, so there's an empty pod that's full, that looks full of desks. But then also, as we pull desks out to get down to the, the needed number of students, that creates extra desks in every class.
Yep. And then similar question, high school, same concept?
Same concept.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Uh, and so then some considerations as, as we near the end here. Um, you know, quarantines of, of staff and students are possible with large effects. And that's why, you know, the six feet is something that we've, we've talked about regularly throughout this entire, um, you know, six-month period. Is why six feet is important is when six feet can't be maintained, it increases the number of people that would potentially have to be quarantined. Um, you know, with this, with, with coming back to the secondary level at this rate, um, the, the, the possibility exists that there will be some circumstances. I can't guarantee that we can keep six feet in every single scenario. Um, we're going to do our very best to do so. The passing periods are, are five minutes. I mean, kids, and just like you pass someone in the grocery store, you'll pass someone in the hallway, um, and teenagers are teenagers. Of course, we're going to have situations where we have to remind them of, it's time to go to class and not hang in the hallway. Um, but we're just dealing with teenagers. We know that that's, that's part of the drill, so. Um, and some circumstances that I said are beyond our control. I mean, if our county po, or our, our region or county positivity rate goes up, uh, and we're rolled back, beyond our control. Um, but one of the things that is within our control, and I actually think that, uh, we as the school, and I actually think that we, as the school district, need to call upon our community to help with, is to pledge that we're going to wear our masks, and we're going to be socially distant, and we're going to all pull together and unify in order to keep our schools open. Because that's one of the things that we can control. We can control our behavior as individuals. We can control our behavior as families. If this is really our priority, and going back to school is what we all want, then we have to stop some of the behaviors that I know are happening, and some of the behaviors that I've seen on social media, and some of the homecoming parties and things that I've seen occur, because that is going to filter its way into our schools, and it's going to close them. I want homecoming as much as anyone. But we have to be smart if we want our schools to stay open. We have to do this for one another, or it's going to be over before it can even start. And I just implore anyone who's listening and anyone who's here to help spread that message. We have to own this together, or we won't get there. We can own this together. And like I said, we have to be the one. And siblings within the same school, like I said, we'll do our best. We'll place them on the same days. And then some scheduling difficulties, we cannot accommodate requests. This is a monumental task to balance this. So I just ask as nicely as I possibly can, unless you've got some crazy emergency, please don't ask to be on an A-day or a B-day, because I can't promise you the principal is even going to return your email because we have, it's too big to take requests this time. So by tomorrow, you will receive an opt-in form, six through 12 families, to choose the remote or the hybrid option, as well as if transportation is needed. Much like elementary, we have a 70% return rate at elementary wanting to use our transportation. So I would urge our six through 12 families, if you have your own transportation and you do not absolutely need our transportation, remember, 50 students on a bus is our maximum. The fewer students need our transportation, obviously, the fewer students that ride our bus. So if it's a need, we're happy to provide it. But if you can provide it, obviously, that's a choice for you to make. And then we need those selections by October 14th. So we're giving a week. We're not giving that extra weekend because we need those extra two days, that Thursday and Friday are two workdays, for our staff to begin the balancing act of balancing schedules. We normally, we heard you the first time when we had a quick turnaround, and I know that was painful, and we really want to give as much time as possible. But this time, we need a pretty fast turnaround. So a week is all we're going to be able to give to make this decision. Because our high school staff needs that Thursday and Friday to really dive in. Because we can't even dive in live because we have to clean the data because we get double entries, and we don't want to make mistakes before we even get started. And the target start date is November 2nd. And again, the reason for that, I'll go into actually in just a moment. All aspects of implementation are currently dependent upon the county health department and the metrics remaining in our favor. And then the transportation department tells me that routes will be available on October 26th to view if you're using our transportation. So I kind of touched on this, but you know, why November 2nd? Because I anticipated some people would be disappointed that it was not on the 19th or even the 26th. But I can't stress enough, it's a monumental task to lift this and balance those schedules. I don't want your students or our teachers to have to deal with a classroom of 22 and 5 on the opposite day. We need to try our best to balance them. And we have a good number of them that the alphabets just don't balance out in our favor. So we're going to balance them and adjust as best we can. And then as a reminder, those bus routes are also a challenge. So getting that done by October 26th was the earliest transportation could make that work. And that would be, that's one week earlier. So almost done. Student health certification will continue to require parents to verify that each month. And this is an important reminder that although the form is completed monthly by parents, that form that's completed monthly is an agreement by parent that they are doing a daily certification. So we do, in fact, have a daily certification. It's just not a form that parents fill out every single day. They're signing each month an agreement that every day they're checking symptoms and that they will not send their students to school. Now, this is another area that I want to be very clear and very explicit on. If a student is coming to school knowing they have symptoms, or they have taken a COVID test, and they are awaiting the results of that COVID test, and then they're positive after they come to school, they will be removed from the learning setting and will be remote for the foreseeable future because that is an extreme safety risk. I hope to goodness that that does not happen. But if it does, I just want to be very clear that that will not, there won't be a warning level for that one. We won't tolerate any kind of risk to the masses for that. That's irresponsible. Seating charts will be used in classrooms, cafeterias, and buses. Again, the contact tracing is vitally important. The high school plans on using, I believe they're going to use the HERO system, have students scan their IDs into sections so they kind of know where students are. Again, it's not to track students, but it's to know if they have to go back and contact trace. They know where people were, they can do it quickly and do it with accuracy. And then our nurses will work with the county health department for that contact tracing. I can't say enough about our nurses. I know that, I've done it before, they really are great. They're doing a fantastic job. But they make the call and will contact the health department, who ultimately makes the call if we close the school or move forward or backward. Two more slides, then I'm done, and we can open up for discussion. I thought it was important to shift and provide that elementary update while we're talking about the return. I showed this whenever we were doing the dashboard. But this is the breakdown of the selection results of the elementary hybrid and the number of students at each school and each grade level and the percentages of each, of who chose hybrid versus who chose remote. Just those results and what we're juggling here. And then finally, I just wanted to kind of reiterate. You know, we've heard from a lot of parents about our elementary plan. We've heard a few public comments about it tonight. And I wanted to share the why behind our elementary plan one more time, just so in case you're questioned about that or anyone who's listening. Whenever we were discussing our return to in-person learning with elementary, we looked at a number of different models. You know, Ms. Melinda asked the question on that evening, what other models did we look at? And we looked at an A-day, B-day. We looked at models very similar to what we're proposing for the heights and middle school. And we opted not to go with that type of a model, even though it provided maybe more time, physical time in the building. But what it didn't do was it didn't provide live instruction every single day. And that was something that, as an educator, we were having a hard time deviating from with our youngest students. Because while, of course, they need to be in the building for in-person instruction, but what that teacher does when they can grab ahold of them live through the computer is better than asynchronous work on a day that they're not together. And that was something that was really important. And additionally, you know, we also heard a couple of comments of the importance of staying with that assigned teacher. And those are really important to us. So that being said, you know, we don't claim to be perfect. And as I've said before, we're trying to solve an impossible puzzle with a lot of broken pieces. So we're seeking some feedback from our families in the coming weeks about what might be tolerable for them in terms of change. But we have to implement this plan first because you won't know what kind of change you can tolerate unless you know what you're experiencing. And it wouldn't be the right thing to do to make a change before we've actually started. So we're going to implement our plan, and we'll come out with some questions on what you might be able to tolerate in the coming weeks and what options we are considering as we continue to look at this. But I did want to make it public and let people know, we've heard you. And, you know, of course, we want our students in-person more. There's the give and take there, and there are consequences for that. And we just have to make some decisions that we felt were important at a different time. So we're happy to look at them, but we'll come back with some of those options down the road.
Can you elaborate a bit on the mechanics of the maintaining the daily instruction and maintaining the same teacher? Like, how the schedule interacts and why those?
Sure. I'd ask Dr. Schlitzer to explain that.
So for the elementary?
Yeah.
That we just mentioned?
Yeah.
Yeah, so several of the models that are out there for elementary would say, for example, some other districts are using them. And like Dr. Rowe said, there's no perfect answer, right? So everybody's kind of making the best choice for their district. Some districts would opt for perhaps a full day in-person, followed by a full day at home asynchronous. So the teachers would be teaching half their class all day, but they wouldn't see it all live, the other half of the class the next day. Now, that may occur at our secondary level, and that's actually fairly common. It's a little bit more like a college class. You wouldn't be in it every day. Our older students, especially those more accustomed to blended, if a teacher sets up a given week that way, I think very, very valid to be able to do that. At their elementary level, for a first grader, for example, we heard some of our public make comments tonight about just that asynchronous work. We can't really expect a first grader to learn by themselves for a full day. And so we wanted to maintain the ability to either be in-person live with their teacher here in our building or on Zoom live for that live instruction. And so that was the essential trade-off that we made with this first baby step that we took was it required us to do that half-day split because every student will either be in-person live that day or the next day they won't be in-person, but they will get their live instruction via the computer. So every student will get that half-day of live instruction, whether it be in-person or on the computer.
So said a different way, a normal day would be, just for argument's sake, half synchronous, half asynchronous. And that's really the split of the in-building time.
Correct.
To mirror that, so.
Yep, correct. That's exactly right. And then the way that that links to this idea that we wouldn't have to re-section or remove, you know, change a child's teacher is that we know we will have students that are currently sectioned into a given, say, Dr. Bezinski is teaching a class, he's going to have some students that opt remote, and he's going to have some students that opt to be in-person. If we were to, right now, say, we are taking all the remote students and scheduling them into remote sections, the students who are remote in Dr. Bezinski's class would lose him as a teacher. So by doing this, we give the option that those students who are remote will still be able to have that live instruction with their teacher because every teacher's teaching, in this current model that we're doing first, every teacher's teaching live in-person in the morning and then the live remote in the afternoon.
Gotcha.
So all those students will have a chance for that live instruction. Again, that's that question that we're going to need to ask the community because we know that depending on the next step we take, that could be a trade-off that our families think is worth taking, right? To say, we want to get full days, for example, but that might take us to perhaps changing teachers for some students, but it would get us to full days. It's just, again, that imperfect situation where we might have some of those trade-offs, and we want to get as much feedback as possible.
Okay, thank you.
All right, before we open up to more questions and comments from the board, I'd like to hear from Mr. Aney, who's here on behalf of the HEA.
All right. I do have a written statement, but there are some things that I cannot let pass before I even start that. Two very monumental concerns that I have. Number one, it has been identified, and you have heard from our staff today, that this is a monumental change that we are asking to do two-thirds into a semester in four weeks. That, to me, is a very glaring concern that I think that we owe it to our community to take a step back and to start the second semester when it is more of a fresh start. The second glaring concern that I have with this is the identification that, and the recognition by Dr. Rowe that we're trying to get kids in as soon as we can before the storm hits, which is there an identification that it's not about if it hits, it's about when it hits, and we want to give kids a normal experience until that storm hits, which just makes me even more nervous. And I bet you makes our staff more nervous, getting teachers into a building knowing that we might be the reason why that storm hit. So I wanted to start off with that just because it was a fresh on my mind, and that was very concerning to me. But I'm going to go ahead and read my statement, and then I would like to take any questions that you guys have from me. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Brad Aney. I am the union president, and I have had the distinct opportunity to serve in many different roles in this district, too many that I can count, but some being social studies teacher, football coach, union president, link crew coordinator, Raider Nation coordinator, assistant athletic director. And I also have time to be a dad within the last 11 years. Tonight, I am here directly to request that we bring the community and educators together and create a more comprehensive plan that places the safety and well-being of our students and educators first while providing our students with a top-notch education. First, as union president, I serve approximately 700 certified staff members who have spent their entire career helping project Huntley District 158 into a progressive destination school district. Starting with the elementary, even though we might disagree on some of the logistics of the plan presented, the HEA appreciated the opportunity to work side-by-side with the district admin as they implemented a schedule supported by the union to get those students back into the building for half-days. Unfortunately, this was not the case in the middle and high school level. We were dictated what was going on without having a voice at the table. Our voice was more of a concern and not about the logistics of it. The HEA executive board learned about this. This district's administration had already decided to bring 50% of all students back within a four-week time period, which means certified staff members who have finally begun to feel comfortable with their instruction would need to completely revamp the education process they built and now have to figure out to simultaneously teach in-person and online, essentially requiring teachers to educate, supervise, and work with two classrooms at the same time. In a survey sent out to our membership after hearing the full details of the plan, 73.1, which means 106 out of 145 middle school teachers, and 72.5, which is 132 out of the 182 high school teachers, claimed that they were unsupportive of this plan that was just presented. Given the impact that this decision will have on the health of our students and staff members, I formally request that each board member vote on this plan so that the community and your staff can see where each of you stand on this issue. The plan was presented tonight clearly sent an unintended message to a majority of our staff that their voice and the education that they have been providing is not valued and that it is acceptable that we will be at a higher risk of exposure inevitably causing a negative impact on the health of students, teachers, and the community. Second, I'm here to speak to you as behalf of a public servant to the community in which I teach. I want parents to know, especially because I've heard from different people from the board, that the teachers want nothing more than to bring our students back into the buildings. At the elementary level, our executive board have worked side-by-side with administration because of the understanding that this can be done with safety and a positive learning environment at its core and because it's what's best for those students. Even though there are components of the plan that are not popular amongst our elementary staff, our dedicated elementary staff are doing what they do best, providing the highest quality level of education possible, even given under these unforeseen circumstances. At the middle and high school level, we have been requesting for, since we heard about this plan, to try to work together alongside administration to create a plan that methodically brings back students in a timely manner while providing the highest quality of education possible, but also maintains the measures that protect students, staff, and the surrounding community. I want to share with the Board of Education what our plan was. First, we thought between now and the end of first semester, we could have a focus on bringing back both middle and high school students who are struggling in the remote or learning process and those that needed accommodations. Starting in the second semester, when we had a brand-new slate, the HEA ideally wanted to mirror what the elementary plan was, where we would bring the kids in half the day while keeping office hours in the afternoon for those students that were struggling the most and needed the help. Hybrid has a very, very broad definition. It doesn't mean we have to bring everyone back at once. Not only would this limit the amount of time students are in the building, though, but it would lower the risk of the possible exposure during lunch periods. If this is not possible, HEA leadership was even willing to bring back the, to discuss the plan that Dr. Rowe has just presented to you at the beginning of second semester. So we have been very, very much willing to bargain and to try to come up with the logistics, but unfortunately, we haven't had that opportunity. We've just had the opportunity to. We've just had the opportunity to hear what concerns are, are there. Finally, I want to speak to you guys, most importantly, as an educator. I have had a lot of your kids. You know me, most of you know me on a very personal level. The one thing that I believe has always distinguished District 158 from all other districts is the collaboration that allows us to provide the highest quality, authentic educational experience possible. In the plan presented to the board, you clearly see that there are multiple barriers that make it extremely difficult to provide a safe and positive learning environment with the students and that the community deserves. Parents and students need to know that the plan presented by Dr. Rowe is going to create an alternate experience in a school that is unlike anything that students have ever experienced in the past. Students will have limited interactions and opportunities to socialize in the hallways, but instead be directed from class to class. It is important to note that in the class, we do have an opportunity to watch and see if the kids are holding on their masks. Since I talked to you guys in July, my biggest fear has always been, what are we going to do to make sure that kids in the hallways are being held to that same standard? Because I will tell you that when we see kids in the hallways, even with IDs right now, they'll wear their IDs in front of the staff. It's when they turn the corner that they'll take them off. And I have no doubt in my mind, seeing the pictures that happened in Georgia, that that will happen in, in our, our community as well. Each class will, each class will have assigned seating facing the same way with limited student to student interaction and a teacher who's going to be transitioning back and forth between in person and remote teaching. Asking teachers to teach both in person and online is a disservice to both students online and in the classroom. It is impossible to try to teach and meet the needs of students in a classroom while you have 15 kids needing help online. When a kid is having a bad day, as was presented to you guys today, and now I can actually take a kid and actually have a one-on-one conversation for during 45 minutes, I will not feel comfortable doing that with 12 other students sitting in the room, being able to hear what these kids' concerns are. They're not going to want to talk to me like they do when it's one-on-one. They're not going to want to, to be able to share with me what, what's going on in their lives. My whole pedagogy of teaching has always been student relationships. I strive on it. Yes, our curriculum is important, but so is the relationship that students have with the teachers. And we're taking that away from them. We're taking that away and I don't understand why we're doing it. The rooms themselves will be stripped of everything but student desks and a teacher desk. Now, Dr. Rowe showed you guys a picture of, of the rooms, but if you notice, you didn't see where the boards were in those rooms. And you don't realize that teachers, when we are at our best, are moving back and forth in those rooms. To think that teachers are going to want to do that in this atmosphere, when you have heard all of the fear that you guys have seen, i- it just, i- it's an idealistic world that is going to have a lot of complications to it. Students that can't leave for lunch will eat in a, an assigned seat away from their friends. This is not something that I feel is best for all students always. The best educational experience that we can provide for our students is one that promotes teacher and student interaction while ensuring that both students and staff are healthy enough to participate in the daily educational process. The plan as presented by Dr. Rowe will take education in District 158 further back than we have ever been before. Our teachers have done every single thing that you guys have asked, asked of them, whether it be blended learning, whether it be the, the Vanguard, whether it be in the elementary level, asking them to, to do a different type of curriculum for the first time in a pandemic. I don't think our teachers are given enough credit for all the hard sacrifice that they do. And when we need you guys the most, right now we're being told, well, we're going to try to protect you guys as well, as well as we can. It's just, it's disheartening. We all know this is extremely trying time for everyone, our students, parents, the communities, teacher, and administration. But that's why I believe it's more important now than ever for all of us to work together to put a thorough thoughtful plan in place that not only continues our progressive values of providing our students with a top notch education, but most importantly, it keeps everyone safe. My hope is that the administration and Board of Education will decide to take a step back. Bring the community and educators together. We just spent an entire year with a strategic plan committee made up of students, staff, community members, and we came up with a fantastic five-year plan as, as a, for our district. My hope is that we can go back to that type of collaboration instead of becoming one that things are dictated to, to the union. And I want, I hope that we can create a more comprehensive plan that values the all students model that we created together. Thank you for your time and at this point, I will take any questions that you guys have.
All right. I have questions.
Well, my, I have one question, I guess, to sort for Dr. Rowe. Um, I agree with Mr. Ane. Um, I actually agree with most of what Mr. Ane said. And I guess the question I have with this plan is, what is the urgency to get back at the beginning of November as opposed to wait until second semester? And I'd like to couple that with, I think the metrics that we're looking at and you said, you know, we're basing our decisions kind of on our metrics. Those are ridiculous. I mean, it's based on nobody being in school or very, very, very few people being in school. And that's all going to change in the next month, you know? So we'll have some real actual data as, as we're going through that. I love that Huntley High School and schools in Huntley are first in a lot of things, but why do we need to be going back first um as opposed to, it sounds like from the letters we got all week and the past couple of weeks and the, and the people came and spoke today, what, why are we rushing to go back at this point? I mean, I know that's what parents want, but I also don't believe they're going to understand the level of how different it is. And you know what? Maybe in a month, we can even go back in a more normal school setting after a period of time, you know? Nothing has changed with COVID, nothing since it started. Absolutely nothing. Numbers are going up and down in different places. Wisconsin right now is an absolute ass show and, you know, the border doesn't stop the disease, you know? And now I think we, we have a, um, I know I'm dumping here instead of just asking a question, but you know, now I think it's kind of been dispelled that, that it's actually a real thing. It's not a hoax as we've been hearing from our, our leaders. It's a real thing. We know that now after this past week. So I guess my question is, why are we rushing to get it done? What seems like 30, 45 days before it needs to, you know, before we need to do it?
Well, I, I don't, I don't think it's a necessarily a rush to get it done. There are different ways that it could be done. Um, I think that the data is telling us that we could be in a hybrid model and we need to take a step. It's a, it's a step. This is a smaller step could be taken. It's a step that I don't think that, um, I'm not sure the, the community would like. It's a small step. It would be dramatically different than this step. We could wait till January and come back. But in doing so, um, we wouldn't be taking a step when the experts are telling us that we can be in a hybrid model. So we said all along that we were going to, we were going to follow, um, you know, science and the guidelines. The guidelines have, are guiding us to come back.
Except they're based on data that's not based on kids being in school.
But they're based on the community data of, of everyone living their life in the community. And, and it's not just in-school data that, um, that we're following. It's general data of, because our kids with our parents at home too and their, and their work that they go to. So, and they're all bringing, bringing that in, into our schools as well. So that's what, I mean, I hear your point, Mr. Garian, I totally do. I, I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from. I think that, um, it just comes down to that the data and the experts are saying that we can be in a hybrid model, why would we not take a step?
Another concern that, that I had, even in the conversation that was being had up here, is when Mr. Troy wants to, to ask, why not put on how many cases have been there since the start of the school year? And we say, well, that's not important. We need to care about the last 14 days. The message that that sends to your staff is, is hey, we're going to hide the real numbers because we're afraid that once people see what those numbers were since the start of the school year, that, I mean, why would we not want to be transparent?
Explain to me what's the relevancy of it is then? If it's important, what, what's the relevancy?
The relevancy to me is the fact that it, it, it shows that you're not trying to hide anything.
We're not, we're not trying to hide anything. I'm trying to provide data that's useful. You don't provide data just for the sake of having data, okay? You want data that's useful to people and, and that they're going to utilize. So it's not, nothing to do with hiding anything, okay?
And I don't think that's in your intention, but, but what I'm saying is when people turn on TV and at any given moment, you can see how many people have died since the beginning of this and you see how many people have been infected since the beginning of this. I think we owe our community that same right to know that at the start of this, how has it, how has it affected us? And then you can add with it, well, here's where we are now. I think that that only strengthens our transparency to the community.
And I'm not, I'm not advocating that you don't have to have it, but I'm also saying, if you don't have others' data to compare it to, it, it just doesn't, it, it, those just end up being numbers. I mean, this is the numbers you see that we've had nationally. I mean, you, you can follow those numbers and you can go along and they, they have some relevancy as we've gone through this whole progression. I mean, we're, we're picking up at a point in time here, okay? And it's, I, I just don't know that it, it presents ultimately meaningful data. I could be wrong. I just don't, I, I'm more, I, I'm thinking of that data as more giving people a dashboard for what's the environment that my kid's going to school right now and, and what, what's it been like the last couple of weeks? Which is more relevant to them making a daily decision on whether to send their kid or not. Okay, that's, that's how I'm looking at that particular piece in the dashboard. And I, and personally, that's what I think is most relevant to somebody or should be, I think should be most relevant to somebody. But it's not, not meant to hide that. I just, I, I just don't know. When you don't have, when you have data and you don't have a frame of reference with it, I, I don't know what it, what purpose it ends up serving, so. But I mean, that, that, that was my thoughts on it. I, it's not, absolutely not to hide anything because it, I mean, I, you know, I'm numbers guy. I, 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 I'd like to look at numbers, but they got to mean something, you know? To, to, to be worth looking at. So, I mean, that was my thought on that. Um, I, I did, I, I do want you to really explain to me, um, the, there's a number of things that, that are concerning me as it relates to teachers. Because I, I heard, I, I've probably heard it five different times and it's this thought of, of teaching simultaneously, um, remote to the uh class, kids in the class and, and the difficulties and the hurdles that present. And I want, and again, I'm not a teacher. I, I, I'm trying to envision, and, and I know we've talked a little bit about the focus if they're doing that needs to be your teaching to the kids who are remote. The kids who are in front of you are in front of you and you can address them when you have the time, but you, you focus more of your, what you're doing towards the remote kids. So I, I need to understand, because it's a, obviously it's a huge concern to me. I need to understand that better. What, you, you make it sound like it's, it's a really huge hurdle to providing quality education. And that's, that's the big piece here is the metrics support being hybrid, okay? And being, it's, what I need to hear on the other side is, why is it not good for education to be doing this? Okay, so that's why I, I need to get that frame of reference.
Absolutely. When you, you have a, a class of 32 students, like I have in my current issues, for example, if we have A through K come in, that's under the assumption that it's going to be half my class. When in reality, that could be 18 to 20 kids. Now, Dr. Rowe, I do believe him when he says that they're going to do everything in their power to try to limit that. But when you have 14 to 16 kids in front of you and you also need to be able to reach those kids online, let's say I want to get up and help kids that want help, okay? Now I don't have access to the kids that are online. You give me a co-teacher, it could happen. Let's say I'm a teacher who's completely scared of this entire environment and I'm going to teach at my desk to a computer screen like I would with just 16 kids i- in the classroom. What message is that sending to those kids in the classroom? If I'm a kid in that classroom, I'm saying, why am I here? Well, what is the purpose for me getting on a bus, getting into a car, coming to, coming into a classroom just so I can learn better outside? So I think that what happens is when you have kids in a classroom and you have kids online, you have now two distinct groups that you've got to try to provide the same lesson to. Now, yes, there are, are ways that I've even thought about it where maybe in the hour and a half, the first 45 minutes, I'm going to dedicate to the kids in the classroom while the 45 minutes of the kids online are doing work by themselves. And then maybe after that 45 minutes, I transition it. But, but even then, what happens when a kid is working all by themselves and they need help? I can't be there for them because my focus no longer is on half the class. It's on the half that I'm dealing with. And I think that what, another thing that, that, that has to be brought into this is it literally becomes two classes in one because if a kid's only outreach to you is through email, now when class is over, I've got to be dealing out with email issues. I got to be, it, it just brings up a whole nother, a whole nother load of, of work that, that, that teachers are going to have to do. And, and that's why, you know, what you heard tonight is that we want kids back. And, and here's the thing, and that's why I even said in my presentation, if we're focusing on those kids that need accommodations and those kids that are struggling, now teachers can make sense of that. Because now during that work time, when, when, when kids are working on them, by themselves, now you can really focus on getting those kids who might have a co-teacher. Now that, that the teacher can be in the room with the kids on Zoom, now the co-teacher can go help w- with what, what's going on. I, I just think that, once again, it's important to realize that, to answer your question, it does, and I said it in the, again, it just does a disservice to both the kids online and uh in person because it's impossible to give the, of, the right amount of attention to both.
Okay, so I follow that. So, so how does it change if we go at the start of the next semester and do the same thing? What changes?
I think the first thing that it does is it doesn't say, let's, let's create a monumental task in the two, in the four weeks. Now we can actually meet with administration and come up with strategies and some professional development on how to do that and see best practices that have worked. Because as Dr. Rowe said, we're living in unprecedented times. There are groups that are just starting to do this, but it doesn't mean that they're doing it well. And I thought that, and I hope that in Huntley District 158, being this lighthouse district that is trying to do things all the time, I would hope that instead of rushing into it, that we're going to do it right and do it in a way that we know will be able to help our kids. Because my biggest fear is in, in, in four weeks, I, I don't know if that, and that, if that's possible. I mean, another thing in health concerns, flu season will have started and at that point, we can see the impact that that's having on education. I think that that's also important because I don't want to, I don't want to be the reason the storm happens that we might expect in January. I want to give kids as much as, uh, as much of a experience as possible, but I will tell you, what I've been able to do in the last two weeks, having kids work and putting them into breakout rooms and actually having a conversation and having them tell me about their day and seeing them smile and seeing how much they appreciate that one-on-one experience, that's why I do my job. That's why I've always done my job is because I want kids to get past the curriculum, engage a love for learning. And that's what that does when you have a positive interaction with the teacher, is it gives kids a value for learning. And I feel like that is something that would be lost if we try to meet the needs of two different separate groups a- at the same time.
So how were, and I, I, I hear you on that. My question then is, how were you accomplishing that before when we were, you know, like last year? When we were all, all, all the kids were there all the time? How were you reaching those kids then individually?
Absolutely. I, the way that you're, you're, you're reaching those, the kids, and that, that's what I think i- is so beautiful about the remote learning where it does have its flaws and kids don't learn well. But you would do that i- i- in more of a discussion where you can actually take a kid out in the hallway if they're having a bad day. And I'm not saying you can't do that here, but what I'm saying though is that there is, it is less likely that a teacher is going to want to have that one-on-one interaction close up with someone that, that you would have there. You know, kids are going to have assigned seats. It, it just, once again, I think.
There's different barriers now, I, I get it.
But, but, but even the different barriers, I mean, we have to take a step back and say, okay, the community wants kids in, we are willing to get kids in. Let's do what we've always done and let's collaborate and, and work together to get those kids that need it. Because some kids, as we've identified, are striving in the system.
I, I, I've heard a lot of favorable stories in, since that recent, in that vein. I, I, I think there's definitely some major success stories that have occurred from it. So I. So I, I'm not going to disagree with that. I guess the question is, I mean, how do you, how do you come back to the community who clearly, I mean, there's, there's a majority of the community that wants to be in person. I mean, what, I, I mean, again, they, they might not fully understand things the way you as teachers do and, and as the administration does. But I mean, you know, they gotta have a, a reasonable answer a- as to why you would postpone this any further, uh, given the metrics that you have. Again, I, I do want to make the point, again, this is not, I, I do agree with you. This is not a time to be in the lead on any of this stuff. Um, I, I, I do fully agree with, you kind of need to see a little bit as far as how some of this is working out. But it, it still, you have a community to answer to, um, who, who clearly would like to go in this direction, um, and they're seeing other districts going in that direction, so, I mean.
But I, I would once again say that hybrid is a very broad term. And when you say the community wants that-
Not a hundred percent. I'm just saying-
I- is it a, a branch of the community that wants that? Or is it all of the community that wants that? Because I think that what we will see is that what our community wants is the most authentic educational experience that we can give them. And to do that two-thirds into an actual semester, we've all identified there's going to be two or three weeks of transition time, right? Well, if we do that in November, that takes us to Thanksgiving break. That means we only have two or three weeks to perfect our craft. And to me, it just makes more sense. And let me be clear so that the community hears this. It's not that the teachers don't want the kids back. If that's the case, we would have argued against bringing any elementary kids back. We would have argued about bringing the self-contained kids back. We would have argued about, we would have just said no. And that is not the way that this union nor our certified staff has ever been. We also want to bring kids back. But to us, let's go after those that need it the most and the kids that have the accommodations between now and then, so we can get those kids back on the right track. Instead of having to worry with, about those kids and gen ed kids that are striving, let's, let's focus on those that need it the most. And then at the, the beginning of the next semester, that is when I feel like we would be more than willing to, to bring everyone back. Because it is, that second semester does represent a brand new start for everybody, especially at the high school level.
I gotta let others speak to that.
Yeah, I guess the-
Follow-up question to that?
Sure.
Follow-up on that theme from what Tony was saying. If I'm, and this could just be simplistic thinking, so maybe just, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, you have thirty kids in your class and whether it's eighteen live, twelve, or vice versa, it's like, what stops you from just doing what you're doing now online and teaching one class? And you say, what does that do for the kids that come to school? But in my mind, I'm thinking, getting suited up, you know, getting on a bus, going. That formality and that, that rigidity of the schedule, I think, is a benefit from a kid, from a structure standpoint. Even if he's going and sitting at a desk with his Chromebook, doing what he's doing at home, but he has to come there live, I think there's a benefit from the student's perspective. And it feels like, again, maybe I'm oversimplistic, but you could teach it as one class like you do today.
The, the problem is when, when you try to teach a class like that with both kids in, in class and the kids that are out. Once again, I'll, I'll say it, i- if you're asking me to stand in front of a Zoom screen and do that, yes, I can do that. But then I, once again, I think that it does not send the right message to those kids that are in the class. Because then, if I'm a student in that, in that world, I'm saying to myself, why am I here if he's just staring at a screen teaching and I have headphones listening to what he's doing? Now, I, I totally understand with what you're saying is that, yes, there is a benefit for some kids that need that structure of sitting into a classroom. And we haven't been opposed to that. That's not something that, that we are, are saying that we don't want. We want that for those kids that absolutely need it. What we're saying is to blow up an entire structure two-thirds into a semester, to me, it makes more sense, and I think someone had said it, to wait the twenty-seven educational days. Let us finish up what we have started, where teachers are comfortable with what they're doing. Let's bring in the kids that absolutely need, need it and then we can start off fresh during second semester. I, I just-
But then, I guess, and what, what you're, I, I guess I'll caveat all this. I'm very appreciative of everything you're saying and I appreciate the role and the collaboration you're referring to. But come January, is it really different than?
Well, well, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut you off.
No, that's, that's really the question.
No, and, and the biggest thing that I can tell you is come January, what that gives us is a new start and more time to, to collaborate with our PLCs in order to find best practice on how to maybe do a remote slash, uh, Zoom, or I'm sorry, a remote slash in-person learning together. I think that what you've heard from a lot of the teachers is it's not the, it's not the, how do we do it? It, it's why are we doing it so soon? And I think that that, what time gives us is that ability to collaborate a- and, and provide the best education.
Right. But, and, and one of the challenges, I think, in terms of, you know, wa- you know, waiting longer, I think, you know, my expectation from a personal standpoint is I think we'll be wearing these things potentially into the, into the fall.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not going to go, go away anytime soon. It's not going to be normal. So there, to me, it's like, let's start the progression. As long as it, you know, it's, it's kind of like a list of crappy choices and you're picking, trying to pick the, the least crappy. But you gotta take a step forward and how do we do that? Knowing that it's not going to be like three months from now where everything's gone. It's going to be, you know, probably nine plus months and it's still going to be around in my mind. So it's like, somehow we're just going to find a way to progress down the spectrum one way or the other.
I, I think what, what it does is, I, and I do get what you're saying is that, that there's no perfect time to start this. But I'll, I'll just, and I, I sound like a broker reckon. I don't, I don't mean to, but to ask an entire staff that is bent over backwards for everything that you've done and now to dictate it, not work with the union, dictate it to the union that this is how it's going to be, that sent a wrong message to begin with because it was so foreign to what we have been able to do. You gave the elementary six weeks to prepare. You're giving the high school four weeks. And what, another thing that, that comes to my mind is just the, the grand scheme of, of thinking about this. You're telling us that the elementary is going to come in in half-days where kids are going to be quarantined or at least put into a classroom by themselves where they can't move? And yet, you're thinking it's okay to bring a high school and a middle school back at fifty percent, knowing that half of our high school is more populated than probably any school in District 155. So when you're saying that they're bringing kids back at eight hundred students, now you look at us bringing kids back at sixteen hundred students, that, there, there's that to take i- into account as well. And that's why I, I think that what you've heard is not, can we do it? We know we can do it. Give us time to do it. Right.
Yeah, and I think coming back to Bill's question is, I think, you know, I think for, in my mind, all of us, I think the key question is, to me, it's, it's, it's a remote class with part of the people in the room and not much else changing and the day is not normal. It's six feet spaced, you know, directed movement and all the things we talked about as being not the normal day. But it's onsite remote learning in my mind because that's all, that's all that. The guidelines and the regulations and, and kind of what we're comfortable with is what we can do. So in my mind, it's just another form of almost onsite remote as a way to move down the spectrum. Um, and do we want to do that now in November? Do we want to do it in January or, or, or something else? But I think that's what we're talking about. It's not something new in my mind. It's just a different, a different flavor of executing on the remote instruction.
I, I just think that if you were to ask any educator to stand up here and, and tell you this, we are all perfectionists of our craft. We want to give your kids and, and the community's kids the best education possible. And just to say that, to say that it's acceptable to stand in front of a computer while kids are sitting in there and that's how you're going to teach them? There's got to be better ways to do it and that's what we're asking is for the time to figure that out.
Well, it's doing what's being, I mean, I guess what's been done so far, in, in my mind, I've heard it's been successful. It's been not ideal, but successful. And I'm just, I'm just suggesting that maybe, you know, just continuation of that with people in the room. And I don't say that's ideal, but it's what we have today.
A- absolutely. I think it just, what that once again says to, to a, a staff member that would be standing here in front of you is, we are going to increase your risk of exposure to this virus while asking you to do the same thing that you're already doing. And, and to me, that's ultimately like, it's like asking your, your teachers to jump on a grenade that you know is about to explode. And, and that, that's why I started off the way that I did is that what's concerning, especially from what I heard, is that we know it's coming. We know the flu season's coming and that in itself presents its own challenge. Because when a staff member, which we get screened every day, okay? We have to sign, fill out a form. When a staff member puts yes onto that form, we're going to be out for ten days or we're going to have to get a COVID test. And with flu season coming on, that, I mean, I, I, I can imagine that that's going to happen more often. And, and where you would only be sick and out for one day, now you're going to be out for multiple days. And, and that's just another component to it that I think we need to figure out. Because do we even have the subs to do it? And that's now not even taking into the fact that we have teachers like Tom George, like Steve Stires, that, that now are given FMLA or goodbye. Here's your thirty-two years in the ser- in service into the district. Pick it or leave it. That's just, that's, that's not a very, that doesn't seem like a, a, a very, uh, fair choice to a lot of, a lot of people.
And then I guess the qualitative question I would have for you is, in that environment I described where kids are coming onsite for essentially the remote flavor of instruction, is it your belief that that would not be any benefit to that student that come in live?
I think if you are asking if there's a benefit to it, some kids will benefit for just being into the classroom because they're not at home and they don't work well at home because home presents an opportunity to maybe have excuses to do the work. What I'm saying is when you ask those kids to come into the classroom and, and you're going to teach in the remote setting, my biggest worry is that there's going to be an expectation that it's going to be twenty nineteen education all over again. And that in itself can, can cause different behavioral issues in the classroom because the more comfortable kids get, the more the masks will come down and, and whatnot. So, and, and there's, there's still a ton of concerns that I haven't even addressed that I could share with you guys if you really have the time. I mean, that, that we have, that are safety concerns and educational concerns that, that we still haven't even talked about, like. And once again, this is all about having a, the message that it sends to your educators. Like, for example, you're asking your educators every day to, to do a self-screening, but we're not going to ask parents to have, to do a self-screening every day.
Granny, I have to interrupt you there. That is an inaccurate statement. I have said that tonight. And I have had this conversation with you on multiple occasions. That is inaccurate. Please don't share inaccuracies at this meeting.
That is, but, but Dr. Rowe-
Once a month, there is a parent certification. There is a daily at-home certification that parents will check symptoms before they send their students to school or they will not send them. I said three times-
But, but that's a discussion that you're expecting parents to have. I think that, that, as I have told you, I do believe that asking them to fill out that form every day, like you do ask your staff to do every day, that's equitable. And to me, that, that is, i- is just sending a message to your staff that you are going to hold the students to the same standards of screening themselves as, as them. So I'm not saying that, that it's-
I'm just asking them to be active.
Which I, I was.
That's your statement.
What was inaccurate about that? I'm just-
They're asking parents to do it daily. We are asking-
No, we're not having them, I'm sorry. Where I must have-
Parents do it daily. We're not asking them to fill out a form every single morning.
Yeah, they're still doing it daily.
Yeah, accurate.
They're just not reporting it daily, but they're charged with doing it daily. You guys, what's different is you're reporting it daily.
And I didn't, and if that's how it came across, I do apologize. I think that what I meant then was that we would like to see them report it daily.
Well, and I, I, with, with all due respect, I think I, I see the, the onus is in the execution of it in terms of what are those repercussions and how hard a line do we take when there's violations? And I think we should take a extremely hard line on, you know, any type of violation of that trust from the, the parent and the, the student. And if there's an issue where they're, a symptomatic kid is sent to school, I don't, you know, I don't think there should be any, any grace period on that. It should just be a, you know, a-
Absolutely. And that is the one thing that I will commend Dr. Rowe and, and everyone for doing is that when I stood here in front of you guys asking in July to have more of a face mask type policy to hold kids accountable, he listened to the, to us on that and, and that I cannot thank, uh, him enough for.
Yeah, and we're, you know, in, in every regard, we're on the same page with you, Red, in regards to trying to cover the, the tolerance level on this. We, we, I get the trepidation. Um, I, it's, it's, it's real. It's, it's, you know, we, we can't tolerate, you know, people not following these hard guidelines that we're going to have. So, I mean, it's going to be, the, the district's going to be, there ain't going to be a lot of, uh, rope in regards to any of this stuff. So, I mean, we're, we're a hundred percent behind you, you and the teachers in, in regards to trying to protect you because it's, you know, we have to. I mean, it, it's something we really, really think is important because we realize, you, you, you know, people are going to have issues wanting to be there and we've got to provide the safest environment, so.
I just, I, I just want you guys to know that, that it's, once again, please make sure that this is understood, that we do want kids back. We're not up here saying that we're against it and we have heard that as well. And that, that is not true. We do all want kids back.
So can I ask a question about, just because we were talking about, you know, being, you know, fifty-fifty and it's too hard to do it on Zoom and in, in person. So explain to me, you also said that you'd really like to see the ones come back that really need help? So how would that be different than being the fifty-fifty online? Because you still have people in there and you still have to do it on Zoom, so I just need help on, on the-
You, you limit the amount of kids in the building. When you do fifty-fifty, you have sixteen hundred kids potentially coming in. Obviously, Dr. Rowe said there's twenty percent. When you talk about the kids that, that need the help, the accommodations and you offer between now and the end of the semester, you offer it to those kids that need, that are not, are struggling and those kids that do need accommodations. And now you narrow down the amount of, of students that you're offering this to while we try to figure out the rest of the component, that, that's where that's different. So you're going to have a lot less kids in.
What your concern was is doing it on Zoom and having people in the classroom too. So I, I just feel like it contradicts that. I mean, I'm, I'm not, and maybe I just don't understand it. I'm just trying to understand it.
Yeah, a- a- and once again, I, I would say the kids that need accommodations and need supports, there are ways that you can get them those supports, uh, i- if it's not fifty percent of the population, if you're bringing in those, those specific kids. Whether it be a, a co-taught teacher, whether it be, um, kids that, that, that just need, that, I, I guess what I'm saying is it's, it's easier to have one kid that's standing a few feet from you and being able to mute while kids are working to work with that kid than to try to teach to fifteen kids and then come back online and teach to fifteen and seeing how many questions you might have in the chat or, or whatnot.
Thank you. So, Mr. Jenkery, to, to your point, I've received an email from my daughter who's already gotten something from her teacher. And, and I wanted to read part of it because it might kind of add a little bit of light to what you're trying to describe and the question that you're asking. So in this, and I'm going to skip through chunks of this. I would love to have everyone back so that we can learn together. There's a dynamic of working together to learn that has been lost with remote learning. However, hybrid learning will not bring back that dynamic. We have, we will have required seating with six feet of social distancing. This also goes for me. I will not be able to work with you individually. Additionally, since at least half the class will be remote learning, all my homework solutions will be on Zoom and my lectures will still be focused on the camera. So, and, and just a pause. From what I read of that, it, it's like sitting in front of your computer and this is the only thing that your eye contact is with. There's no eye contact with the kids out here. There might be a little bit of up and down. That's what you're trying to master now, is, is balancing the eye contact between that camera and anybody else- and anybody else who's in front of you. So the 16th person in, in the room, essentially. To continue, um, therefore you will probably have to watch Zoom in order to see the solutions and ask questions with a mask. Last, you will probably have to bring in headphones so that there will not be any echoing. So again, this is talking about that, that entire situation where the kids are still going to have to bring in their, their computers.
Yeah.
And, and go with what's in front of them. So I don't know if that, that helps or hinders the, the discussion, but that helped me to kind of envision what's going to happen to these kids.
Yeah, and I, and this, and speaking on my own, just my own interpretation of things, that's, that's what I see described tonight is you're going to have all this space restriction, which you have to have. And it is, you know, it's onsite remote learning in my mind. And I think there is a student benefit to that because just, again, the structuring, the, the rigid, the rigidness of the schedule is you're, you're getting up and doing something. You're not sitting at the kitchen table with a TV on in the background.
Right.
You're getting up and going to school. But from an expectation standpoint, it's not anywhere near normal, but it, it's something better than home, I think.
Yeah, and, and I think, and I think any expectation of normalcy, I, I think it, it's more convenient to just forget about it. Because it's going to be some time until we return to the pre-COVID normalcy of school.
Right.
I, I did, I did have a different question. Um, and Dr. Rowe, I wanted to ask this now because you're still here.
Sure.
Um, when, when students have their passing periods, what happens to the sanitation in those rooms? What's the expectation of that?
Well, the expectation of that is that we would not have a custodial staff that would be cleaning in between each of those five periods. Every classroom is equipped, uh, with wipes or a spray bottle and a rag. Uh, and staff would be able to clean the, if they, if they chose and felt comfortable doing so. Otherwise, um, there would be, would not be cleaned in between. If a student, um, sneezes or coughs or something like that, we would have building level protocol that to call a, um, a custodian to come in and remove and obviously disinfect that desk. However, if there was no, um, no droplets that were, yeah, no droplets left the body, then, you know, there's, there's little evidence to support that, uh, there's a concern. The, um, the cleaning of the desks in between is more about staff comfort and an extreme level of caution than it is about, uh, any guidelines. No guidelines at the state level warrant that as an accessory.
And, and, um, there was an email that we received where one of the teachers was suggesting in there, uh, to have, uh, thermometers or digital thermometers in every classroom. That's, that's a ton of thermometers. And it's, it's, you know, it, it's in the abundance of caution, but at the same time, how cautious is it realistically?
Well, it's expensive and it's.
So my, I guess my question becomes, what becomes the protocol in the middle of the day if something is determined, um, for these teachers in order for them to maintain that, that level of safety?
Absolutely. Um, the nurse, I mean, the nurses are all there. We're fully staffed with nurses. And, um, if, if a student seems off, if a student, um, claims or complains of, of discomfort or not feeling worried or any of the symptoms, obviously they'll be sent to the nursing unit. Um, and then that nurse would, uh, would, would go through the, the process and, and verify. And we have an isolation room in every one of our nurses' offices. Uh, where if they have COVID-like symptoms, they're immediately isolated. Um, and they begin the process of, of verifying, calling parents, asking them to go home. One of the difficulties that we'll experience will be that if you have a symptom, you know, like Mr. Annie alluded to, you will have to then be isolated for a likelihood of 10 days or you can supply a negative COVID test. Um, so that's, that's, you know, that's, that's your, ultimately your choice. Do you want to just wait 10 days and go remote? If you have no, if you're able to continue to function, or do you want to go get a COVID test and continue to come back and, um, prove that you're not, you don't have the virus?
And, and with the block scheduling, how many passing periods are there?
Should be, you know, four each day.
And the three for lunch, because you have to remember the kids will be moving, moving, uh,
Of course, enough.
in between classes.
Yeah. I think that is, one of the things to point out is the temperature checks, the, the, that Benny model we received. They, they've been ruled inconclusive in terms of determining whether
Right.
um, they're a, a valid, um, measure. Um, and I'll point out that IHSA has mandated that we do temperature checks and a screening every single day of our students that are coming to contact days. And you probably saw in the newspaper today that we had an outbreak that shut down football and basketball. So our daily temperature checks of students and daily screening of students resulted in an outbreak that shut down our football and basketball teams, which didn't serve its purpose. So
Right.
um, it's just as good as parents checking on a daily basis.
Oh, there's, I'm sorry, there was one more. Um, there was a question about, in the public comment about teachers that are in multiple buildings. How will we be handling that as they travel place in place?
Uh, well, teachers that are in multiple buildings will still have, they still have their, their own screen process and it will treat it as normal. I mean, the, the typical protocols in every entryway of all of our buildings, we have the, the hand sanitizer. I think everyone is, is very cautious about, you know, what they're doing as they're leaving and coming, coming and going, washing hands and, um, taking those necessary precautions. But for our staff, I don't anticipate, um, any issues with traveling, just within the district. Unless Miss Lammer gives something to add that I may have missed. Traveling teachers, are there any additional protocols that they would have to follow, traveling inside the district?
Brett, I want to tell you, I'm, I'm feeling a little offended, um, that you are referring to this board does not support or value our teachers. I hope that's not how you really feel because I, I agree with you. I think, you know, most of us have had high schoolers that have come through and we, our kids love you as a teacher and, and really get connected to our teacher community. So I just want to make sure that you're, you know.
Yeah.
We've always supported teachers in the past and I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, 100%. I, I will tell you, having worked with Dr. Rowe and Cabinet and working with you guys, there has always been a feeling of how lucky we are to have the relationships that we have. It's because the way that this was presented was very threatening and, and it wasn't collaborative at all. I think that what you will see is that it was, it, it, it was the, uh, the optics and, and it's the unintended, and I, I did make sure I said unintended message to staff. There's a lot of staff that are angry and, and feel like they, they are, are not supportive. But I do know that you guys do care. I've always known that and I, I will, if I, that is the, uh, if that's how you felt, I apologize because I do know that you guys care.
I, I know you know that, but I, I certainly hope you're reiterating that to your membership as you guys are talking about these plans and, and your objections to them.
We, we are, we, we have, I, 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 um, with the union, we have not tried to politicize this at all. We're more of listening to it and, and we offered members the opportunity to speak for themselves. Uh, we have not, nor have I ever since I've been union president, uh, tried to dictate a, a message to, to, to any of our, our staff.
I, I think what we're trying to do is give our families a choice. You know, uh, was we promised at the beginning? We said we were going to give them a in-person or, uh, you know, hybrid or a remote choice. And, and I think that's what we're trying to do at this point. Um, for many schools around us, not that we're followers, but there's many schools around, around us that the teachers have been back in and are back in and are going back in. So how are they able to do it differently than what, what you're expecting us to?
Well, I, I would say for every district that's doing it, there's districts that aren't. District 300 has decided not to for whatever reason, whether it be their board or whatnot. But, but I would say that I would hope that they, the way that they're able to do that is through collaboration and, uh, through listening to one another and, and making it a, a we plan, not a me plan. Um, a- and I just, I really do think that we, we pride ourselves on doing things right. And I think we have an opportunity here to, to push it back, to not go in headfirst and, and to really slow down, let our PLCs function like we have really wanted them to in order to come up with curriculum that, that, that can, can be most beneficial for our students.
Well, I'll, I'll agree with you on this, that I am a little concerned about the, you know, dual in-person and remote learning. But, um, Mr. Brown also said that that's for six classes, right, before we go on break? So for six classes, that's going to be happening, right? Is that correct?
It will happen in the spring as well. There is no hybrid plan out there that they will not be in-person and remote happening simultaneously. The difference in the spring is remote sections would be created. So some of the students that would be remote could have a remote section.
A remote only.
Remote only section wherever possible. Students that are not in person would be zooming in still in the spring. So there is no scenario where students will not be online and in person at the same time.
But if they're a hundred percent on, on remote, then no.
They're just adding to the group that is wa- that is zooming into the classroom. It's reducing the number that are relying on that and more, so the remote students would have a, a more similar experience to what they're experiencing right now come January 4th than they are if we go back. Some of them are second for the remainder of the semester.
Okay. Um, and then another question I have is, so we talked about the masks and the kids. The high school students sometimes have had a harder time keeping the mask on. And you said, with the, you know, I see it myself, kids walk around the corner and take their ID off. And that's a concern for you, and it should be. I mean, it's real, realistically, that's going to be happening some other time. But how is that going to be different second semester? How, what's going to change about that?
That, that was one of the components that, that, that we were seeing. I, I think that obviously second semester, that there will be different things in, in place, like hopefully a potential vaccine or there'll be things where the mask obviously will still be warranted. But it gives us time to be able to monitor or even maybe even do what we need to, to, to. I think more people will feel comfortable, more comfortable, uh, second semester in possibly being out in the hallways and, and monitoring that. I, I, I don't know how, how else to say it. I, I think it's just important to know that what we're asking for is time and what we're asking for is, is an opportunity to, to, to really collaborate with administration to figure that component out.
You know, I, I view our teachers as, um, more essential workers. You're so vital to, to our children. And I think, not that I'm comparing, but I think it's kind of like the same situation where essential workers, I have children that are essential workers and during this pandemic, they never had the choice to stay home. They were at work, there are, we have, our high school students are working at Walmart. They're out there, they're working, they're doing what they need to do. So I kind of, I kind of think of the teachers in the same category. You're vital and essential workers to us. So I, I struggle with, you know, the, the resistance to come back and pull it. And I know you're saying you want to come back just at a later date, you know. Definitely said, I worry about the social, of, the, the emotional, um, state of a lot of our teachers. Um, several of them have shared their stories with us and, and it's, you know, I feel bad for them. But I would hope that, um, our school psychiatrists and our, and our contracted, um, social worker, uh, they know that there are services available to our teachers that are feeling overwhelmed and, um, you know, just stressed by all of this. There, there are services for them as well. I know there are birthdays for them as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
I've, I've got one more.
Yes, go ahead.
So I, and I wrote it down in my notes and I, I didn't ask earlier. I apologize for that. So you had mentioned or suggested a half-day instruction and a half-day of office hours for the kids that needed the extra help. In, in a high school model, I don't understand how you could have a half-day of instruction. Because it, 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 it doesn't compute. It, it's not like elementary school. You're moving between class to class to class and, and, and there's a discontinuity in that concept.
Well, what it did was, we, we made hour segments instead of hour and a half. So what, what, uh, this was made at the last minute when we were told that it, we needed to shift our focus to, um, why we're doing it, to how we're doing it. And what we really tried to do is, was to eliminate the lunch period, uh, where kids would, would be congregating in, in a, a certain space. So what we did was we created four periods, um, that were an hour long each. It was actually very similar to what, um, Dr. Bealan had presented to, to Cabinet, um, where the, the, the first four periods, and once again, I will say that this is something that happened at the last minute just to try to, to get that. But, um, they would meet for four, four periods for an hour. They would go home for lunch and then we would have office hours in the evening, um, to, to help those kids that needed it. And, uh, Mr. Quaglano also has that plan. I shared that with him. So he could show it to you as well.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Yep.
Melissa, a question.
It was one of, just a, a statement. Mr. Annie, you know, thank you for, you know, coming and answering questions, for being here. Um, you know, I, I commend the union for, as you said, you're not displaying, no, we don't want to do that because you would be doing that at the elementary level. So, you know, and I think it's important that we recognize that, that it is kind of two separate tasks. So I, I appreciate that the elementary teachers, you know, are willing to take these baby steps and work and see what we've got. Um, I, I just want to state to the record that, you know, myself, at, at no point did I look at the teachers as, you know, there's a reason we're not holding up. Um, there were multiple, multiple factors that went into us changing from our original plan um, to going to full remote. And I, I hope the teachers hear this and I hope the community hears this, that there, there is not the one thing that is to blame for all of this. I mean, everybody has to understand there were so many factors that went into this. And I don't like to hear that, that people in the community are looking for anyone.
Any one reason.
Reason to blame, whether it's the teachers, whether it's the board, whether it's Dr. Rowe, whether it's the Cabinet, whether it's the governor, whatever, whatever it is. They're just all balls that were in the air that we were trying to juggle and there was no one specific reason. And I just need to state that because I don't want our teachers feeling that, you know, they're the blame, that it was their request was a factor in this whole problem. And I just want to state that.
And that, and we realize it's an unprecedented time that we really hope that we never have to experience again. Uh, and, and I, I would just say to you that I think that we work the best when it's not the community versus the teachers, versus the board, versus the administration. I think that we all work best when we are, are coming together and sharing concerns and actually working towards a common goal. And the union, whatever decision is made, we are not going to shut down. We are going to continue to move forward uh, in, in any way that we have to in order to, to make sure that we have the best working conditions possible.
It's, it's very much appreciated.
And any other questions?
Bill, spill your committee. So, Bill, committee.
And, uh, anybody else have any questions?
Before we move on, thank you, Mr. Annie. I'd like to clear up a few inaccuracies. I did, I said nothing about a storm inevitably going to hit. Um, just for clarification, um, Mr. Annie shared that two of our teachers that he named, um, were being forced out because of FMLA. That is 100% inaccurate. In fact, um, those comments should never have been made in public and we are working with those teachers and have solutions because we do care about them and have outcomes that are working in their benefit. Um, and I would be real hesitant to say that HCA leadership has bent over backwards to this process. I'm not sure that that's an accurate statement either. We're very willing to collaborate. And after 10 years of leadership in the district, I find it very disheartening that I've been just been publicly told to be a dictator and threatening. Um, for the record, I find that to be a, a low blow and very unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of questions for Dr. Rowe.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
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 Um, so. So, so, I probably should ask this, but the high school kids, when they're back in, the ones that used to go in person, I know my kids rode in school with a whole bunch of, like, they all rode together, are we allowing them to do that? Or are we monitoring, or are we saying, if you do that, you have to have your mask on? Like, is, or are we just?
We don't have much say until they enter our property. And once they, you know, I think there's, there's got to be some faith in that, you know, kind of like the comments that I made earlier about we all kind of have to be in this together. And it's going to take a community to to pull something like this off. And if we're going to stay open, we all have to do our part. And that's, you know, we're going to ride together in a vehicle, and we're not coming from the same household, we probably should be wearing our masks in the vehicle. I know that's hard to do, especially if you trust the family that you're riding with. But.
I was wondering maybe.
From our standpoint, that's the angle that we would take as a school. Obviously, you know the people that you're you're riding with and you know that, you know, if they have been exposed or whatever, we have to be honest with one another. If you've been exposed that had close contact, I think you have just, you have a responsibility to tell your closest friends, hey, I've been exposed, I think I may have been exposed, let's let's keep our distance for a couple of days until I find out, or if symptoms arise, or if I get tested, we owe that to one another.
Yeah, I mean, you already have culture shift, and I think.
We absolutely are.
Before people are kind of get on board with it. So I want to talk a little bit about the RCI and special ed. Right now, RCI is going in four days a week, right? And the, a lot of the special ed kids are going in, but not everyone with an IEP is in school? I keep forgetting, is that in school? Have, is that going to change? When are all of that kids with IEPs going to be in school?
Yes, I'll let Dr. Del Castillo take that question, but this was an important step.
Many comments that you've been getting from parents because if their child, you know, has an ID and they're not in school, and so there's other kids in school and there's, you know, our RCI kids are in there, so how do you determine and when are all of the IEP kids going to go back?
All the IEP students will be back in October 19th. All elementary IEP students, students with IEP will be back on October 19th, four days a week.
Oh.
That includes our students in instructional classes and direct instruction and our students in core taught classes.
Okay, thank you. So then when they go back, the high school goes back, those kids that are in there now, they're continuing to get the same hours and they'll be on the same schedule and the kids that are there right now?
Mm-hmm.
The special ed kids, okay.
Yeah.
That was it, that's all I have.
Any other questions?
Oh, I just want to say one other thing. People are talking about a vote, and and, you know, I don't, I don't think it's important for us to take a vote because we all are very vocal. We all talk about our 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 concerns and we ask a lot of questions, and I almost think that a vote is is not, you know, necessary. I advise that if I had a vote for this program, I would, I'd be a yes, going to be a reluctant yes, because I feel like, you know, it may not be a perfect plan, but we're giving our parents a choice, and that's what we said we are going to do, and that's what we're doing. So that's, I think about that. I'm done.
Can I add anything for questions, guys? I'm just curious, just because I deal with this on a daily basis, but with us being in McHenry and Kane, are we looking at Kane County numbers too, and should those be on our website as well?
That's a good, that's a good question. I mean, our Kane County.
Yeah, I know, I know we don't have many kids, but I'm just curious.
So a neighboring, neighboring area.
A neighboring area. We could, you could absolutely, they, their school decision-making metrics is is likely not the same.
Okay.
But we could certainly incorporate Kane County numbers and a link to their their region or just county metrics for information.
Okay.
Make it like a one-stop-shop for us, you could pick it up.
And then for, what happens if it does go over eight, you know, eight percent?
That's when the, the governor would roll things back. We just saw that happen in Winnebago County.
Right.
And it would really, or Region 1, actually, which is all of Northwestern Illinois. So it would, it would depend on what they determine is causing the spike. So when they rolled those regulations back, they actually didn't, didn't increase the the stringency on any of the schools whatsoever, because they didn't determine that that was contributing to the spike. The schools weren't seeing an increase in in their issues, it was mainly bars, restaurants, and the colleges. And so the schools didn't, didn't have any, any additional restrictions. So I think they're being really selective in terms of trying to target what might be causing the spike, and we're seeing them them occur. So it's really, I don't know that we can predict that.
But they could, if they rolled back and did, I mean, they could mandate that we go backwards.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that wouldn't be an option, it would be.
That's correct.
A mandate.
All right, any other questions?
Hey, I have a few questions. Um, sorry, they're all over the place because I don't know what kind of people ask questions. Do we know how, since we've come back, how many teachers, you know, the goal is to have them in the building, teaching across from like their classrooms, do we know how many teachers have had to stay home for various symptoms that, you know, like, because, you know, like, they have a headache or sore shoulder, runny nose or something? Have we had teachers that have had to stay home that were maybe not positive for COVID?
Yeah.
Have there been instances, have there been a lot instances that have happened?
We have that. It has, and we've had, it's happened, that's happened from, for individual singular symptoms. It's happened where people have had to be quarantined and they, the person ended up not being a positive test as well. It's all part of the unfortunate process, the environment that we're in.
So what would happen, in the case when we're back, would we need to get a staff in the room?
True question.
Would the teachers still be able to move in while the kid, I know you don't want to leave kids unattended in a room, because the teacher potentially still keeps the class from home?
They absolutely, if they're, if they're able to teach the classroom and aren't too sick, they would be able to to zoom in the classroom and we would provide supervision, either whether that be a sub or an aide or an administrator to supervise that classroom as long as the teacher was able to do so. So that, you know, that that answers the question, I'm glad that you brought that up.
Okay, um, we, thank you. We touched on, you know, who's cleaning the classroom, you know, that if you have teacher discretion, can students then bring in, not that you can't point the way to the dorm if they want?
Preferably not, that, that, we have that, all of that PPE. I think that, you know, Mr. Nkasek and Mr. Dean, they, they keep our, our hazardous materials under lock and key and under teacher supervision, so technically those, those blocks, why, it would sound silly, but they would fall under that same category of students shouldn't bring that sort of thing with them. I mean, hand sanitizer, okay, whatever, fine, but.
Oh, because of the mask?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You know, take it upon themselves to, like, um.
Bring their own desk, absolutely, ample supply.
Awesome. Um, other questions?
What I think at the high school level is probably a very logical and likely scenario of a teacher, you know, student comes in, wants to wipe their desk down, or if they leave, you think about, I remember as a high school teacher constantly fighting the student battle of them lining up a minute or two before the bell rang, and now you may actually be encouraging them to to clean the desks and and allow for that extra couple of minutes so the process can function and happen smoothly.
That's a good idea. What about water bottles, you know, I know we talked about masks, will, while they're in the classroom, will the students be allowed to have water bottles with them?
That's a, that's a level of detail that I know we haven't discussed, but I think we've, we've been living this way. I I can't imagine that is a battle that we would want to fight. Because I don't know about, I don't know about any of you, but as I talk with this, I have been more thirsty with this on than I am whenever I'm not wearing a mask. So I'm going to assume that.
I just didn't know if that gets to something new that I hadn't heard of, you know, some guidelines that came out to.
No. The only guidelines that are kind of odd about masks is is in the, is in band, quiet. And there are some masks split in them so they can continue to play your wind instrument or your player instrument while wearing a mask to do your best. There are, they exist, yeah.
I know that one already.
Well, there you go.
I took my water.
And it's the same thing as if the mask comes up.
Um, also, two more questions. Do you know, Dr. Rowe, in speaking with other superintendents, schools that have gone back, a lot of kids, they're wanting to go back for the socially-emotional component, they're home, they're, you know, they're thinking that if they get back into the classroom, it's going to bring that socialization. Do we know if that expectation didn't count out? I don't know if you have these conversations with other superintendents, have there been kids that, you know, had the expectation up here of what it was going to be like, and then they walked into what the reality is, like, we painted here, it's not going to be what it was, and have have children that are kids that have gone back in, it ended up causing a further regression, I don't know if this conversation is too bad.
Not, I haven't had that specific of a conversation. I mean, I have had some anecdotal conversations with, you know, friends that are teachers in other districts and what they've seen happen and how different of an environment that it is. You know, there's a, a teacher that lives in my neighborhood who stopped by who teaches in another district who's been back in, and she was telling me of, of experiences of middle school, and they have been students that are eating in classrooms and how how challenging that is for middle schoolers to not be able to socialize like they are used to. And this was earlier, this was back in maybe early September, so it's been a while, they were probably more accustomed to it now, but it was a little bit of a shock, a culture shock for them of what I think they were hoping it was going to be. But nothing in terms of an emotional regression in terms of a student feeling worse about being there. But I have to imagine if you, if you, anytime you enter something where your expectations are unattainable, there's going to be a letdown. And if people come in without tapered expectations about what this could be, there's going to be a letdown. I mean, it's, it's an imperfect situation, and there is no perfect solution. You know, and as much as, as I dislike this performance that we just experienced, some of the things that Mr. Annie presented are very accurate. It's not going to be a pretty picture in in some circumstances, and it's going to be a challenge for for our teachers to to dance in both worlds. And and as much as he may like you to think that, that I glossed over that, that's a wildly inaccurate statement. The teachers in this district are very important to us, and we spent hours and hours with them working out some details that were were bypassed tonight. But I digress.
My final question then, if you could clarify the parameters, like, who and what decides who's notified, if there is, and how, because if a student does a test positive for COVID, is it repeated, succeeded, is it everyone in the room? Like, what are the parameters for who would get notified?
I'll have Mr. Lamar answer that.
So they have the definition of that close contact, and so the close contact would be anybody who was, it's at six feet, or during that period of time, it's a cumulative, not just 15 minutes or less. So throughout that day, or maybe it was two days later, within that 48-hour period of time, if they were within 15, or six feet within that 15 minutes, they would be considered a close contact. So what our nurses would do is, if somebody tests positive and they're now contact tracing, they're going to go back looking at seating charts, whether it's in a cafeteria, if it's in a classroom, on a bus, they're going to talk to individuals, oftentimes, so what we also learn from the county health department is, is I'm giving that information, they, I tested positive, they're asking me those questions, I would name some people. And if I named Julie because they were in a meeting and she was like, I don't know if it was really 15 minutes, it might have been this, that, if I'm feeling I was within that time period from her and naming that person, she would be a close contact. She can't say, no, I'm coming back to work from that period of time. So we get all of that information from a variety of the different sources. When I say different sources, because if it's a first grade student, we may be asking parents, we may be asking teachers, kind of what does that setup look like? Adults usually can tell, you know, what area they've been in. Then that call is made to the health department to kind of determine. So maybe if it was, it might be a little bit easier in the elementary to see, okay, yep, these desks are six feet apart, here's this, they worked on a bus, they were not going back and forth, you know, to different classes that day or whatnot. But then if you're at some of the other levels, it might be, if it's a middle school or the high school, if there is that gray area where you're just not sure if that six feet was, there might be a larger number of students or staff that would be required to isolate and quarantine. And now a lot of people think, well, is it every class? So if now I have to quarantine, do the students in the class that I was in the period right before? No, if I'm at home and I'm quarantining, as long as I don't come down with symptoms, if I do, then that's kind of where that trickle effect goes down. And so our nurses will kind of pre-gather that information so that we have that on speed dial, if you will, if someone else were to come, become positive, and that's confirmed, that that next step. Who we send that information to? We did start sending the generic letter so it does not violate any FIPPA or HIPAA to notify the school, the staff. Once students are in place, we are going to be sending that letter to the school community. So whether it's a student or staff, it does not identify who. So that will just kind of be more the generic to let buildings know, families know if there was a case in that building. But you, it also specifies that you would be contacted either by the nurse or to be the health department if it was because of an outside contact, of your child was in close contact and here's what you need to do. So other people, if they weren't being quarantined from that classroom or from that grade level or that building, as long as they're not that cor- close contact, they won't get that personal phone call, if you will. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to number six, finance committee. You're done? You sure you're done? We're finished over here. Are you done?
Oh, sure. I am. Yes, sir.
All right. Item six, this is me. Finance committee. We have six dot one, we have our purchase orders, impressed checks, accounts payable and disbursements listed. So any questions or concerns from the committee regarding those payables?
None here.
Good, Mr. Crady, right? Okay, I'll move that forward to the board for approval. Six, and two is the monthly fiscal update. Mr. Allmeyer.
Thank you very much. Just update the board on a few, a few quick things. I know it's getting late here tonight. The the audit is complete, the MDA has been finalized. The auditor will be here on October 22nd, board meeting to present the FY '20 audit report. So you will see that at the next board meeting. We will also be bringing the extracurricular stipends in accordance with the HEA collective bargaining agreement to get the athletics at the middle schools and high schools at 90% of the proxessively conference, so they are currently working on on those. So we will bring that to the October board meeting as well. And did want to bring the board up to speed on the final phases of the district's, well, I shouldn't say the final phases, but one of the final phases of the district's restructuring plan. And, you know, last week, obviously, the board took action on a resolution to move forward with a rate lock for approximately $10, $10.4 million. And just in the last few days, we did a Series 2020 refunding, actually yesterday, and we agreed to refund the Series 2013 debt totaling $46.7 million. And by the way, that series of debt, the Series 2013 debt, the interest rates range from 5% to 5.625. Um, and with the net interest cost that we just, uh, refunded at $51.02 million, the net interest cost, uh, is 2.58, resulting in an overall decrease in debt service by $9.26 million, or a present value of approximately $8.7 million. So we will provide at the October 22nd, uh, board meeting, uh, not only will the board receive all of the closing documents, because the actual closing document, closing will actually happen on October 28th, so the board will receive those as well as a summary of that whole transaction. But it's been a very busy two weeks, a finance transaction totaling $61.4 million of total debt. Uh, to give you an idea, that's almost 40% of the district's total debt, yielding some pretty big savings and obviously setting us up with the restructure that we're looking to do down the road. So, uh, it's been a very, very busy couple of weeks, uh, working with them on, uh, various, uh, documents and getting these deals done. So stay tuned on that, but more will be provided at the October 22nd, uh, board meeting, and we will have a large stack of documents for certain individuals to sign as well. So, um, other than that, that is all I have on the fiscal memo, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Tony, if you want to add anything at this point on that?
Yeah, I'll try not to, it's totally, I don't want to bore everybody, but this wasn't an easy, I mean, Kevin, thank you for being available, Mark, yourself. Um, yeah, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't an easy task the last two days, getting this big debt load. We ran into some obstacles over those two days, and we had to make some decisions that, uh, you know, um, we, we almost were at the point where we were going to back out completely. Um, the rates were moving on a little, and, and worse, there was, uh, we were having a trouble finding takers for our subscription, uh, for a good portion of it from 2030 through 2035, the latter part of maturities, which represented over like 50% of all, overall debt. And the issue wasn't, they didn't like it, the issue was everybody and their mother was issuing bonds in the last week, trying to beat the rush here to the election and the uncertainty surrounding that, and so you just had a glut of supply out there of bond issues for people to choose from. So trying to differentiate ourselves from the rest, um, was, was difficult. They had, uh, our guys who were moving the bonds were having trouble getting subscriptions. So, um, ultimately it came down to a decision that had to be made, and relatively, within a short period of time, our underwriters offered to take on the debt, to, to underwrite it and take on the risk of selling it on their own, without subscription from outside parties. Um, and they, they chose to do it, but it, it had an additional bump up in the cost by at least a tenth of a percent on the risk. Um, still, overall, in the big scheme of things, the overriding factor was just the overall savings and, and the risk of moving on further down the road in the marketplace. Um, just to give you the big, if I can present the graphic that's in my head, 10-year treasury is the benchmark on these bonds, um, and the 10-year treasury has really ranged in the last, um, year, just four years, in the one and a half to three and a quarter percent range. It, it's, it's, since COVID hit, it's been at a low of .52 and at around, uh, an upper range of .8. And so it was still within that range. Um, and, and so it's just a huge move that, you know, basically COVID-related, that provided us this opportunity, and it just, you just don't know when this stuff's getting resolved. Too much risk in various things, uh, with the state of Illinois, um, finances. So it was, we, we felt it was in our best interest to do a bird in the hand, not take on that risk. And, and, and the biggest piece, I think, besides the debt, raw debt dollar savings, is restructuring the repayment period, and, and actually will be provided, besides the tax savings, will be providing a tax rate savings to our taxpayers from just the, the timing of repayment, uh, kind of giving them a little bit of a break, um, uh, over the next several years, that'll help us, uh, you know, also help us with the years, the other two years of the wall we have to deal with. So overall, it, it accomplished what we were trying to do. Um, at the end of the day, was it the, you know, we were at that bottom real low, low, low? No. When we had a real low, yeah, we were, we did very well there. So that's the best I can relay on that. Okay. All right. Get away from boring finance here. Move on to, I think you had an activity report, we don't need that, so we'll move on to item six dot three, is revenue expenditures report, Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. You should have in front of you the August, uh, in the second month of the year, financial executive summary. Not too much to add, uh, only two months into the year, um, obviously tracking with budget in August. Um, but I will note that, you know, health insurance claims came in and, and they are a little, uh, lower than they were in July, and still, still significantly lower than where they were in prior year. And, and as we learned a little more, as we went through, uh, when Mr. Zir presents, uh, the health insurance kind of update, um, for open enrollment, uh, we'll, we'll provide a little more information, but, um, you know, when March hit, and in the months of March and April and May, we saw significant reduction in claims because people just weren't, weren't going to the doctor. Um, and we're still, you know, seeing a downturn in claims, but I think a lot of the downturn, downturn is now a result of, well, we don't have as many significantly large claims in the pipeline. We have a lot of large claims in the pipeline, and a large claim is anything over $50,000 or $25,000, but when I say significantly large claims, I'm, I'm referring to the claims that are greater than the stop-loss limit of $165,000. And last year during the calendar year, we had six of those claims, six very large claims, and this year we're only trending at three claims. So part of the, part of the reason we're seeing a reduction in total claims coming through is we do have half as many large claims in the pipeline or significantly large claims. So did want to point that out, and we're going to talk about that again when we talk about open enrollment. But other than that, as you can see from the dashboard, there's no immediate concerns, um, through the month of August, um, or through the month of September, we just closed that, but you'll get that next month. So, uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but, uh, no concerns here.
Any questions for Mr. Altmeier related to the report? Okay, if no one has any questions, we can, uh, move on to six dot four, and we have our revenue catch tricks, I believe there are three of them, fundraisers, um, if I'm remembering right, one of them is like a chocolate thing, so if any of those people want to stop by my house, I'm more than willing to buy, um, from them, so feel free.
Do you want to vote for us?
I'm a buyer, I'm a buyer of that, so does anybody have any questions or concerns about those three fundraisers? The world's finest candy bars.
I have a question, uh, Mr. Altmeier, I, I guess I'm confused, why is the dance team having a fundraiser? Are they meeting? Are they competing? What are they raising money for? I understand these other students are to remember, that's like a, you know, an article.
Yeah, unfortunately, I wish somebody from the high school was here that could answer that, but I think, you know, some, some of our extracurriculars are doing the best they can, even remotely and virtually, to kind of keep kids active, um, so I can't tell you.
I can tell you that the dance team is, is still meeting, they are, they are practicing as appropriate, they have the same, you know, the same contact days. Remember the, the football team did do their football cards, although they may not compete, um, they do have the, the ability and the need for long-term planning, and, and we did, you did approve their, um, their football card sales for, uh, for them earlier in the year.
Okay. I'm just wondering if there's, are, are the teams still?
I don't know, but there's no competitions scheduled currently, but I'm not sure when the IHSA dance season is, but it is still technically scheduled and could happen, depending on how things roll out.
That's what I was asking, that's where I'm trying to get to. Are, are they still going to have their normal season, and, and that's why they're raising money?
Yeah, there's, um, it's supposed to start November 16th, uh, you know, that's, well, those things are, obviously those things are up near, but, you know, IHSA is trying really hard to be able to, um, in any fashion, try to see if there are ways that they can do different things, um, you know, I, I don't know specifically, but I know there's been talk about, is there things that they can do virtually for those kinds of competitions and whatnot, and that, and that's true, but that's, that's still underway and discussed in the form, so fingers crossed that all of those teams have some kind of.
Yeah, I hope so, too. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We can move in those forward, move those forward to the board, um, for approval, that ends finance, and to HR, Mr. Jent.
Okay. First item up for, uh, human resources is seven dot one, HR update, Dr. Zir.
Uh, just some quick updates from the human resources department. Um, this is our business as usual stuff, I don't have the stuff listed on here that's not business as usual, because it's kind of different every day right now. So, um, we have a lot of, um, reporting, um, that we've got going on, just launched, um, the first payroll here in September, um, along with payroll, um, got some compensation reports, um, that we'll hopefully be bringing, um, your way, uh, at the, um, October 22nd meeting. And then as, um, we're digging into October here, uh, we had met with our insurance broker, and, uh, we've got insurance rates to present to the board tonight, and, uh, so you can see, um, the rate increase, um, that we're taking on, but also see what the new contract language, um, did to the overall rate. So I actually have a visual at your place, um, to look at that here in just a second or two. Um, very excited, our CHC wellbeing screenings are launched and going, we started those last week, coming to district office, um, here in about six or seven hours. It'll be happening downstairs, so not very long. If, if you've got the 5:30 slots, just hang around, uh, make sure, and make sure you're not eating anything, so you need to.
Perfect.
Uh, so we're real excited about that. Um, our numbers right now, um, people can still sign up in the entire month of November, they can do it offsite after we get done with the onsite screening, and we've got over 600 folks, um, signed up right now. Um, we've been right around the 460 number the last couple of years, so significant increase, I'd like to see that go up, um, about 200 more people, and, uh, we'll have almost everyone. Um, so we'll see, uh, we'll do a good push on that after the onsite's done, so we're excited that those wellbeing screens are up and going. Um, as Mr. Altmeier referenced briefly, um, open enrollment, uh, for 2021, um, is going to take place, uh, here in November. Um, we are working with our open enrollment company, Benefit Focus, and, um, we're ready to launch, that, that should go, um, really smooth. So other than that, we've got a few, uh, surveys and, um, unfilled position surveys, teacher salary survey, non-certified salary survey that we get filled out for ISB during this time. That's it for the update from the HR.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? If not, we'll take the convenient segue into seven dot two, which is the insurance rates.
So the, um, health insurance committee met, the health insurance committee is made up of, um, admin, um, representatives from district office, uh, Mr. Troy was, um, able to be at the meeting this year, and since we were on Zoom, so very convenient for everybody, and also has the representation. So, uh, in, in this meeting, uh, there's not a lot of plan changes, uh, we are locked into a few of our plans here, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, has been, uh, who we've been with, and, um, if you see there under that first bullet, um, for those of the board members that are new, I just want to give you an idea of the plans that we do have available, uh, we have an HMO, um, we have actually three PPOs, two, uh, PPO one and PPO two, and our HSA is actually a high deductible PPO. Um, so those are the plans that everyone gets to choose from. Uh, we're seeing the overall 6% increase onto all plans this year. Um, as we get into our ancillary plans, uh, we work with Lincoln Dental, um, Lincoln Basic Life, Lincoln Voluntary Life, and we had some guaranteed rates that we signed into last year with those folks. So not seeing any changes there, also not seeing any changes in our vision, we had some guarantee rates there. And, uh, if you recall, last year we brought on some new voluntary from Aflac, voluntary accident and critical illness, so that's something, uh, that folks can take on voluntarily if they would like to do. So I decided this year, um, you usually get the monthly, um, to see what the employees are going to contribute, and, uh, I compare them side by side there for, uh, 2020 and 2021. At your place, um, I actually provided for you, uh, what the employees see as rate sheets. So that top sheet there is 2021, the next sheet is 2020, so, um, we can walk through that just real quick, um, pretty self-explanatory, but give you an idea what the plan cost is, and then you see the board contribution that's taken off, and then you see the employee contribution, and about 90 to 95% of our employees use this rate sheet, so this is per pay. Uh, they get paid 24 pays throughout the year, so you're looking at the per pay total balance owed based on the plan that they choose here, uh, as you go through. So if you recall, we did have some language change, um, going into this year that'll become effective 2021, and, um, that is reflected here. So I wanted to do just to be able to compare, um, the rate sheet that we're working off of now and to what the employees, um, will be contributing, um, come January. Uh, dental's locked in, not seeing any changes there, same thing with vision. So I thought that would be a, um, just a little bit better visual so you see what our employees see, um, per paycheck essentially. Any questions about the rate sheets, um, before we get into a couple of plan changes here?
No, so the only thing I would ask, or, or, do we have any ideas then what the board's portion of this cost is going up for this next plan here?
Have not, but I can, um...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, next meeting, just...
Yeah, Mark might have an idea.
Yeah, I have that as part of the collective bargaining update. Yeah. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Mark's got it. Okay.
Uh, do you want me to?
Yeah, we're, we're going to go into a couple of plan changes here with stop loss and, um, RX.
Just, just a quick question before you move on there.
Sure.
The 6%, is that kind of market norm, or, I mean, it just kind of feels like more and more each year, and it's kind of...
Yeah, well, you know, in my experience, we've seen it, um, kind of all over the place, I wouldn't say that's market norm, we're above market, mark, if I recall correctly, um, you know, when, when we came into that meeting, so, um, you know, we're, we're above it a little bit.
Yeah, based on our experience the last couple of years, based on the large claims that, you know, we were talking about earlier, um, and, and how we were tracking in prior year experience, uh, you know, we were a little higher, we were several, you know, a couple percentage points higher than the norm, um, that was communicated to us from, from our health insurance broker alliance, so, um, and let me give you an example, I mean, stop loss insurance is a big deal, right? And when, when I came to the district in 2009, 10 timeframe, the district, you know, was paying approximately $400, $450,000 a year for stop loss insurance, um, at $165,000 attachment point. Um, well, this past year, our plans and our experience was not so good, and with the large claims that we have on, in the pipeline, with the continuing large claims we have in the pipeline, they increased, uh, they increased our stop loss premium by approximately 49, 50%. So they increased that premium by over $400,000 from last year's $850,000, to almost 1.25 million. Um, so when talking with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, um, as well as just internally here, talking with, uh, several other districts that have, um, uh, group sizes, about the same group size that we have, most districts, most organizations that are incurring $10 million of self-funded health insurance claims have a higher stop loss limit. And so Blue Cross Blue Shield came in and said, well, we'll lower your premium by $258,000, excuse me, $247,000. If you increase your stop loss, and they're making this recommendation, to $200,000, rather than $165,000 attachment point, it'd be $200,000. So of course you do a quick break even on that, and that's seven, that's seven large claims that exceed $165,000. Well, last year we only had six, and it was the most we've ever had, and every year before that, it's only been anywhere from two to three at the max. And for the current year, the current calendar year we're living in, we only have three that have exceeded $165,000, and that four is in the $50,000 range, and it's not going to be trending to exceed $165. So, so we sat down with the broker and, and essentially based on that math, and that math alone, we opted for the $247,000, um, premium decision to go with the increase in stop loss insurance from $165,000 to $200,000, which will yield those additional savings for the district, um, yet not provide that much more risk to the district. In addition to that, not noted here, we did see a decrease in the aggregate, uh, the aggregate attachment point is still at, you know, 115%, but we did see a $15,000 decrease in that total premium, uh, which is not a lot considering, but, uh, we did see a slightly decrease in the aggregate premium. So that was probably the biggest change we made to the plan financially, so that we can, uh, take $2 for the overall. take two dollars for the overall plan. Then there was another recommendation by Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh Mr. Zier and myself had an opportunity to meet with Alliance as well as with Blue Cross Blue Shield and 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 talk to their representative about various things that would help us save money with our plan and they changed us from an advance to a performance, RX formulary, uh for which it would save the district approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year with very little disruption uh to the majority of our members. So based on that disruption report, based on the savings, um we opted to go that route as well. So um those are two plan changes that are bringing savings to the to the district and to the plan uh with minimal um disruptions for employees in that. So um I would be happy to answer any questions if you might have any of those two.
Any any questions from anyone? All right.
And as we continue down um the memo here, um just a few more offerings that we have out there on the table. Um you know, as we try to save some money with the zero card. We launched the zero card last year and the pandemic didn't help it. Uh so uh the zero card folks were going to come out. Uh they made one trip. They were actually coming from Oklahoma, made it to one building and then things started shutting down. So we continued with the zero card this year. We had a couple of members that were using it but the timing of everything just wasn't good um for that. So we're going to continue with it um for uh in an effort to save um some money. And then that's just um a description of the Aflac voluntary insurance um that we added last year and will continue to offer this year um if folks would like to do that. Um open enrollment coming up in November and then um just making a recommendation to move this forward to the next regular board meeting for board approval.
Okay. I would uh wrap up seven point two and move to uh item number eight, buildings and grounds, Mr. Troy.
Good morning.
Not quite.
Just kidding. Uh item dot one, O and M update, uh Mr. Gentry.
Oh, it's not gonna happen. It's a stick, yeah.
Anything to highlight of the O and M update?
Just a couple of things. Uh we got our first bill for our solar fields.
That they're paying us.
Um and uh we also got our first net uh bill from ComEd and uh we bought electricity for two point six cents and sold some to ComEd for four point five cents. And we consumed some at the discount. Uh more info to Com. I'm still working through the process of checks and balances uh but uh it looks like it's uh not going to be that challenging with the database I've had access to from the solar field uh data.
Lighting retrofit.
So you're telling me where our our electricity is coming solely now from our panels?
Yes, uh we're in fact, since we're a little underpopulated in the buildings, uh we're selling electricity. Uh we sold about fifty percent at uh this campus last year of what we generated. And it brings to mind other strategic positions we could take down the road when the price spikes.
I was wondering why the lights wouldn't go on though when I walked in.
Um we're doing well. Um and and speaking of lighting, the lighting retrofit project that uh we had for our school maintenance grant project is uh substantially complete. Minor punch list to go on that. That puts us in a position that LED lighting wise, there's only three buildings left in the district that need to have that step of an upgrade. There there it's a big road to hold though. A high school, Marlowe and Chessy. So our biggest elementary, our biggest middle school and our least. I'd be happy to answer any questions about anything else.
Uh any questions from the committee or the board? All right, very done. Thank you for that report. Moving on to eight dot two, uh the fine arts edition construction update, please.
Very minor punch list left. Uh working on closeout documents right now as you'll see on the next agenda item. Uh there are a few uh minor change orders listed here for you. Oh, Walt's got another letter of credit for a minor adjustment in the design where they are taking ownership in a minor flaw. Um but uh we're doing very well. Punch we we did our second walk on the punch list and it's very small. So just a lot of paperwork. You have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee or the board? All right, thank you again for that report. And then the fun one, the eight dot three, the fine arts edition reconciliation.
Yes, it's that time in this project where we're closing out the contracts. We want to reconcile things financially and when we have a project like this with allowances and substantial amounts of uh credits due to us for criminal background checks and rounding out the summary on all these little proposed change orders that have been trickling through that you've seen on the monthly reports. This is a complete reconcili- reconciliation of the uh financials for each of these contracts that the district holds with each of these trade contractors. Um there's a lot more background data that I've got for checks and balances that I'm not uh showing you here but uh these numbers Walt and Lamp and I agree are accurate. That's all things have been tracked uh through the project and this would uh close, this would be basically the last step in the financial discussion. So the changes and things because there's nothing uh on the horizon unless we decide to make a change but I'm not seeing or hearing that. Be happy to answer any questions but this will need approval. These are formal adj- final adjustments to those contracts that were worth it way back in, what was it, August of twenty? Is it? No, pardon me, August of nineteen, I guess.
All right, any any questions about this?
So just reading that summary page, right? It's it's fifty thousand total in change orders?
That's uh yeah, so we went a little, we we in the net summary, we went fifty thousand over the allowances.
Okay.
Hopefully, everybody has a chance to review that document in the board packet.
Of course. I'll do that thing.
All right, uh any any objection when moving this forward then from the committee? All right, we'll go ahead and move that ahead and uh closeout buildings grounds for the night.
Okay, so you're on to the we're on the legislative legislation committee, Mr. Gentry. I don't know if you heard anything tonight, uh legislation.
I do not.
Can't remember if Leslie, if you had mentioned anything? Now, you just don't have an appetite for it?
I do, but I'm too tired.
You don't have an appetite for it? No, that's okay.
I will say this.
Oh, no, can't stop it.
Um it it looks like a veto session is going to, they're calling a call session now because the um governor didn't do anything. So it looks like they are going to um not be having session unless um one of the processes can uh finish organizing. Um they have some equity legislation that they're going to try to talk about uh and pass. So that's um as of now not happening. So unless they can get that together, there looks like it's not going to be a call session. However, there might be a lame duck session which takes place in January, which they could pick up different legislation um and things like that. And it's it's in that session that I'm hoping that we can start to rerun Mr. Altmeier's P L D. So we're still holding our hope.
That's interesting because I just today heard from the IAS A attorneys that there were a theme, a theme of inums during the upcoming veto session in November. Uh so I hadn't heard that they may not, they may not have. Yeah, the three Ms are going to be money, Madigan and mascots. Um that the mascot bill that died in the spring may reemerge in veto session outlawing um mascots of Native American imagery uh may reemerge. So that may be something to pay attention to. We have a a neighboring district that still has an Indian mascot um that may bring some uh some attention. Uh and then money is, you know, if the if the uh the progressive income tax doesn't pass uh in November, then you know, there's they're talking, already talking about a potential five percent cut right off the bat that Mark's even hearing could turn it into ten percent down the road. Um or they may just in the lame duck session then increase the income tax to six percent across the board for everybody if we don't pass progressives. So um money, money, money. And of course, the investigation.
Yeah, stop, all right.
Yeah, all right. Anything further on that? Do you know what I'm guessing? Okay. Um I had it item ten, Board of Ed, give minutes for those four meetings. Is there any uh questions about those minutes? Move those forward to the board um for approvals in our next meeting. Um all right, so it's really, we kind of skipped addressing this um during the course of your presentation but Leslie, you had alluded to about voting. Brad brought it up to attention. I mean, I I have to ask, I mean, does anybody feel the need to have a vote at our next meeting concerning the plan that's presented? I mean, does anybody want to have a vote um related to it? Um I'm not adverse to having a vote on it. I mean, I know other boards do it. Um it's not, I don't think it's a hundred percent necessary but I'm not adverse to doing it. So I need a little feedback from everybody as to what they they think, whether that should be an agenda item on the next meeting to actually formally approve the plan that was presented. I'll start with you, Bill.
No.
You don't feel there's a need for to have an actual vote on that? Leslie?
I'm I'm, you know, like I said, I think we've all voiced our concerns and we've talked about it as a group and um I don't think we have to have a vote. I think everybody knows kind of where we stand. I think if somebody wanted to ask us where we stood, we could easily tell them, are you for or against this? So taking a vote is just kind of a ceremonial type thing. So I, you know, I could go either way.
So you're not overwhelmingly.
I'm not I'm not overwhelming.
Kevin, you have anything?
All right, fifty-one, forty-nine in the yes camp.
Okay, that's about where I'm at.
Yeah.
Uh I'm not overly.
Yeah, I'm I'm not opposed to it. I don't see a need for it going.
Fine, say.
This is not helpful.
No, it is. I'm still meaning no. Correct, okay. All right, it's enough. There's enough ambivalence and downward no. Um yeah, okay, we don't need to set it as a formal agenda item. I just wanted to give administration some direction uh in that regard. So there, we don't need to have a actual voting agenda item on our next meeting. So with that, um item eleven is closed session. Uh I'll make a motion to move in closed session at eleven twelve.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry at roll call.
Mr. Aaron.
Yes.
Mr. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Carmano.
Yes.
Mr. Mayano.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Crady.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes, okay, motion passes. We're in closed session.
Yeah.